No, she's not.
No, she's not.
No, no.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yeah, one more.
Huh? No, no.
I wouldn't like.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, that had me totally confused. I was like... Well, I didn't know. Somebody could have done it. Maybe you have a packet there and they gave it to me. From where? Oh, Susan Peters. Yes, yes.
Yeah.
And she also doesn't... So you know that that contributed to it? Huh? How far away do you think she is?
Well, they probably had to add... They had to add probably... Oh, they're doing...
And then, and I was on the... Until then, I got off and I was doing that thing. She's just walking in. She's just walking in. She had to teach a class or something, do a presentation.
(laughing).
Way to lighten the mood. The only time he ever talks into the mic.
Did he present today? I saw him on the agenda. I couldn't remember when it was. Did he do okay? All elections, I'm guessing.
Here she comes.
This is going to Dan. Showing up with zero minutes disparity.
You ready, Callie?
Alan. Alan's gonna say the prayer.
Okay. Calling to order at the Parowan City Council meeting for April tenth. And it is five thirty P M. Thank you for being here tonight. This is great to see everybody here. And we're gonna have opening ceremonies by...
Alan.
Alan Cavalieri.
Alan Cavalieri.
Our Heavenly Father, we bow before Thee humbly this evening, so grateful for our many blessings. We are grateful for the free country that we live in. We're grateful for the Spirit of community that we have. We're grateful together here tonight to discuss the issues in this community and ask for Thy blessings to be upon it. Please bless the leaders of our country, that they'll be able to protect our freedoms. Please bless those who are fighting for our freedoms, that they will be watched out and blessed and protected. We're grateful for these small valleys and ask that Thy Spirit will be rest upon them, that any evil or wicked that would come, that they, that it would be taken away. Please bless the poor and the needy, that we'll be able to seek them out and, and protect them and help them. Please bless the, this meeting, that we will be able to discuss those things that are important and, and help this community. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any conflicts with the council or personal interest in any of the agenda items this evening?
No, ma'am.
No.
No, ma'am.
All right. This next segment is yours, the community that is here. This is time for public comments. You have two minutes each to come up and speak. And you don't need to say your address, just state your name. And the time is now yours.
Hello. Okay. Um, I'm here this evening to bring to your attention the planning by the B L M to clear cut on the Red Hills North. A couple of days ago, I was hiking up in the foothills overlooking Parowan and saw orange tags in a line on pinions and junipers hundreds of years old. That area is full of artifacts, pottery shards, arrowhead points, clear evidence of native habitats. These settlements need to be saved from big machinery. After they bull hogged the land, there is nothing but an ugly, thick mat of shredded trees. You will not be able to see any evidence of settlement. Pinion jays and deer thrive there. Cattle and sheep graze there and find protection under the trees from the heat. I would be happy to take you and show you. This historic area should be spared. It's obvious by tagging the trees, the B L M's plan is to continue the project they've started on the Red Hills South, where they're stripping the land. Just a week ago, I was up in Kane Springs, north of Jack Rabbit Mountain, where the B L M has completely destroyed the picnic recreation area. The trees are gone, every plant is gone. One lone picnic table stands amongst the rubble. Thousands of acres are bare over there. It's shocking how much clear cutting has been done over that ridge. It's beyond obvious there needs to be local input to the B L M plant. Thank you for your attention to this important community problem. If we do nothing, Parowan will be giving free rein to decimate its history. This public land does not belong to the B L M. It belongs to all of us and it needs to be protected. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you, I'm so sorry, could you please state your name?
State.
No, your name.
State your name.
Oh, that part I missed. Terry Franklin.
Oh, nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? I, I don't have a lot of patience. No, I'm just kidding. I just try to figure out how long we need to wait, 'cause I know a lot of the time, uh, we can just move on. All right, we're gonna move on. Um, the next item on the agenda, we get into our consent part, and if, these are items that are administrative in nature and are usually approved by one motion. It's item five, the approval of the city council meeting minutes from March twenty seventh. Number six, the approval of the warrant register for April tenth, twenty twenty five. And number seven, the approval of the financial statement for March twenty twenty five.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items five, six, and seven.
I'll second it.
All those in motion? All those... Wow, that was crazy. This is so interesting. I think I'm like having a brain glitch, but it will pass, don't worry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. There's nothing like going from an innovative, an innovation center training with a bunch of students in front of you, rapid firing a bunch of questions, and then coming to a different environment like that. So, I'll, I'll gather myself, don't worry. All right, this next part of the agenda is really exciting. Um, it is me bringing you an appointment for our new fire chief for Parowan Fire Department. And this is an action item, so we will be voting on it. And I wanna tell you a little bit about the person that I'm bringing to you. So, Alan, if you'd like to come up. All right, and if I get any of the facts wrong, you'll have to fix it at the end. So, Alan Cavalieri is currently a firefighter in Clark County. He has been for twenty-five years. Okay? Um, he's ra- he was raised in a household with a culture of public service and public safety. His father was a Henderson firefighter in chief, and his brother and two of his brother-in-laws are firefighters as well.
By the way, where is your one brother-in-law? 'Cause I don't know if this can move forward without ribbing Jeff a little bit.
He's, uh, he's at the fire station.
All right.
All right. He is a natural born leader who has done training for new firefighters through rookie, rookie programs, and he has helped others engage and join the fire department throughout his career. He is an honor guard and has completed engineer academy and has also had airport specific fire training. He led a, a cadre, um, of fire, of new firefighters. And these, these new firefighters were instructed, um, in firefighting, equipment, necessary skills, knowledge, and experience to contribute effectively as firefighters. And I had sixteen to twenty. I don't know if that was...
That's right.
Okay. Look at how good my facts are. Um, you love the outdoors and your family and horses. I asked what your hobbies were, and it was wherever your kids and family are.
That's right.
Um, he, you've coached, you've watched your kids compete in sports and activities all over the state. Um, and this is my words, um, he is a gem. We are really fortunate to have him willing to serve with our team and on our department. Um, we're very grateful for him, and we appreciate his knowledge and enthusiasm, as well as the support of his family in this new role. And so the final step is me presenting him to you for your consent and approval. And with that...
Mayor, I move to approve Alan Cavalieri, did I say that right?
Yes, sir.
As our new fire chief.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, and you get sworn in now.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, if you'll raise your right hand, please. And say aye.
Aye.
And state your name.
Alan Cavalieri.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
The Constatation, Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties...
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Molly, I know this isn't on the agenda. We gotta, we gotta recognize Mike Tremor. Mike, will you stand up? It was pointed out that Mike has been serving in the interim role. He wasn't sworn in. He has done a ton of, ton of work. He has not let off the hook and doesn't get to roll right off into the sunset. But Mike, we do appreciate everything you've done and continue to do and all that stuff. And everybody else, we have a few of the fire guys here. Who else is here? Ryan? Who else is here? Stand up. Just Ryan? Anyways.
Ryan?
Ryan's our, is our assistant. So anyways, thank you, guys.
Thank you. And...
Thank you.
And I want a picture, and I pre-warned all of you, so come all up here in the front.
Oh, here we go.
Brooke, will you do a picture for us?
We're in the background, right?
Yeah. They'll just stand like...
You have to turn around, 'cause this is the background.
We can scoot you in.
And we can just stand here?
And your family.
Yeah. Yeah, let them.
Sorry, I know this is not on the agenda, however...
Okay. It's voluntary. It's not all real. It's on a voluntary basis.
And all of Alan's family as well.
Oh, crap, we gotta stand up?
Yes, we do. Oh. Thank you, thank you.
Sorry, I just really love pictures for all occasions and all things, so they're great.
Hey, Rochelle, we need to see that picture of that new baby.
I will...
A granddaughter.
I will show you after cancel.
Okay.
It is fantastic.
And I'll show you mine, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. In a mine? Grand?
All right, the next, thank you for being here tonight. The next item on the agenda is the pool plastering. And if you'll remember, we had budgeted for this in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. And so this is kind of a, you know, administrative piece of this and also just a, a way to bring the information to the community. But, um, the project did come in well within and below budget. So I'm just bringing it to the council to make you aware of the bids, because there is a procurement process that requires three bids. We did receive four bids, and you have those probably before you. Um, going through and doing the apples-to-apples approach to every itemized thing on the pool plastering bid, which there is quite a bit to it. Um, I did reach out to Makai Services to have them do an adjustment, because there's an additive that can be added to the, um, plaster that makes the, the plaster finish last longer. So we had that additive added, and he adjusted his bid accordingly, and you have that in front of you. So, um...
Callie's saying that we don't know if we have the new one. Do you wanna just say it?
Oh, it's, there, I sent it out to everybody, yeah.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, yeah, I sent it out to everyone, so I'm glad you guys got that. So, yeah, it's thirty-five thousand, five hundred is that bid.
Is which one?
Is the Makai, M-A-K-A-I, services.
It, it is the low bid, but it is also, uh, the company that we work with, um, weekly throughout the year. Um, they are a good company. They're the ones that installed the pool cover recently for us. And, um, in other words, sometimes a low bid, you wanna make sure, is this a reputable company? These guys do a really good job, um, and they're local, so...
The next closest bid, do I need to say all the bids? No? The next closest bid was, uh, ten thousand dollars higher. And then the bids beyond that were quite a bit higher than the first two. And that's why I broke them all down and made sure that they were comparing the same, uh, product and the same process. And so now that they are, I'm bringing it to the council to approve selecting Makai Services to replaster our, our pool.
I propose to approve the, uh, quote for Makai Services, uh, for the swimming pool replastering project.
I'll second the motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Just real quick, before we move on, um, just so everybody knows, we'll be filling the pool for this purpose early this year by, by like three weeks. And once they plaster it, you have to have water in the pool immediately. And then it has to be scrubbed every day, several times a day for quite a, three times a day, for like a couple of weeks. So, everybody's gonna see water in the pool. It may look cloudy, um, but that's part of the process. We're super excited to have this done, so...
And will we get it done before the opening season?
Yep.
Yes, yep.
We're still gonna open Memorial Day weekend, so...
Fantastic.
It'll be good. All right, moving now to item number ten. This is the approval of the South Central Broadband Contract for Continuation of Broadband Services.
Okay, so, um, we, we currently use South Central for our phones and internet. Um, we actually have a mixture of fiber circuits and I think we have one cable circuit. And, um, we were able to, I don't know if we have it, we can pull it up on screen. We were able to double the, the bandwidth at the city offices and at the, I guess it was just the city offices, we're going from a five megabit connection to a one hundred megabit connection and keep the other two at twenty meg connections. Um, by the time we do that and we remove some fax lines and, and change some other stuff, the total bill will go down from...
Thirteen to twelve.
It's at the bottom. So we'll save about forty-seven dollars a month and, and double the, the bandwidth here at the city offices. So that's who provides our current services. This does require a three-year commitment, so that's why we brought it to the council. If it was just at a, year by year, we wouldn't have. But since we're gonna sign a contract, we brought it to the council.
All right, so a motion to approve the South Central Bro- broadband contract for continuation of broadband services.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the South Central Broadband, broadband contract for continuation of broadband services.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Can, can I ask a question? Is this for just one year or is this for the three years?
The contract is for three years.
Okay.
And the price will be fixed for three years.
Okay.
All right, that motion carries. Thank you. Um, action agenda item number eleven... Is the ordinance prohibiting new sewer connections outside of the city limits. This is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero nine.
So, um, this was discussed in work meeting last time, and, um, we talked through it. Obviously, I wasn't here. Um, I did add one sentence from the work meeting to now. If you scroll down, Callie, um, it occurred to me that we needed to make sure that we did not have this restriction apply to sewer service within the incorporated limits of Bryanhead, because that's technically outside our city limits, since we share a sewer dis- or sewer treatment facility with them and it's, and it's in the same downfall line. We needed to clarify that. Not a big deal, because we're not gonna regulate what goes on inside Bryanhead, but we just need to make sure it was clarified.
Good catch, yeah.
So, and there was a discussion in the meeting, and I think it was kind of questioned as to whether this accomplishes its purpose. The fact that it says no new connections means that it grandfather's the old existing connections as of the date of the ordinance. That means if you have a connection at the date of the ordinance outside, by the way it is worded, you're fine. You just can't have a, a new connection.
And there are connections outside.
There are. That we have confirmed there are a few connections now existing, not very many, but there are a few. This isn't as technical and tricky as the water ordinance, because that's controlled by the state constitution. This, this isn't, so we didn't have to go into all the minutia that the water ordinance does.
Okay, good.
As far as the service area and all that stuff, so...
Well, I move to, uh, well, to, um, approve the ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero nine.
I'll second the motion.
All right, and this is an ordinance, so we need to vote by roll call. We'll start with Councilmember Topham.
Rochelle Topham, aye.
David Harris, aye.
John Dean, aye.
Sharon Downey, aye.
David Burton, aye.
All right, that motion carries, thank you. Moving to item number twelve, this is the resolution to initiate the process to reclaim unused cemetery lots. And this is resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero two. And that will be being presented by Connie Biassi, who has been the administrator in charge of the cemetery.
Let me just clarify real quickly. There may have been a misunderstanding. This, we're not adjusting our, our code or doing anything. This is a process that's allowed by our code and state code. We just have to do it, what we're doing by resolution, so...
Okay, and I wanna start out by saying, I know a lot of people are nervous about the reclaiming of burial, um, rights. I am very conservatively looking at our cemetery and looking at plots that were bought in the eighteen hundreds. The owners are gone, no longer with us. And probably their first generation posterity are gone. So, that being said, I am not reclaiming any living plots, any, nothing like that is happening. So, I just wanted to put everyone's mind at ease. Um, the plots that I have, well, let's start with the, the state code and our code. Um, it starts out at the municipal council or cemetery maintenance board shall then cause a copy of the resolution to be personally served on the owner. As I said, the owners were born in the eighteen hundreds, so we cannot do that. So we moved to number three, which is highlighted. If the owner cannot be personally served with the resolution, then the cemetery district board shall publish, publish a resolution for the municipality or cemetery maintenance district as a Class A notice. So Callie will post a Class A notice on the plots that I have included, second page of your thing. Um, the plots were originally owned by Edward Anderson, Enick Wardell, John Mitchell, and James Davenport. This is just a sampling, just a small, I'm, I'm not gonna do a mass. As I have time, I'm going to look at our cemetery and look at plots that were bought. It looks like in the past, they were required to buy eight plots in a section. A lot of them had, it looks like a child or a spouse die, and then they moved on. Several of them are buried in California, some in Oregon. Their posterity is gone on most of them. If anybody has any, any right or deed or certificate that they would like to come forward with, they have thirty days to do so. So, if any of those names of anybody watching or anybody has any interest, then you can call the city and we shall address concerns and then, and then if there is no, nothing, then we will go ahead and reclaim those as Parowan City rights.
Connie?
Yes?
Uh, is this thirty days after notification?
At, so it will be posted for thirty days. And if, they have thirty days while posted. It actually says it only has to be posted for three weeks and then an additional week after. Um, so they have a total of four weeks.
This is a general posting and not an individual notification?
Not an individual notification. Nope, I've talked with our attorney, Scott Burns. We do have cemetery locations, but addressing the letter would be pointless. So we are not going, going to do that. Um, section B of three, we will mail a resolution within fourteen days after the publication to the owner's last known address, if available. I have cemetery locations, but that's unnecessary. So then the next section is number four, after thirty days of the last date, oh, after the last date of service or publication. So, um, we will abide by this, and if we don't hear anything, we will reclaim. Some of them, you know, they say that there's six plots, and I've left a line. Our cemetery, our guides that work at the cemetery are gonna assess if we have six plots or five plots with space. But we will be reclaiming all six, and then space requirements will adjust on our cemetery computer system for what's actually usable space. Okay? And then I know there was some equipment where they were checking to see if there were potential people buried unmarked graves. And we, we'll, we will respectfully handle this. And again, I am not looking at any graves beyond what was purchased in the eighteen hundreds. So, so, um, those watching, if you're concerned, please, please know that this is very conservative and carefully thought out. If anybody would care for any notice of my research, I'm happy to give that to anybody else. Well, family search on... The website has a lot of information. I could probably research your whole family and tell you where everyone's buried and what...
I thought maybe...
It is a lot of work.
Scott, I thought maybe she talked to you.
What the?
I thought maybe she talked to you. And got this information.
No, I gave her back legal advice that we don't have to send notice to dead people.
Right.
Okay.
Yep. Dead people do not receive notice. And, and yes, I will conservatively look at this as I have time. So maybe two or three times a year, I will come with some resolutions and kind of clean up our cemetery. It won't be aggressive, so...
Yeah, thank you, Connie.
Thank you, Connie.
For your diligence in that. I know it's been a lot. Um, so we need to vote on this resolution to initiate the process to reclaim unused cemetery lots. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero two, and I just need a motion to do that.
Mayor, I want to approve the resolution to initiate the process to reclaim unused cemetery lots, resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero two.
I'll second it.
Okay, and all those in favor by roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Burton.
David Burton, aye.
Sharon Downey, aye.
John Dean, aye.
David Harris, aye.
Rochelle Topham, aye.
All right, that motion carries. Again, thank you, Connie. That's really great and really appreciated. Moving now to item thirteen, this is the discussion regarding longer stays in the RV park by con- or parks by conditional use permit. I think if there's questions. So I think people have been following this, council's been following it. It did go to Planning Commission, um, just an understanding of that industry and what standard throughout the state. And even individuals here on council have told me they've done their own research to make sure that... And even individuals here on council have told me they've done their own research to make sure that everything fact checks, and it has fact checked. And so, I think we all have a better understanding of the RV park model and how that works and what that means to the RAP PACs and things like that. And if you have any additional questions, they're here. If they could come up and answer, if you need to ask questions. The recommendation from Planning Commission, I believe it ended at a hundred and eighty days and thirty.
And somebody in the Planning Commission asked that we, when it isn't unanimous, that they say that it was, it was, whenever we're reporting what the recommendation was, to say that it was a, whatever the vote was. And I, and I, and I remember this as a favorable recommendation, but it wasn't unanimous, so I said I would pass that on whenever that happens. But it was a.
Was.
I was just going to say, it was nine months and thirty percent. It was a positive recommendation for that, even though it wasn't unanimous. That's what I wanted to say.
Okay, perfect. Right, without, if there's not any other discussion.
I didn't, I remembered, it, it doesn't matter. I just remembered the vote different as it was a, I thought this is the one that they just didn't make a.
No, that was a different.
Later agenda item.
That's later on.
Well, yeah, I got a question. You know, I brought it up last time. Where are we at? Have we got that fence order straightened up to where there's an understanding of what needs to be done and what's going to happen?
Yeah, I can talk about the, the fence as far as, there were some questions in the last meeting I wasn't here to address. Um, and, and then you can take it from there if you want to, you want to address it or, or comment on that. Um, essentially what we have is, we have two fencing recommendation or, um, requirements in our ordinance. And there was some question as to whether they conflict, um, and in, in my opinion, they both apply. And what does that mean, right? So, and I'm, I'm, as I'm, I'm looking for it so I can actually read it. Um, let me pull it up, and in fact, I can bring it up on the screen if, if we want. The fence recommendation essentially, I will just, while I'm, while I'm looking it up, I'll, I'll just say what it is. So you basically have to put a fence around an RV park, right? That fence can look like lots of different things. From a hedge to, you know, it, basically the whole point of it is to be site blocking. Of course, it talks about deterring theft, so obviously if it's super porous, it's not going to deter theft, but it, they do talk about, um, different types of fencing there, and there's a specific height. That's a require of an RV park. There's also a separate requirement, um, in fencing, um, in our fencing ordinance that talks about separation between different types of uses, specifically commercial use where it, where it is next to a residential use, not necessarily residential zone. And that, um, requirement, um, I think also applies. It's just that that requirement says specifically that it needs to be a, um, a different type of fence. It does not mention hedges, and I think that's a seven foot fence, and the other one is a six foot fence. Um, so, so there needs to be a fence all the way around the RV park. That's a requirement of our RV fencing, um, of the RV, um, zone, I mean, the RV code. And the other requirement would still apply that would suggest that it needs to be one foot higher and maybe made up of a specific material where it, where that commercial use abuts a residential use. So, I think that, I don't know what your plans were for doing a fence, but if it were to satisfy, I mean, it could be a mix of one type of fence, and then in the area that it require, that it's required, it could be a different type of fence. Um, the challenge here, and, and I don't think we need to just, just obsess about this. Um, but I do want to point out, in fact, I'm going to share my screen. Just so everybody is kind of aware of what, what we're talking about. The requirement of, of where it abuts a residential use could potentially change in the future. We have a proposed annexation which will put residential use on the back property line. That currently now it's an agricultural use. At that point, that would affect the business. Um, generally it is the commercial business that's required to protect the, um, the residential use. So this is the subject property. Right now, we have a residential use in this, um, on this area and this area. That's where we have current residential use would be these parcels here. We have commercial use here, we have commercial use here. This right here is, is raw land. The rest of it is all raw land all the way around the park. Um, this area right now is being considered for annexation, and I, I think their intention is to do some sort of a residential subdivision, which is the back property line. Um, we'll see, this area has been discussed about possibly annexing in, and I believe, I know that it's, the master plan has that being residential as well. So my thought is, is if there is a plan that you guys have that would be, that would take care of that residential, um, um, requirement, at least in the areas where there will be a residential requirement, then you're not going to have to, um, come back and change it once it is residential. But that's just kind of my thoughts, so. I don't know. Does that answer your question, Dave, or?
Well, it does, but, uh, I guess it's also, as I made the point before, it isn't just the fence. It's compliance with that conditional use permit. And you're coming and asking for, you know, a, a modification to, you know, and we're going to have to do a, a change of, you know, our ordinance and so forth and variants. And, and so I guess I'm just saying, I'd like to see compliance before there's ask for more.
Well, we, I mean, the challenge here is that, uh, it's largely undeveloped all the way around us. And I, you, you, and you might say that doesn't really matter, but it, it has an impact upon our decisions. We, today we have fencing around the entire RV park. It's probably debatable about whether it complies, and it depends on whether you're looking at the fencing requirement or the other. Uh, so we, I guess at the end of the day, um.
What type of fencing do you have around it right now?
Field fence.
It's field fence. It's a hedge between, the one between us and, uh, one of the residential's is, is kind of a hedge that, that he had already put in himself. Uh, there's barnwood fencing along there. I don't know that the, that the owner of that property would want us to tear it down and replace it with something. I don't know. So there's a lot that goes into this.
Why?
There's a lot of consideration. There is significant cost, because it's a very large development. The entire property not, is not fully developed, and so there's lots of questions around, well, do we just do it around the portion that's developed and finished and only part of phase one? So there's been so many questions out there. We haven't really landed the plane yet on what we really needed to do and what was appropriate and what made sense to do. Totally happy to do something, but I don't want to be held hostage to allow our business to be successful. That's what's frustrating, is to hold us hostage.
Oh, I'm not holding you hostage.
You just said you would.
It was conditional when you got the permit, when you got the use granted. It was a condition. I'm not holding hostage. That's what it is.
It, it does not say that in the conditional use, so we would have absolutely complied with it.
Well, it says it in the RV code, which isn't even the convention, the, uh, the conditional use. This is the way, way it is worded. Each RV park shall adequately, be adequately screened using walls, permanent solid fences, and/or hedges of at least six feet in height from the other surrounding property to limit noise and trespassing.
I mean, that's pretty clear, but have you talked to the residents? Those, there's only two. I realize that, but have you talked to them?
Yeah, and one came in, we have, we've spoken with them.
And so how do they feel? I mean, that's.
One of them didn't seem to care. The other one would like some type of a fencing, and that, that home isn't completed yet. It's in process, and we had the RV park approved before they started their process. So, again, we've, we've given consideration to lots of things. We've just been in a tough position knowing what really is the requirement and where does it make sense, or are we, uh, compelled to do it?
Well, the ordinance, the code and the ordinance is that.
I was just going to say too, that is there a way that you guys can consider, you know, the surrounding parcels and the future planning of what's going to happen there? You know, David, or Dan brought that up, so. For them to go in and fence the entire thing, and then in three months or six months or whatever, now tear that fence out, because part of that's been annexed behind there. You know what I'm saying? Is there a way that we can?
Well, the way, the way.
Incrementally implement this if we know for sure this has been zoned residential, it's going to be residential. As that happens, add the fence where required.
I, I personally would be willing to look at you just fencing off down your driveway coming in where the residential home is, turning along that backside, then as other, the residential areas start to build up, then put your fence in. But like, it should be a part of, like, I agree with you, it's a huge cost, but it's like, it has, I'd be, I'd be not a happy soul if I had an RV park next to me and it wasn't fenced in. So like, I'm trying to look out for them or future residents too, but.
And that's what I'm alluding to, those individuals that are living there now.
Councilman Burton, Councilman Harris is talking.
I'll speak for current residents. I know, I heard from Mr. Jerry Robinson.
Mm-hmm.
His home was there before the park. There's no fence, and I think he's been pretty patient. He's just asking, did it be a fence separating the RV park from his home across the back part of his property or the side throughout? Any, any place where you have a home where you have to look into an RV park.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, rides.
So the, the driveway down is an easement to get, which grants access to the park. So, the question would be, does that require fencing?
I would, just across the back of their property.
I would, I would do down the driveway and across that backside, because these things aren't necessarily quiet either. If you're pulling in motorhomes and, you know, it's not necessarily a, a, helps block some noise off their residence, but.
Just to, just to jump in real quick and say, the, uh, the other requirement, which I think, I think they both apply. This is what it says. Fences to be required in certain areas. Site obscuring fences shall be required along the boundary line in the following cases. All commercial and industrial developments having a common lot line with property used for residential purposes shall require the construction of a seven foot high site obscuring masonry fence. And it talks about different types of fences, um, or some other different certain areas that it's required. So again, back to that, if you're reading that letter of the law, that you would need a seven foot high con- uh, masonry fence along what is currently used as residential, the rest of the property would require a six foot high.
So it's not zoning that, that dictates that requirement?
It is not zoning. It is use. Property used for residential purposes. So, so back to where we're at, around the entire park, you are required to have adequately screened using walls, permanent solid fences, and/or hedges of at least six feet. So, so I think that there's a lot of latitude in what screening using walls slash solid fences or hedges. Again, the id- the idea is to limit noise and trespassing, whereas between you and a residential use, the seven foot high block wall is required. That's just the way you read the, that's the only way to read the existing code.
And you wouldn't give consideration to whether there's any development out there at all?
I'm just saying what the code says. I, the council wants to do that and lets you phase it in as you.
Yeah, like, I, I would allow them to phase it in, you know, so like, because it's, you know, if it's not affecting anything right now, it will affect in the future, that the per- that conditional use permit is, can be, be taken away if they put residents in and you don't put the fence in, then you lose your right to your, you know, whatever terms we agreed to.
Right.
But that way you can chip away at it too, because that's, well, it, it is, it's a chunk of money, and.
Yeah, masonry is a hundred and twenty-five dollars a linear foot. Seven foot wall is probably nearly two hundred dollars a linear foot.
Actually, in Parawan.
Outrageous.
Yeah, you can get about.
In Parawan, it's seventy-two, seventy-five dollars a running foot. Just, it's cheaper here, I guess.
I just put one in. It was a hundred and twenty-five dollars a linear foot.
In, in Parawan?
Yeah, in my house.
Oh, okay, well. Should have got bids.
Maybe so. I did get bids, but.
Yeah, there is.
And that was five foot tall.
There is a Parawan mason that's really good that is around seventy-five bucks.
Yeah, okay, well, it sounds like we might need a cell phone though.
Yeah.
I ju- I just know the ordinance, when you're mixing residences with an RV park or residences and other businesses, the public policy behind it, especially for Mr. Robinson, who was there before this was approved, I, and I think he's been patient. He can expect, you know, he can expect a, a seven foot masonry wall, and I, I don't know how you say, well, could we do something else, or could we?
Well, my question is, is why are both applicable? We are an RV park. That's what we do. We're an RV park, and there's a specific fencing requirement for RV parks. Why isn't it that that's our requirement, our standard?
It's commercial to residential, so.
They're, they're, they're two different purposes, and, and there are, one is the requirement.
So which one trumps the other one?
Neither. They both apply. Because where you have a commercial use by a residential use, you have to have the seven foot high, um, masonry fence. That is for one specific purpose. That satisfies the other one also. But where there is not commercial right next to residential, you're allowed to go with the lower standard. So you can choose whether you want to put masonry all the way around it.
A masonry fence all the way around it would cost more than developing the RV park.
Yeah, like you probably.
It's unbelievable that the linear footage that we're talking about and the cost associated.
I'm not suggesting you do that. I said you could do that. Or you could put a masonry fence where it abuts the residential zone and do a cheaper fence around it, and then when that changes, that it changes.
So you don't want to do a fence at all?
No, I absolutely am happy to do the fence. If you feel like it's appropriate to come down the lane, even though technically that's, will likely not be our property, that it's an easement, and over time, that will be granted over to the city. But for now, it's an easement that allows access into our property. If you feel like that's required, we would do that, and we're happy to do a fence across the back of the, where the residential's. I would like to be able to comply with the RV requirement, which is a solid fence or a solid hedge or something that creates privacy and sight, uh, blocking or whatever that terminology was.
Let me, let me address that real quick.
Let me just finish, Dan, real quick. Are you opposed, just because he's talked to me, and I've talked to Jim Robinson, who I'm afraid of, um, are you opposed to putting in the seven foot ma- block wall in between your property and Mr. Robinson?
I'm just saying that that would be quite a financial challenge at this stage.
But, but.
I mean, we're, the, the reason we're here today is to try to extend our stay so we can get to a point where we can even, we, we don't even break even yet, and we've got to be able to do some things to get more people in there and be able to generate income so that we can do stuff that would benefit others.
I understand. I, I just have to look out for him, and he's entitled to the enforcement of the ordinance. I mean, I can't go to him and say, you know, they'd like it, but it's too darn expensive, Jerry.
Yeah. What, what if he were comfortable? Say it was a chain link with slats in it. What if he were comfortable with that?
He wa- he wants the noise and sight, and he, I think there's a reason that's in the ordinance, that's on.
Yeah, I will. No, and I'll, I'll go, I'll go, I'll certainly go there, yes. Um, I just wanted to clarify for everybody's understanding, um, what Casey's referring to. Um, this is on our master transportation plan as a through road. And the idea is that this area, if you can see on the screen, is a road that will go through to the, um, frontage road at some point.
It's going to make a loop. So right now, you literally only have that as an easement going.
So what I'm saying is, is this is not yet been.
It's not dedicated.
Dedicated as a, as a public city road. As development goes on around it, eventually this will turn into a city road, and it will not be part of the RV park.
Yeah.
Currently, it is a private drive for the RV park.
So I don't see how then we can require them to put a fence up that private drive.
I would, as courtesy, maybe violently.
Well, maybe as courtesy, but, but.
Yeah, I would say that too. That, that you got a center block between you and residential and that. Yeah, I would say that too, that I, that you got a center block between you and residential, and that would be a courtesy fence going down.
If you wanted to do that. But I don't see how we can re- we can make them do that. I mean, it's not their pro- it's not, not their property. Like, it's going to their property, but.
A- as of right now, it is the driveway, and, and at some point it'll become a road, and that's, this is the nuance and the gray area that makes it, makes it tough to, to deal with that, but.
And if a masonry fence is required anywhere, it's gotta be pretty much permanent. I mean, it's concrete, it's water, it's masonry, it's not, you know, two to five year solution. Those things are gonna be around forever, and so, and the cost that's associated.
But, but, and, and the.
You gotta consider the permanency of the type of fence.
The other thing that's interesting in the discussion is that if we were to do it along the property line, we would take out all of the trees that, that are pretty important to him, cause that's where the property line is. You would take out the fence that he's put up, which is kind of a barnwood constructed one. There's a lot of discussion probably with him, is that what you would really like? Do you want us to come through, take all that out? It'll impact his irrigation ditch, cause he will no longer have the access that he currently has to his irrigation ditch, which we just.
Just means you're gonna have to just set it on your property, like, you just leave their fence alone, you're gonna put it into your property, father.
But it is also.
It is on our property.
Then he needs to remove his fence, so.
All those trees that are behind it.
So you, it's just, the point was, there's a lot of discussion probably that should take place before we just, you know, bring the, the skidster out and start knocking everything down and putting up a, a fence. He may say, I would prefer it to be something different so that those trees and other things can, can remain.
Are you talking along the side, Casey, or along the back?
The side, but, yeah. But all, all across the back's where he's done a hedge over time, and again, maybe the, his preference would be to tear all that out and replace it. I don't know. I, you know, we haven't had discussions to that extent, but. I think if it were straightforward and easy, we would've had it done by now, and if we were profitable. Today, you can help us get to that point?
Uh, to me, it doesn't matter, like, it, it, this should've been solved sooner, you know? So like, this is something that shouldn't be coming forth, but now you want to add more time to your stay. This should've been done a long time ago, so.
Is there?
So we put the, the extended time on hold until we figure that whole.
David, that's a very fair point. I, the, the only thing I can say that in defense is that the RV park has a fence all the way around the perimeter of it. It, I, I was not aware of the mason- masonry one, cause I thought we would be held to what RV parks are required, which is screening. Whether it's, it's probably debatable all the way around, whether it complies or whether it needs to be beefed up or, or bigger, taller. Uh, we've had lots of discussions about it. We probably didn't fully understand the ramification of doing it and how fast, especially when the majority of it's undeveloped and there's, you know, uh, potentially two folks that are cons- that are impacted by it. So, it's just, it was a complicated issue, and we didn't know how to tackle it at the time, and there were a lot of pressing things just to try to get to a point where we can stay in business, so, there you go.
Councilmember Burton, you had something?
Yeah, I just have a question. Is there an issue between you and the property owners?
Absolutely not. In fact, we helped them and, and we, we were encouraging of the, the building permit so that the second, I don't know, uh, Alan Page's kids.
Well, and I just suggest you get with them and get it done.
All right, is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm wondering if, um, if there's a way that we could come up with some sort of an agreement that allows us to move forward with making the decision, some sort of a timeline being put on this, um, so we don't have to leave it in limbo and come back, um, but yet something that is hard and concrete. Um, I think some of the frustration that I picked up on from Planning Commission and now by the City Council is, is a feeling of, um, that promises made and that promise is not kept. I'm not, I'm not saying that myself, I'm trying to just, I've heard that from several people, and what I don't wanna do is leave this meeting with any vagueness as what the plan is. Um, so if we were to come up with some sort of a plan and put a timeline on it, um, even if it's a phased approach, or even if it's a, wha- whatever the motion would be on the, on the driveway that'll, in the future be a road, come up with a hard and concrete plan, put it in the minutes. One of the failings of the administration staff is that we never officially gave you, there was a conditional use put in place, but we never gave you a certificate that actually had things detailed. And I know Councilman Burton has asked for that, so that we actually just memorialize whatever we're gonna decide tonight, put it in that, um, not that the fence has to do with a conditional use permit, that's just the ability to do an RV park. And, um, so that's what I would suggest that we do, so we can move forward with something. The last thing that I wanna say is, if the council wants to consider looking at making these two codes more homogeneous, I think the intent of, of the code that has the separation of a masonry wall between commercial and industrial is really designed for a barrier or a buffer between commercial industrial uses. Now technically, an RV park is a commercial use. Is it as disturbing as industrial use? Or like a Walmart or something? You have people that are staying the night, and there are people, and they're potentially walking their dogs and all that stuff, and where they abut a residential zone, it is an impact. That's why that there is the purpose of having the screening and things. Does it rise to the level of, of a true commercial use the way the other code is? We could, if we wanted to, say, but this would require a code change, that we had, we adjust, if we wanted to, where it says that, that it is between commercial and industrial developments, that it says, um, shall require the construction of a seven foot high side obscuring fence, or in the case of RV park, boom, you refer to the RV code, and then it would, then they wouldn't be conflicting. So that's an idea that we could go through, but that, we can't do that now, cause the code is what it is now unless you guys wanna make a variance, so. Anyways, hopefully that provided some color to this, how we could ma- move forward.
That did make good sense.
So then, could we make a motion, and I'm just asking, and give a timeframe of six months to get the wall up? And then if they don't get it up in six months, we can take the, the time allotted away back?
That's kinda like what I literally wrote down before this meeting, was something to that effect, so like, six months, thirty percent, you got six months to get the fence done. If you don't have it done, we pull the conditional permit, you know? And then if you look at that, it all happens, and maybe we extend it to nine months, so.
So can I ask you, um, oh, are we through with this, this chapter?
How about it?
I hope so.
Still an open discussion.
Okay.
I wanna be after you.
A little bit calmer now. So, um, so I know you were in a business and, and also, you know, the city is a business too. You know, it's not like we're making, you know, huge profits in this, in this, uh, deal here. So you mentioned, I, I was just confused at the, you mentioned at earlier, um, meeting, and actually I, and you mentioned when I was in your lobby talking with you two, that the first twenty-nine days, if they stayed longer, the first twenty-nine days is always, will get the, uh, transit tax.
If it's just twenty-nine days or less. Once they exceed the twenty-nine days, then the state gets in and that tax is reimbursed.
Yeah, we. So the tax code, so if it, if it extends beyond twenty-nine days, then, then we don't collect that.
Okay.
We collect it, but we have to reimburse it.
Okay, so it's a, it's a state thing after twenty-nine days?
It is, it's state tax code. It, it, we, we just comply with it, the system drives everything, but it is tax code.
If, you know, earlier planning zoning meetings, you, you said if you can get around that a little bit, cause you can, you can stay twenty-nine days, and then they leave and check back in, we still lose that first twenty-nine days?
We do, cause once they come back in, it's the same individual, the same, same outfit, same everything. The state recognizes that and kicks it back out.
So I just.
The system that recognizes that this is the same customer that has checked in and checked out, and it's continuous days, so.
Okay, so I guess I, I heard you guys.
Which is complying with tax code. I mean, that's something that's important to do for sure, but.
Cause, you know, that's it. Little income to us, but not, not much. So I guess I, I mi- misunderstood what you, you guys said in your lobby.
Yeah.
About that.
So, so I think what you're referring to is, the discussion that, that I think we had was that up into twenty-nine days, we collect the tax, and then we send them on their way. After twenty-nine days, we wouldn't collect anything more anyway.
Yeah.
We just lose out on any revenue for ourselves and for the business that we can drive to gas stations, restaurants, grocery stores, which do charge, you know, sales tax and other taxes and help the base. So by having them stay longer, it does benefit the community, and it greatly benefits the other businesses in town.
Okay, I was just confused because, you know, I thought when I was sitting in your lobby, you, that hit me, you know, so, oh, okay. Well, you know, the first twenty-nine days is ours and the rest, but it, it's not that way.
Correct.
Cause I was confused, cause.
Correct.
Um, let's see, February nineteenth, in the planning zoning meeting, you stated that, um, we get the twenty-nine days.
Yeah, if they were to leave at twenty-nine days, then, then we would collect the tax and that submitted to the state, and the city gets a portion of that.
So if, if you leave, and you come back a week later?
If it's a week later, it's considered an additional sta- it's a, it's a new stay. If it's continuous is the key, yeah.
So if they came back that same day and checked back in and moved a spot?
Then it's continuous, and then the twenty-nine days, yeah, correct.
Okay.
It's a little complicated, but, and it's too bad that it is that way in my mind. I, I mean, if I were to have written the code, I would've said twenty-nine days, you collect it, and after that, you don't.
And then Washington and Enoch has a hundred and twenty days. Cedar doesn't have anything, but.
Enoch has a hundred, yes, Washington and a hundred and twenty, and Enoch.
Heber Cedar.
Heber does, they, they.
Hundred and sixty days.
Yeah.
And, uh, Cedar du- has no limit, St. George has no limit.
Now, are you talking about the city or the RV park itself?
The RV parks.
Yeah, the RV park itself has that, because they make more money on nightly stays, so they don't want people there. The city itself does not have that. So basically, Enoch, the mayor in Enoch, who's a good friend of ours, he put a hundred and eighty days on their late stay.
Yeah, but, John, go ahead and continue there though. I'm, you're, you're driving a point here, and I guess I wanna get to that.
No, no, I'm, I, I'm fine with that. You know, I just, I misunderstood you and your lobbying, and I, I misunderstood, you know, watching this planning zoning meeting three or four times. Uh, probably should've watched it five this morning, so. When you get it more down.
Hey, Councilmember Topham had something, she's been waiting.
Yeah, I was just waiting my turn, and it's fine. Do you now, or have you guys ever currently had customers stay longer than twenty-nine days?
Yes, we still go through that process of checking them in and out, and sometimes we shuffle them around to different locations, but, but, uh, largely the ones that do are the ones that actually are helping us. So we have those that stay that, uh, do the cleaning of the bathrooms, for example. We, we have others that take the phone calls and do reservations. So usually the, th- those that, for the most part, those that stay on a gr- on a more extended basis actually help us in managing the park.
What do you mean by for the most part? Like, I mean, I guess what I'm just trying to say, do you have?
Okay.
Are you already not complying to the city code, I guess is what I'm asking. Do we have that issue already?
It probably depends on if you're looking at the spirit or the letter of the law. The letter of the law, you're probably, the spirit, yes, we are, because we check them in and out, we tell them they have to leave, and, and we go through the process. If they choose to stay longer than twenty-nine days, then we go through that process of checking them in and out. So the spirit, you know, we're gonna probably say that. Spirit of the law, yeah, we probably, uh, we do. You might argue differently if, if that's exactly what the letter of the law is in, in the code.
And you obviously have multiple people staying there, they've been there in the same spot for quite a while, so.
Yeah.
I think it is kinda weird to move them to another spot and then check them out, check them in, but.
I mean, most of the people that call and ask if they can stay longer, they, they move on, we lose them, because th- they really don't wanna check in and out, they certainly don't wanna change locations if they're gonna stay longer.
No, it did appear.
They go somewhere, they go somewhere else.
It did appear to me that you're having some trailers and RVs being stored on the backside of the property.
We do.
And I don't know if that's, you can do that or not.
Um, I didn't see that, anything about it anywhere in the RV park code.
Like you can or you can't, or?
Didn't see, it's silent.
All right, can I make my point?
Sorry.
And that, no, no, I just wanna continue. So I guess if we are not able to enforce this ordinance right now, how are we gonna make sure that you're complying with the six or the nine month, and not letting people stay for a year? Like, I, I know you guys, I want to be able to trust you, and I want to, like, I don't wanna lose faith in, I don't know. I just, I don't know. Do you get, do you kinda get what I'm trying to say? Like, if you're already doing it now, what's to say that even if we do grant you, and I'm not saying we're not, like, six or nine months?
Yeah.
What's to stop you from extending that and pushing the limit to not get caught?
Yeah, that's a good, good question. Um, can I ask you a question back? So what if we, what, what if we had a customer, say it's nine months and they're building a house, and they get to that, end of that nine month, and their house isn't done, they need a couple more weeks? What do we do? Do we check them in and out? Do we move them location? Do we say, sorry, you gotta leave? I mean, those are the kinda challenging things. I, we, I wanna stand up here and say, absolutely, we'll s- because this opens the door, it allows us, it's something we've asked for, it allows us now to be competitive and hopefully get to that point where we're profitable. So I wanna say, absolutely, we'll stick to nine.
I think, I think it's fair to say, unless there's a complaint and something egregious or a pattern, or like Mr. Robinson complains that he doesn't have his masonry fence, that we have to enforce.
Yeah.
Then you'll be fine.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody's gonna say, you're nine months and one day, or that his house is almost done, but you need to kick him out.
Yeah.
We're reasonable people.
I'm just saying, we don't want, oh, go ahead.
I really think that the, the, uh, population that we're talking about is really, really low, that somebody that's gonna want to stay longer than nine months, um, there's only probably two situations to this point I can even think of where they would stay beyond that, if we would allow them to. I, I, uh, all I can say to you is that we can establish it in our system, when it, we, we can book it for the nine months. When it hits that, we can just say, we're sorry at that point, that's the longest you can stay. And, and we can take that hard line stance, and if that's what you, if you feel like we should do, we will do that.
And I know that.
I'd like a little bit of fle- I mean, that's why I was saying, let's not put a requirement, because there's probably very few that this is gonna really impact, but it could be somebody that's building a house, or there could be circumstances where the nine months isn't quite enough.
And that's where I'm getting. There could always be extenuating circumstances that pushes us out to a year, eighteen months. We don't want, I don't think it's even your intention to have permanent residents in this park.
Absolutely not.
You know, and I don't.
The fewer the better, really, the fewer the better on the long term.
And I don't want to see that, and I don't want to see this become a permanent housing for people.
Yeah, I agree with you.
In their RVs.
Totally agree with you.
I think, I think it's a valid time to bring up the fact that they're asking for thirty percent.
You talking to the microphone? Thank you.
You know, an additional, what, thirty percent of your total capacity for the long term. And really, all that's doing is, is, is creating an opportunity for them to carry themselves through the winter. You know, you get these people that wanna stay a little bit longer term just for that revenue. It's only thirty perc- thirty percent of the total capacity of the park, you know, and, and the nightly rentals are the ones that, you know, make more money anyways, so there is a cap on, you know, that capacity.
I don't believe you'll see a lot of people wanting to stay all winter in Parawan.
No, not in an RV. I mean, the intent of RVing is not to come and stay long term, it really isn't, but there are circumstances where they do. And we lose a lot of those, and that's, uh, uh, at the end of the day, all we're trying to say is let us capture that business, because if we capture that business, it helps us push business to all of the businesses in Parawan, and that benefits the city as a whole. And all of the re- all of the things that. And that benefits the city as a whole. And all of the re- all of the things that we were concerned about back when we opened the RV park have not happened. We've continued to develop, we don't have police calls. Um, and, and we have a, a very rigorous, uh, requirement of what of, uh, the age of your RV park, the, the, uh, what it looks like. It has to meet requirements or you don't come in. So we do self-enforce. I mean, this is something that we, it's really important that the folks that come in there are good people.
Councilman Harris, I brought that up on the screen if you wanted to address what you showed me.
As far as the storage of, uh,
Yeah.
Our, you know, parking RVs, storing RVs, it states that for the purpose of commercials, was that, yeah.
Yep.
For the commercial sales and services, the following shall not be considered an RV park. The parking of any RV which is being stored but not used for either permanent or temporary living quarters. They're not supposed to be there.
So you're talking about if there's RVs that are just being stored along the back?
Right.
Then that's, that's not an RV park?
It's not an RV.
Not, that's not allowed in an RV park, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Is that the interpretation of that?
For purposes of commercial sales and service.
Which were not.
The following is not considered an RV park. The parking of any RV which is being stored but not being used either as permanent or temporary living quarters.
I just don't read that to say you can't, you can't store them there, but sometimes my interpretation's different.
I mean, to me, it says
You get commercial.
For the purpose of commercial sales and service and you're not doing commercial sales or service of an RV. So when it says for the purpose of commercial sales and service.
But you're getting sales, being that it's commercial, to me, that's commercial sales. Cause I'm sure you're not letting them park there for free.
So I, I think what I'm hearing the mayor say is, is if you're doing sales and service of RVs, you're storing them, you're not using them as permanent or temporary living quarters. And I hear what Dave is saying, sorry, Councilman Harris is saying is the parking of RVs being stored and not used as permanent or living quarters is not an RV park. And you are an RV park, so you shouldn't do it. So it's two ways of looking at the same side of that coin. We could probably get a, I don't know, a legal opinion on that, I don't know. I can see how you could read it both ways.
Are you, do you use it to store people's RVs?
There's just two or three, or there's more than that. There's what, eight down there? There, there are people that have stayed there before and
They keep coming back.
Sometimes it's a boat, sometimes it's, uh, uh, we, if somebody's at the park and they have a tool trailer, we put it down there, so it's out of the way. So we use it for multiple rea- you know, multiple purposes. But there is a, we, we do charge a small fee for those that do technically store it there.
Like, I don't see a problem if you come back in and we try and figure out a way to fix that, you know, cause it's not overly critical.
Honestly, if you say that that code tells you you can't do it, then we won't do that. Cause it's not a big deal to us, we just do it as a
No, I think it would
Kind of a convenience or a courtesy.
I think it would be less, uh, onerous to surrounding properties, the community. With nobody staying there, you're just storing it than if you had people in it.
Yeah, and there's no people in them. Yeah, they're just sitting there.
I, I would interpret it that way, but, but that's me.
You don't have any electricity back there, do you?
No.
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 So
Just gravel.
We have a gentleman that comes from New York, he flies in every month and spends ten days at the park. And he just has his classmate sitting back there. He goes, I pull it out, I
Every month from New York? What is his name?
Bill. He says, his wife says, I can only handle him for twenty days, then he's gotta leave, so he comes out here and takes ten days.
Reciprocal, actually.
The one thing I want to say as far as the people that are coming into the park, I meet them on a regular basis, every day, you know. I'm, I'm there most, almost every day. We've had a congressional medal of honor winner there. And that means a lot to me. I mean, when he told me, he's wearing his thing, I mean, I got goosebumps everywhere. Because the type of person that he is. We have heroes, we have a number of veterans, we have amazing people that come into that park that are in our community. I mean, it's just, it's just amazing the type of people that we get that come there. But, and his name was Ray, Ray, I can't remember his last name, might look him up. But it's like, you know, that was impressive to me. Being in the military and everything to see that medal around his neck.
Well, you forgot about Santa Claus.
What's that?
You forgot about Santa Claus.
Yeah, he's there too.
Okay.
Just in December.
Yeah.
But we have amazing people that come to that park.
All right, we've had some really good discussion and I think that we may have a direction if there's someone that's ready to make a motion.
Well, I would move to doing a six-month, thirty percent conditional use permit on, if the fence gets done on that residential property.
So the clarification was nine months and thirty, or you, are you suggesting to shorten that?
Six months right now, yeah.
So if you're building a house, it's gonna take longer than six months?
Um,
Is that okay?
I'm sorry, doesn't
Four to six months, but
Okay.
But
Oh, for the fans?
Yeah, just so, just to get, no.
Sorry.
Now, we got the six months to get the fence done. Then if you don't get it done, then we just pull it to that point.
Then you go
Then we can look at extending it to nine months, thirty percent.
Can I ask one question as far as, go ahead. I was just saying as far as the verification of the fence stand as far as our drive in with Mr. Robinson, um,
I would agree that you don't have to put a fence along that.
Well, it's just a matter of if he wants one, we need to come to terms as far as what's gonna happen with everything that's gonna happen there.
If it's a street.
And I can talk to him. I, I'll talk to Jim and I'll talk to him and, and you believe that, but what do you have currently?
Currently is his fence. He has a, um, kind of a pole fence.
It's a, no barnwood fence.
His fence is on your property?
It's on our property and the trees that are there that he probably holds pretty
Like the first big corner one, it's on our property, the next one's about halfway.
Okay.
So, I mean
I just know he wants
Those are the challenges, but
He wants a fence.
Yeah.
Whatever the property line is, I think we're safe in saying that.
Well, it still is kind of a sticky point where it is just a, a future street. You know, that's, I don't know how you force the fence to be put down that, so.
Well, I would
Can, can we talk with him and just find out what, what his perspective is and where he would really like it? And, and kinda use that in our decisioning, or is that, because that's not code or ordinance or? Yeah. I, yeah, I, I guess I was talking along the backside too, but. What do you?
Remake your motion, Dave.
Sorry.
All right. Okay, so I move to, to go six months, thirty percent on a conditional use permit. And in that timeframe, you gotta have the fence done, figured out and done. And all, just that was up the north side of the property line where the residential property is met. And if it's not met and done, then we move you back to twenty-nine days.
So, so that's the south property line though, a lot
Yeah, your south.
That's what you mean.
Robinson's north, yes, yes.
So, masonry, right, seven foot?
So could the condition, just because I, I understand clearly their model and their ask, could it be if the fence is in place and they are automatically given the nine months as opposed to then they can come back in and try to get what they're asking for? Cause if the, if the mitigation is the fence goes in, then that would give them what they're asking for, which is nine months. I mean, that would
I still, I wanna do six months.
So let's, we, we gotta talk process for a second. Um, we needed to, we needed to decide what we want to do cause ultimately we are, we have a recommendation to update the code to allow a certain thing by conditional use permit. Since it was still really vague as to where this was gonna go, we didn't write an ordinance and have an ordinance prepared to vote. What we're going to do is make a decision of what it's gonna look like. And then next time, and, and we'll decide and it'll be what it is. But I'm saying, we, we just weren't ready to do the ordinance. So next meeting, we will have the ordinance. So we need to say what that code is going to look like, that's one of the things we're doing. And then we can give them that conditional use permit and put the conditions on that Dave, uh, uh, Councilman Harris wants to put on. So what I'm saying is we probably have a, a motion to say what we want the code to look like, specifically what it has been described by Planning Commission as the allowance of a longer stay in a certain percentage of the park up to, and the definition of the longer stay by conditional use permit. We will then write an ordinance and we'll vote on that next time. The Planning Commission also, because we didn't want this to go all the way back around, they made a recommendation that if that is done, that these guys would get such a conditional use permit. So we'll have both of them as agenda items next week to vote on. So what I'm saying is the, the motion that you ought to make is that we move forward with doing that ordinance and we'll give them a conditional use permit next week with those conditions. And you can, you can say what that is now. That way these guys don't have to come back next time and we'll, we'll do it in two weeks. But that's what we're actually needing to do.
But don't you need the specific time in there?
Yep, time and percentage of the park.
Right.
And we'll write the ordinance that says upon conditional use permit, we will do up to that. And then next time, we will also have on the agenda the conditional use permit that Dave is, is asking, assuming this passes.
I know we'd be just say that, but I am so confused. I don't know that we can approve something tonight based upon
We can't.
What a potential ordinance change might be.
We're giving direction for the ordinance next week.
Okay.
That's what we need to do.
Okay.
We're not really making a motion.
Say that.
That's what I said. I just said it really long and you summed it up really well.
That way you can't vote on anything tonight. Did you want them to vote on something?
Well, I thought it was on the agenda to where, on those
It's on the agenda to make a decision.
Make a decision.
But the decision has to be put in by ordinance. I couldn't write the ordinance because we didn't know exactly what they were gonna do.
They're entitled to have a vote with what we have on the books tonight. You wanna vote on that, they can vote on that, right?
Yep, decide what we're gonna put in the ordinance. That's what I'm saying needs to be the motion.
So based upon the ordinance as it is now written, they would like, if they want us to vote on
The way it's written right now, they can't do it. We have to amend our code to allow what they're asking for.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, it's only twenty-nine days right now.
That's right, that's right.
We just, and, and I would have had an ordinance ready, but we didn't know what they were, what the council was gonna decide what direction.
So you're talking about just that amendment, the length of stay, nothing more?
Yep.
Yep.
And the length of stay, the way the Planning Commission wanted it, was the length of stay would be allowed to be longer with a conditional use permit.
And they recommended nine months and a thirty percent.
Yeah, and you guys can do whatever you want, but yes, that's what was the recommendation.
When you say the next recommendation, you're talking the planning and zoning?
Nope, I'm talking city council.
You don't
Planning Commission's done with it.
Next week.
Oh, two weeks.
Yep. But I'm saying, i- if there's a consensus in a vote, these guys can know that's what's gonna happen next time. It won't be official till it does, but
So to back up to the, the motion that's on the table, cause we actually have a motion on the table.
Yeah.
Why would it not be a conditional use? Why would it need, be a
The motion is we need to say what we're gonna put in the ordinance.
Because we need a new ordinance.
That's right.
Correct?
And then you are putting conditions on them and it's two separate acts. We need to say that we can do this with a conditional use permit and what the conditions you would like to put on them. And that's, that's fine, we'll just come back with those two agenda items and vote on those next.
But you can't, you can't vote on those two things, figure out what they are and vote on the two of them tonight?
No, because the ordinance written says twenty-nine days. So they can vote and approve it for twenty-nine days tonight, if you'd like.
It's already twenty-nine days.
Yeah, yep. And so, and Planning Commission made a recommendation.
Here what you want, they have to change the law.
Yeah, I ju- I just, I don't
We can't
Process, but I thought that tonight was that meeting where we discuss and agree and approve
And we
Do the ordinance change plus establish the conditional use and the criteria and the conditional use.
We couldn't have, you have to, you have to notice an ordinance, specifically what the ordinance is gonna be in the paper for a certain amount of time. Um, and then, and have that
Okay.
There. And the ordinance is done very specifically. We just didn't know however the council was gonna go to even put the language in for the ordinance. We just had to figure out where we were headed first. Next meeting, we'll do the ordinance, so. So this is the meeting that matters. And we put it on an action item because these guys are gonna vote to what's gonna go in there. So that's why we're doing it this way. I, government's dumb, I get it. We gotta follow the process.
All right, sorry that I spoke, cause we had some momentum. Um, do you want to say your motion again? So you have it, Callie, or do we have a person, we need to start over? Cause we do have a motion on the table.
Or you can make a friendly amendment to the motion.
So can Dave make a, an amendment to his motion or does it have to be from someone else?
Well, I think you already seconded it. Somebody already
I thought I did too.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table and a second. All those in favor?
Nay.
Nay.
Were you asking for the nays or the yays now?
Well, I
Repeat the
All those in favor.
You should say
Oh, sorry.
Or, and then go
All those in favor.
Nobody was saying
Okay. Then opposed.
Okay, any opposed?
Nay.
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 Now you make your new motion.
Well, wait a minute.
It is that motion, but
For that motion, but Council
They can make a, they can make a new motion. I mean, if it was for approval or denial.
It would be done.
It would be done. But that motion was for six months and thirty days and then the improvements to be made within six months.
Thirty percent.
Are there, and as opposed to going back and doing a subsidies motion based upon the, or alternative motion, someone else has a different motion because it's not a yes, no. Or somebody could make a motion, I hear by move, we deny everything because this has been going on way too long and it's way too confusing and
They might accept that.
I mean
I'm kidding you.
Okay.
A yes, no motion, it would, it would end it.
So we need We make a motion to approve the wording to go into the ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay. For sixty-day stay on thirty percent.
Six months or nine?
Six months, excuse me, six months with thirty percent. And you have to have the wall up on the south side, was it?
I would keep them separate. See, that would be the motion for what the ordinance is gonna be.
Okay.
By conditional use.
I'm sorry, everybody.
Oh, stop.
Okay, I stopped for that.
And then next week, we will, we will, we will have that ordinance and we'll also have the conditional use for this.
For the wall.
And we'll put the conditions on at that time.
Am I able to say?
Point of information, um, I, I think there's a little confusion. We're gonna make this ordinance, a recommendation for this ordinance. So if we wanted to have the ordinance stay six months, that's what it's gonna be. And then you're gonna add these other conditions later. Or if you want it longer, nine months, now's the time to do that.
That's what I was gonna say. We should probably say the longer term.
Want it to be.
But then we're gonna put conditions on their conditional use.
Well, later.
Yes.
You gotta do the, you gotta do the ordinance for the time period now.
Longer stay now.
And then do that later.
Yes.
That's assuming you want nine months.
All right, you want to make a friendly amendment to your motion?
Can I make the amendment from six months to nine months?
Right. Do we have, do we have a second?
I'll second it. I don't, yeah. For nine months.
To amend
The code.
The code at the next meeting to change from twenty-nine days to, to nine months and
Thirty percent.
Thirty percent.
Thirty percent.
By conditional use permit.
And they can add conditional use.
And then next week, we'll also do these guys' conditional use permit.
Correct.
Of the wall.
No, don't. And I seconded it. Go ahead, no, I'm kidding.
I think we're good. I think we
Still confused, cause I am. It didn't pass. It was defeated.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Those opposed?
I don't even know what the motion even is, so.
The motion was that we are going to bring an ordinance next week that will allow for up to nine months and in thirty percent of the park, by conditional use permit. and in thirty percent of the park, by conditional use permit.
Correct.
Basically following the planning zoning's recommendation.
All right.
And then. And next week, we will first have that ordinance, and if it passes, the next thing on the agenda will be their conditional use permit to get that. And you can put conditions on them at that point.
All right.
With the wall then.
All right.
Yeah.
I'll say aye.
Nay.
All right, we have four ayes and one nay.
Yep, question? We're, I'm sorry, we.
No, in that, in that case, the motion carries. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for everything.
Casey, I'm not here to hold you hostage. I'm just here to, here to ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're moving now to item number fourteen, and that is discussion and approval of language to be used in AJM Investments LLC annexation agreement. And we have Dallas Buckner here, the engineer, to represent that project.
Good evening, counsel. Thank you for working with my schedule, pushing me towards the end. Um, so with some pretty short notice, we provided a revised version last night to Dan to forward to you all. Um, the, Dan's original draft and ours, we got the attorneys involved and they threw a lot more language in there. My contributions was mostly to, um, section five, which I think is, uh, probably what council's most interested in. I don't, I'm, I'm assuming you all received it, but I don't know if you went through it. I don't know if we wanna go through it kind of one by one, or if there's certain things that we added in there that, uh, is giving any of the council members heartburn.
Before we get into the nuts and bolts, in light of the confusion as to what we're trying to do tonight, let's talk high level real quick so everybody knows what we're doing. Um, one of the issues with, with the draft that you sent said that the public hearing was tonight. We're not doing a public hearing tonight. The statutorily required one. Um, we will schedule that, um, public hearing. We talked about having the language of the annexation agreement resolved, so the public had something to speak to when they come for a public hearing. So that, this is not the public hearing. We are also not voting on whether to approve this annexation agreement, because that's really the thing we will do by ordinance, um, after the public hearing. But we knew that there was a lot of meat to chew on in the annexation agreement, and we decided to do that in a public meeting and to go through those things to remind everybody on the council and those watching online and those here in person. Um, we had a city proposed annexation agreement, which was a draft, was sent out to the city council the, the day after our last meeting, so that they could really chew on that. We sent a copy also to, um, um, AJM and that Dallas, so that they could look at it. And, um, in the city's annexation agreement, there was some, kind of some options on different things that there may be a division of the vote or a difference of opinion amongst the council. So that agreement had op- had, for example, a line on water connection, and then there was an option one and an option two. With the intent being that the council could discuss those things and they could pick one or the other, or come up with a third option, right? Um, I have tried to graphically represent the issues that maybe there's any sort of a division of, of different options that the city might wanna co- consider and put in that agreement. And then, um, of course, as Dallas mentioned, we did just last night get, um, a and I'm gonna call it a hybrid, because I believe that was the language, um, of an annexation agreement that is a hybrid with a development agreement. To explain to everybody maybe what the differences are. An annexation agreement is not necessarily required by law. It is required by the city's annexation policy plan. And, and it is an agreement of what is gonna look like if we agree to annex the property in. Um, in state code, there's such a thing called a development agreement. And development agreements are allowed anytime that you're going to define more specifically what can happen in a development. There are certain things by law that you're allowed to have development agreements. One of them is an annexation. So what we're calling an annexation agreement is really also a development agreement. Hence, the attorney that, um, Al- that AJM hired, they have combined into and have restructured the formatting. They've done a little more than restructured the formatting, because they've added paragraphs, changed paragraphs. Some of them are pretty significant to the effect. And we were, we're gonna wanna look at those. So, having said all of that, what we're trying to do tonight is to hammer out some of the details. Um, that the city wants to see in the annexation agreement. And I've tried to bring in as, as in summary format, the, uh, development opinion on, on what those should look like too. And it's up to the council and the mayor as, as to whether we wanna consider that opinion as we're working through that, or do we wanna finish it, send it over to them? Like, we don't wanna have too many iterations, so if we can come up to some sort of an agreement and it's like, yeah, we can change it a little bit, that's the way the annexation, the developer wants to look at it. We don't really care, fine, let's incorporate that. Um, at the end of the day, we need to try to work through what the city wants to see in that annexation agreement. And then ultimately, the ball will go into the court of the developer to decide whether they wanna accept that or counter offer something else. Um, so the goal tonight is just to work on that language. We are not going to approve the total agreement. We're just going to work on the language. Okay, so having said that, on the left column, we have features of the agreement. The top one is zoning, for example. Then the, then the first city preference option is one of the things the city had talked about maybe considering. The option two is another common idea that I've heard from city council that they may wanna consider. In the far right column is the developer's preference as I did, as I could determine it based on what was sent last night. So I probably spent about ten hours on this since you emailed it. Um, and the, I, my idea is that we could go through these one by one and take notes and and if, and if it comes right down to there's no consensus, we take a vote on which one we're going to pursue and put in the agreement. That's why we put it on the action item, is so that we could literally vote on these aspects. Does that sound good? Dallas, after that presentation, does that sound like that kinda makes sense? We try to ma- make this sausage all at the same time. Ultimately, this is gonna go back to, you know, AJM and, and its attorneys to see what, what they wanna give as far as feedback. Assuming we come up with the language we really wanna see in there. Oh, one thing I'll, also I gotta say. Um, given the weight of this and the fact that you have obtained counsel and, um, we've had a very little time to review that, I don't know if we're gonna feel comfortable by, by not having some actual legal review. I don't think Scott's even reviewed your agreement yet at all. So if we can come to a decision on all the m- major big issues tonight, I would consider that as screaming success. We would then wanna have a legal review from our council. In other words, I don't know if we're gonna be able to have a public hearing and a vote on this next meeting. Um, but we are gonna need some time for a legal representation. Unless we just say, this is the city agreement, we send it to you, and if you accept it, then we could move forward. But I don't know how, I don't know how hung up, I guess, Alex is on wanting to follow his attorney's advice of that hybrid approach.
Well, I, I think that as far as discussions with council, the, the term annexation development's kinda been used interchangeably, and so that's why we felt like
Yeah.
Kinda made sense to do it.
Yep.
Um.
I, I totally hear, get, get you there.
And so, but with the restructuring, I figured that was something that between legal counsel and staff, a lot of that would get worked out. I felt like section five, which is kinda the highlights on the spreadsheet.
Most of them. Yep.
Um, is the stuff that council would really have input on, but then the, the technical legal things that were added. So I, I think that's appropriate. I was planning to mostly work through these items. But then between Scott and staff and review and let the attorneys do their thing, so.
Does that sound agreeable to everybody?
Can I ask a question?
Where's Scott?
Not even here. That's us, it was for Scott. Like, is he comfortable, like, has he done annexation agreements, or do we need to hire someone specifically for this?
Let's ask him when he gets back.
Yeah. Because, I don't know. It's, I've never done this before. Our city's never done it. I don't wanna screw it up.
Well, we've done annexation agreements. We just haven't done a hybrid annexation development agreement. Um.
Well, my concern is, is when they involve an attorney and they're, they have their interest in ha- at hand. And they've been very meticulous and gone through and made a lot of changes that give me an, an issue. And I don't feel comfortable, because I don't have legal expertise. So I think that we need, I wish Scott was here.
Oh, he's going to the bathroom. Just relax. No, I'll be there next.
You're too relaxed. But anyway, I think that, uh, I wanna ask Scott if he feels comfortable, or if we need to have, he wants to have some assistance in this.
Yeah, and I, I think that, I think that all that discussion between our team and the city, I, I think all that is fine and expected as far as all the legal stuff that was added to it. Um, but, and I, I'm confident we can come to a resolution with all the things that are outside of it. I think the main thing that we're, at least for tonight, trying to focus on is just the trigger points and requirements from the developer and the city as far as it pertains to different phases of subdivision. But all the definitions and subsections and all that, that kinda stuff, I think we can work that out between.
Scott, we have a question for you.
I had a criminal case I had talked to the chief about. What is it?
Well, now you make me feel guilty.
We're just gonna let the, you gotta go.
Well, okay, we've got this, you know, we're, have you seen this where it was edited and redlined by their, their attorney?
No, I talked to Dan late today and he's still working on it.
Okay. The question is that, uh, we feel a little uncomfortable where they've got, you know, a lot of legal eyes on this. And do you feel comfortable?
No, I haven't seen it.
Okay.
This is, was finalized when?
We sent it to Dan last night, so it's, it's very short notice.
Yeah, so that's why I would, no, I haven't.
Well, can I, I wanna ask you this, Scott. And you can tell me where to go. I don't care.
Okay.
You're, I have respect, you're an expert in your own realm. You're brilliant. You're a legend of your, in your own time. But do you?
Well, not at all.
But I wanna know, I've had an attorney that told me, this is serious enough. We need to have somebody that has expertise, because he says all these, you know, attorneys have expertise in different, where are you going?
He just started telling me how smart I am.
Yeah, he didn't, yeah. Anyway.
And he wants another attorney.
He, no. He says that every attorney has expertise in different areas. Should we get, he says, you should have one that has expertise in land use, in these development agreements, in these, uh, you know, these annexation agreements or so on. And so I, I just wanna know how you, do you feel that you need somebody to help you work, just for this, just for this?
No, I feel very comfortable reviewing this, David. I've been a county attorney for twenty-five years now, planning commission, zoning commission.
Okay. I know that.
But I do need to say more than one day in advance.
Right. And you have a lot of contacts. We know you're well, you're known all over the world, so.
Yeah.
And you can, and call in a lot of people.
But if I can get a copy of it and get some time to review it, I'm happy to do it.
Okay. All right. But I don't so. Don't get me wrong, because I, you have my utmost respect. I know.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to review it.
Thank you.
Okay. I just thank you, because I don't feel comfortable.
And if I didn't, I would tell them.
I mean, I don't think any of us have this legal expertise. And this is serious.
Scott does.
Well, I, okay, I'm talking about the five of us.
Yeah.
Or should I say six or seven? Now, Dan, Dan has, you know, he's a, he's a man of his own, and we know that, but, uh, we.
Oh, boy. Okay, he's getting thick in here.
Yeah, but.
I think he better speak while he's ahead.
Okay, so let's, let's go to the, the, the issues if we can work through these things, if that's okay.
Okay.
The first one may take a fair amount of time, but it's a, it's a heavy one. This is, um, and I'm glad to see some of our, uh, uh, planning and zoning, uh, commission representatives out here. Good job, guys. You worked through this a lot. Essentially, what we have is a, a proposal by the, um, the petitioner. And, um, and a recommendation by planning commission. And Heather, you weren't here earlier, but I did follow your wishes to say if it was not a unanimous decision on an earlier thing. I can't remember whether it was an unanimous decision or not, but there was a positive recommendation to, uh, to send to council the second version of the zoning map. Now, it's really important for those that haven't followed all of Planning Commission, understand that this is not a, um, I'm not gonna say it's not straightforward, because it's fairly commonly used nowadays, but this is a little bit of a hybrid. They're asking for certain zones in different pods and a res- total density restriction on average across all of them that would lead to the same result in the developers, or in the, in the petitioner's opinion of what is conducive with the general plan. The general plan's future land use map has this as light density residential. And they are asking for a mix of zones. I'll explain the colors. There's green being quarter acre lots, blue being half acre lots, purple being R three type zoning, yellow being R two type zoning, the red is a commercial slash civic type use. And finally, in the orange, in the c- in the corner, that's, um, area that would be used for, um, a, um, sewer lift station and, um.
Stormwater basis.
Stormwater detention. Now, we're, we're not gonna zone the stormwater detention a different zone, but, but, but the point is, is that it's not calculated in, um, with, uh, residential housing, nor is the red. So they're, um, essentially saying that by the time they pinch and pull density and, and, and even have more restriction on density than what would otherwise be allowed in R one, in the blue area, that they can then gain extra density in the purple and in the yellow. And even some restriction on density within the green in order to allow for the additional density in the purple and the yellow. So that was the idea and the concept. It went through planning commission. Um, there was pretty robust discussion. Again, I don't remember if it was unanimous, but the planning commission ultimately signed off on a positive recommendation for this. So that's option one. Option two is that we set zoning at some exact zone or some mix of exact zones. So obviously, there's a two different concepts. Um, one of the things, without trying to nudge you in any one direction, but as I read through the agreement, as I studied the agreement, there's even a difference of opinion on how to go about doing the density restriction. I'd love to just bat that for, back and forth offline with, with Dallas. But several paragraphs of the, um, agreement deal with how you deal, how you accomplish this density restriction over time. At what point is this not needed to be recorded against property when you're subdividing? What happens when the annexation agreement times out? You know, what happens if there isn't performance done? Can the zoning be changed? So there's all these things, all these different paragraphs and possibilities within the agreement that kind of depend on our approach. If we say, you know what, rather than doing density restriction in this mixed match of zoning, and we just say, we'll approve X zone or a mixture of zones, and we just lay off of the density restriction, then we don't need to have as much complexity in our agreement moving forward. So there's kind of two ways of looking at it. You have the recommendation planning zoning that these guys are recommending, or you can do any other type of thing, because it has been looked at. So that's the first thing.
Dan, if I could jump in, so the, could we maybe throw that map back up on the screen? So, um, our intent with the map is to, to kind of do a blend of what Dan said. So this is more a breakdown showing how we would accomplish those. But essentially, what we're proposing is that all of the green, orange, and blue be zoned R one. The yellow be zoned R two, the purple be zoned R three, and the red be zoned either commercial or civic. Um, but our intent is to, there's, there's a couple different ways to go about it. There's like a master planned zone itself. Or what we're proposing is just saying, hey, instead of just blanketing our whole site with R one, we took the R one, what we forecast as the realistic density. So if we were to look at the table on there in orange, if we just took the gro- So, if we were to look at the table on there in orange, if we just took the gross acreage and divided it by quarter acre lots, we could get seven hundred and twenty homes in theory. That's not accounting for losing road right of ways, inefficiency in layouts, cul de sac lots, all that kind of stuff. So, the blue on the right side is, our total is five fifty six, so we're basically saying that we're gonna account for about a quarter to a third of losses for right of way, which is generally where I see R one developments lose out, you generally lose twenty five to thirty percent of roads, um, and then you have your net lots. And so, we've taken the approach of saying, hey, this area on the future land use plan is planned to be R one. If we take the approach of, we assume we're gonna lose twenty to thirty percent for roads, we would get to five hundred and fifty six units. So, that's what we've requested in the annexation agreement and on this map is the five hundred and fifty six. But we're saying, hey, we're not gonna just do a C of R one, we'd like to have some half acre, some quarter acres, some R two, some R three. The sum of the, the sum of the parts is still equivalent to what an R one across the whole project would look like. Does that, does that make sense? And so, we're gonna say, hey, the purple's gonna be R three, so it would be higher density. The blue would be more half acre, three quarter acre, maybe even up to acre lots. And so, we're just kind of redistributing instead of just having one type of subdivision across the whole hundred and sixty six acres. But our, but our request with this map and, and having it be a part of the annexation agreement is to say, hey, this is the exhibit that we want recorded with it, and this will act as our zoning map. But the city doesn't have distinctions between the R one zone for quarter acre or half acre. But by capping us at five five six or five, whatever, I can't remember, five fifty six. Um, it's basically, you have this many units and every phase we subtract from there. And if we get to the end and we have fifty acres left over, but we've already done our five five six, then at some point, they'd have to come back before council and try to request some kind of amendment, and then it's to the council's discretion at that time. So, that's, so we're basically putting a, a density restriction on, but we're trying to change zoning. And then with the proposal, um, with the Larry Pendleton annexation and the city had, um, proposed some changes to their zoning ordinance. We're still saying, hey, we're willing to live and die by whatever the zoning ordinance is at the time that we come through with a subdivision ordinance. So, we're just requesting R one, R two, R three, and at whatever per, time we come through with a subdivision application, whatever R one says at that time is what we design to, whatever R two says at that time, we design to, whatever R three is at that time, we design to.
And we'll need to, that's one of the problems with the agreement as it was sent, it, the way the agreement is sent, it would lock in land use code at the effective date of the annexation agreement, which, which in the city's, in the city's annexation agreement that we sent out, it would, it said, and anything that is pending. So, we, I, I know that the intent of the council is to make sure that what gets finished with, with rural done right, zone upgrade will apply here, so we just want to make that, that, that change, so anyways, that was, that was one of the red flags to, to talk about, but. Anything else to say about that, and I'm wondering if there's any, any discussion amongst the, the council?
But if, if we were to.
Well, are you asking them to be on receive mode, hear you in Dallas speak, or are you gonna ask the council?
That's why I just asked the council.
Oh, I have opinions, I'm speaking.
Take action.
Yeah, that's why we put on an action item, so we could, so we could move down the line and know what components are gonna be in the agreement.
Okay, and what action would you like them to take on one?
So, the action to take on one after there's any debate would be, do you, do you like the idea of this idea, of, of this recommendation of the map and this pinching and polling of density to, to acqui- to have on the sum of its parts light density residential, or do you want to do something else? We gotta, we gotta assign a zone, if you will.
The, the one thing I was just gonna add real quick is that the version that was up there was the second, second version that we had prepared. We had gotten some feedback from the planning commission, they, and I think they wanted to see the yellow, which is the R two medium density, they wanted to see that further into the project, and so, that's, this is the version that they approved where we have the higher density in purple, and then we had pulled the, pulled the yellow into the project for the medium, and then we have basically R one around the perimeter of the project.
Okay, I just wanted to say, this is a recommendation from, as was stated, from the planning and zoning commission. It's just a recommendation. Our, if we were to follow our lan- our, um, general plan and the flume with future land use map, this area is all stated to be low density, no high density in this area.
Correct.
And so, I think we should follow what is in place right now according to our general plan and our future land use management. I, I, yeah, map, excuse me. And according to, you know, a lot of requirements, water and so forth. I, really, to make this simpler, I think it should come in as one zone, R one, and let you go through the zoning change process just like anybody else, and we have hard plans of what you're going to do in those areas, cause I had, uh, the statement made to me that we don't know what's gonna happen there. We don't know if we're gonna be the ones that build that out, or if it's sell it to somebody else, let them build it out. I have a problem with that, we need to know, and so, I just think that gives us the opportunity to go through the planning process a bit better, you know, that complies and is correlates with our, you know, the plans that are in place as far as the future, I mean, the land use. I mean, the general plan and the fu- the future land use map. And then go through the process of having zone changes and have hard plans, hard, you know, designs brought and so they can be approved and planned, and, and you mentioned about bringing water in an incremental. What, you know, right, you mentioned like eighty lots or some, eighty units and bringing forty acre feet. You have all the water, why not bring it for the whole area?
And we'll get to water, that's one of the later.
I know, but I'm just saying this is a part of the zoning. I think it needs to be just brought in as one zone, Cedar has a, a zone, what, a zo- annexation zone or? Something, and we don't, but I think where this has been designated is R one, you know, low density, whatever. That's what we should do to begin with.
Councilmember Topham indicated she had something to say.
Well, he said what I wanted to say, I would like to see it just brought in as R one and then go through the subdivision process.
I, I think with that, though, that generally, even at the zone change level, there's not hard plans.
Well, you already said in a previous meeting that even though we have this map of like where you're saying, and I'm just gonna throw out a random number, but thirty percent will be one zone, but you really don't know where that's gonna be. It could be anywhere on that zone map.
No, well, no, so, what, what's proposed on that exhibit is acts as our zone map with the annexation, so, so, what we're saying is that this would be the zone map, the, the blue, green, and orange would all be zoned R one. The yellow would be zoned R two, the purple would be zoned R three, and then the red would be commercial or civic. And so, this would act as our zoning map to say, so those are, yeah, on the full table, so that's where we have our proposed zone. And then there, those correspond to the pods, and then that shows our density within, with each, within each pod.
So, let me repeat what he just said and put my spin on it. Those would be the zones, but there would also be a density restriction, more than just what our zones allow.
For instance, the R three zone currently, I believe, caps you at nine units an acre. R, R three, we have at eight point five units an acre.
Will it stay that way after we make those changes?
If we, if, if we follow the proposal that the, the developer wants to do, we would record this annexation agreement on the land, on the property. Which means that, yes, when they come in for a subdivision application, they are required to follow what this development agreement would give them.
Regardless if it's AJM, some other entity, that, that's what, so, there was some language in the original draft that said it gets, that there was like a deed restriction, but this gets recorded against the property through the recorder's office, and so this runs with.
With the land, my only problem with the way it's contemplated, and we could figure this out with legal, with, with some legal back and forth, if the intent is agreed on, is that this annexation agreement is done and complete and dissolves at the point you reach your five hundred and fifty six. Theoretically, you could reach your five hundred and fifty six before all of the property is developed, the annexation agreement then dissolves, and then now you could put more density in the unbuilt place. If, if it wasn't, like, if, if you were to not build it all out yourselves, build part of it out and build higher dens- like max out that density, you could get four hundred of the units within the R three, within the R three and the R two and that, and then, and then now, if we just record it and say that it dissolves once the five hundred and fifty six units are met, then all of a sudden, you then develop the rest of it, and the total density after it's all built out would be higher. That was my only reason in saying we would record it specific, the density in, on each parcel. And then if it's subdivided and subdivided and sold, that still is to be there.
Let's do, to Councilwoman Topham's point and Commissioner, or, uh, Councilman, uh, Dave's point. Wha- are, are you both saying that it's not appropriate to say, we approve an annexation for now, R one, and then we'll see what comes down the road? Because I think you've even stated, uh, in prior meetings, we may not even own half of this ten years from now. This is gonna be done in phases, I don't want to build it all, I'm gonna be selling, selling to other developers to develop. So, um, that adds an additional layer of holding, I guess, future builders to, well, did they do the yellow? Well, you gotta do the red, cause we already did the green. Um, what is the opposition, if any, to say, we, we like bringing in the development? Uh, annexing it and we bring it all in as R one, what, what would be the opposition to that, if any?
On our end?
On it, yeah, or the cities or?
To, I, so, I, I think to, to be frank, we've, we've been working through this annexation for a number of years. And the fear on our end is we get the annexation and we come in at R one, and then we try to propose some other variation to zone some R two or R three. And then, how long does that get drug out, does it ever happen, or are we stuck with R one forever?
I don't know, but you may not be, it may be a different developer, right, and a different.
Whi- which is why I, one of my thoughts that maybe the compromise here could be, if the council is open to, and, and I don't want to put words in mouths and, or anything like this, or say there's a consensus, I've heard from some of the councils, they've discussed it. You know, I'd probably be okay with some R two, I don't know if I'm okay with R three. I'm wondering if we were to come up with some version of a map that is just hard R two, hard R one, hard R three, if you guys want to have some R three, and we do away with the entire density restriction and all of that stuff, considerably simpli- simplifies the development agreement, simplifies the annexation agreement.
I thought that's what we were doing until I heard Alex say.
Right, this is a pretty complex thing.
But he, what he's saying is, you know, I know there's blue, green, and then there's the red, yeah, yeah, but if you take away a third, we just, just give us five hundred and fifty six.
Yep.
But don't hold it, we'll probably have some R, you know, half acre.
No, 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 so, so, no, what I'm, what I'm saying is that, so, we, we can live by the densities that are required on this table. So, I'm, I'm assuming that this map is an exhibit in the annexation agreement, and this is as binding as any other language in the agreement. And we could simplify this, this, so the colors as far as red, green, and orange were just to delineate where we were gonna have half acre, we could simplify this into, into probably just four colors and have the R one portion, the R two portion, the R three portion, but the table was put together to say, hey, this is a, this is, this would be a realistic expectation, the five five six, if this was an all R one project. But we're just looking at doing it in a different, different order where we have higher density, medium density, lower density, and then rural.
But doesn't that complicate everything if you say five five six, you know, we're doing map, and I'm not good with that. R three versus a half acre, does that equal, how do we get back to the five fifty six?
So, if we look at, Dan, could you maybe blow that table up one more time? So.
And I get that, but are you gonna be, are you gonna wedge yourself to that, we're good with that?
Yes.
They're, they're willing to do that, yeah.
So, so much R two, so much R three.
Correct, yep.
So, the map is something they can count on.
Yes, yeah, and so that's what I'm saying, is that this would be exhibit C or D in our agreement, it gets recorded with the property. Whether Alex carves off twenty acres and sells it to somebody, yep.
The blue will be the blue.
Correct.
Well, actually, blue, green, and.
Orange.
Orange are all R one. They will have different density restrictions in blue and green. Does that make sense?
I thought some of them were half acres, acres.
They, well, that's what they're going to do, their lots, from our perspective, we're gonna assign a specific zone and a density restriction. And, and the, and the mechanism will be the annexation agreement will be recorded on the land.
And generally, the way that.
Pretty complex, but it wor- it could work.
And the, and generally, the way these will work from a subdivision standpoint is we would just put together a table that says, whatever the subdivision's called, phase one, and tally it up, and then just keep moving that forward on every project to say, and then, and then as far as the annexation agreement expiring, it's certainly not our intent to push all the density to one area and end up with an extra sixty acres.
Right, and I wasn't saying that, that you would do that, I'm saying that unless we kind of tweak the agreement, it's a possible outcome, and I, it makes me nervous, so we would want to clean it up.
And I know that this is complicated for us laymen, cause I'm not a developer. But when you tell me there's gonna be some R ones, that makes you think, you know, that's great, cause there's gonna be some R threes. But when you say, you know, well, just, just give us all R one, we can just see R three and the R two and, uh, you know, but the rest of it's R one, but we're gonna do that. Me, as a layman, as a, if I were a councilperson, I'd say, wait a minute, I'm more inclined to do all these colors. If you're telling me that orange up there's gonna be one acre lot, and some of these others are gonna be half acre lot, cause now it's gonna be mixed. But I'm not so inclined if you say, well, just give us R one and R three and R two and, uh, and we'll do the commercial. But, you know, it'll all come out, just give us R one on everything else, does that make sense?
Yeah, so, maybe let me reframe it, so, the way that we, the way that we arrived at this map is we looked at the future land use plan, and we said, what you could realistically expect to, to net lot wise, if the whole project was R one with quarter acre lots would be that five hundred and fifty six lot number, so that's, that's taking the gross acreage, assuming a twenty five to thirty percent loss for roads. And we, you would expect to end up with five hundred and fifty six quarter acre lots.
Can we stop you there, they're willing to give you that, so why wouldn't you take it?
Because the developer would like to see different product types instead of just a sea of quarter acre lots. So, we'd like to have some bigger lots, some, some acre to half acre lots, some quarter acre lots, some higher density lots, and then some R three lots that would be.
You don't think they would be amenable to that down the road, you think they just want five hundred and fifty six quarter acre lots?
I don't, I don't know.
I don't think so.
Well, and, and so, if, if council doesn't think so, I, that's why we're proposing this, is that we're trying to, by preparing a hybrid agreement, we're trying to essentially kill two birds with one stone, we've gotten the recommendation from planning commission, we have it before council, and we're saying, hey, let's do, instead of a annexation and then a development agreement where it's allowed by state code, let's do a hybrid. Let's work through everything so that when we get to the, if we get to the point of acceptance of the annexation, then we can just start going versus getting through annexation and then coming back through and getting hung up on an R three zone for weeks, months, years, and then an R two for, and, and that kind of thing. And so, where we're already, we've done so much legwork to try to get this going, I, we're trying to just put it all together in one. And that's why this agreement's grown to a twenty page document, because we're. and that's why this agreement's grown to a twenty-page document, because we're trying to work through those. But that's how we got to it, is we said, "Five, five, six would be a realistic number if it was all R one. If we can do some lower density and pinch and pull and redistribute it, this is what we're proposing, that we've got a recommendation only, but this is what we're proposing to council. We're willing to tweak it as council seats fit, but when we take the red portion, which is six and a half acres, and say that that could be some kind of civic or school or commercial use, we're taking the, the quarter acres that would've fit in there and redistributing them. We know we're gonna have a lift station, a stormwater pond, we're taking that and redistributing it. When we're up against the perimeter of the hillside on the steeper, we realize, hey, you're not gonna be able to slam a bunch of houses in there. We'll put bigger estate-type lots there, but we'll take some of that density and redistribute it." And so, I think that whether you let us do this one or you let us do R one all over, and it got built out just to the R one standard, we would still net that near that five, five, six. And so, we're willing to say, "Hey, we're asking for some flexibility on zones. We're asking for R two, R three, R one, but we'll cap the density so that we don't go full, full density on every single one of these zone types."
I'm a rotten communicator tonight. Are you willing to go by this map?
Yes.
It's their, this is their suggestion.
The blue will be the blue, the yellow will be the yellow, the green will be the green.
Yes.
And, and the red will be the red.
Yes.
And we did get a unanimous approval from Planning Commission in recommending this to the council.
So, m- my question is, is what do you think about an approval of hard zones, of multiple zones, without density restriction and all of the complication of that? That accomplishes the same thing that you're looking for also.
Yeah.
Hard zone.
So, we would be fine with the hard zone. I think that would probably translate to more units for us, but we felt like we needed to give something with the five, five, six to request the higher density zones.
Right.
But if the council was okay to say, "Hey, the purple's the purple, and it's R three, and whatever the density in R three is, great. The R two is the density in R two, and that's great."
Well, my question is, is what if we do hard zones and purple is yellow?
Purple is yellow.
So, no R three, but just R two?
Mhm.
Yeah.
No density restriction.
What do, how do you feel about the, our new standard of rural done right? 'Cause you're gonna have to adhere to that.
Well, I, so I was in the meeting when Dan had originally pitched it. I don't know how much progress has been made on it, but our intent the whole time has been to request the zoning, just standard zoning from the city, and generally, the way that works is cities change ordinances all the time, and so at whatever point, if we turn in an application today, we live by today's standard, we turn one in in a year and R one's changed, we live by R one in a year. We turn in in five years for R three, and R three's changed, we live by whatever it is. That's where the vesting of the applications turns in, so we turn in an application today, it's today's standards. You change the zone tomorrow, we turn it in tomorrow, we live by tomorrow's standard.
It doesn't matter that we started that?
It does.
So, no, it, what he's saying is what we want, the way the agreement is written, written is the entire thing is vested upon the agreement, and we would be okay with it being vested upon the subdivision application, just not the entire annexation agreement.
And I think we're open to that feedback.
So, so that's, tha- that's what the council wants, is, um, that it's vested when you come in with your application, um, but we also want enough wiggle room that we can, and by the way, w- we'll be done with rural done right within a month or month and a half. Um, we're going to public hearing next, Planning Commission on it. Um, so, that's really not an issue. It, it's just that, um, we just don't want the entire development vested at the land use code the exact way it is when the development agreement and annexation agreement is, is permitted. And then, and then no land use applications apply, and, and I think, whether you're not, you realize this, the attorney drafted it that way on purpose, because it says it in several places, and it even says that future land use laws will not apply to this. Like, it specifically has a paragraph about that, so that makes us really uncomfortable, and what I hear you saying is what the council's intent was as well, so I think we can get there. But I, I think it was probably a copy and paste from a different development agreement, and that was that development agreement, but we didn't, we didn't really like that feature, but anyways. So, back to the zoning. Those are kind of the different options, um, that the council has to consider, you know, how the, how these guys wanna, um, have it done, and what the coun- the Planning Commission's recommendation was.
So, I, I saw some nodding heads on, uh, all yellow, so no purple.
Yep.
Um, that's obviously something I have to talk with Alex about, but I, but we can, this won't be the only meeting on this, so if that's, I don't know if there's consensus with council, but if we're going to remove the purple, put the yellow, but then are we going away from a diff- from a density restriction?
That's what I just threw out as a concept.
Okay.
That would be us getting away from that five, five, six number entirely and just having clean zones. Simplifying the agreement considerably.
So, this map would have three colors on it. It would have...
Yep.
L-shaped yellow, and then it would have all R one, and then there would just be the red corner for the six and a half.
Correct.
And the table goes away.
Correct. What's that?
Would it go over the five, five, six?
W- we don't know. We'd have to run new math and see on it.
I think the, I think part of the, the, the thing that council has to deliberate on is, do you wanna see, if we get away from the density restriction, I think, I think that's probably a fair compromise, but it has to obviously run through Alex, but, but there has to be, um, if we get away from the density restriction and we just go to the zones, then you could see all of that blue area, we would have the technical density to put in quarter acre lots, but I think the question that council has to ask is, do you wanna see a hundred and sixty-six quarter acre lot, or a hundred and sixty-six acres of quarter acre lots, or do you wanna see some kind of variety in product type? I think generally, the way that planning, when you talk about more affordable housing, is you wanna see a mixed, you don't wanna see just a homogeneous five hundred new quarter acre, I mean, I, depends, some people might want...
Well, and if I could, if I could speak to that, I think if I'm, if I can remember the conversation that the Planning Commission had, one of the reasons why the Planning Commission liked this approach is it did have different types of housing and all of that stuff. And, and what I've heard, t- speaking with some of the ci- the city council is, um, but this area of town was never really designed for that, all that mixture, and we have R three areas and R two areas, and we can have those types of housing in those areas. But is it, is a compromise of, you know, twin homes and single-family homes, of potentially different lot sizes, you know, enough? Did, does that work? So, it, it really is a principle thing. What do you guys want to see? And what do you think is, i- is, is compromised? But that was what the Planning Commission liked about it as well, is it broke up this homogeneous, not that you're gonna build cookie cutters, but just quarter acre lots, boom, 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 throughout the whole thing.
But isn't that what we're trying to accomplish in that rural done right also?
Well, but somewhat, a look and fill of single-family houses, but allowing higher density and smaller lots and all of that stuff.
I know, but not the cookie cutter thing and all, yeah.
Right, 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 right. Well, when I say cookie cutter, I'm talking one type of, of lot size and house size.
I wouldn't mind seeing some third acres.
And we don't have the diversity of zoning?
Ri- exactly, and that's why it's all, that's why...
R one.
They would all be R one, because it's just ten thousand and greater. But I think that, I think that we would have third half, maybe up to acre, maybe even bigger than an acre along the steeper portions. Um, but, yeah, so, I, I don't know, I guess I need council's direction that...
Well, again, back at the end of the day, you guys need to decide what you wanna see in the, in the agreement with their input, but what we gotta work through tonight is what we wanna see in the agreement, and then ultimately, we'll turn it over to them as they look at it holistically at all, 'cause there's gonna be push and pull on a lot of these items. Some of these items, maybe after we get done looking at it, they're gonna say, "No, that's a, that's a hard, that's a hard pass on us. There's no way we would want to be annexed if that's still in there," and we may have some push and pull back and forward. But at the end of the day, with all of this input from Dallas, what do you guys wanna see? Let's vote on that and move on.
Wi- with R two, with rural done right, actually, it could be, you know, if we changed all of that, the purple and the yellow to R two, rural done right would actually have more units.
It does allow for more units.
Mhm.
In fact, you could do single-family homes on seventy-five hundred square foot lots...
Yeah.
In the, in the yellow. Or you could do twin homes on, on ten thousand acre lots.
But from a, I think from a planning standpoint, to have a variety of lots, I, I, I think that's what we want in favor.
Sure, no, I, no, we're just talking density.
Yeah, yeah, but I, yeah.
And with purple, with that rural done right, are we gonna have less units for that acreage?
With, with purple, it will actually be, it's just gonna be different, because you can have smaller lots, if they're single lots.
Mhm.
Then you can have probably similar densities. You're gonna have a, if it's a, if it's a fourplex, sorry, a quadplex, fourplex, whatever it is, yeah, you could have, um, on a twenty thousand square foot lot, a fourplex.
So, it's five thousand an acre?
So, that's eight units per acre, which is pretty dang close to this density.
Yeah. Right.
'Cause the density here is at eight point five for R three, and, and what I just described is almost like eight point something by the time you round up on the acre.
Have you looked at the rural done right?
I've, I've seen it from the, the initial packet Dan had given me, but I haven't stayed up on the, if there's the meetings that have taken place and what kinda revisions have been made, but I had the original copy that Dan had presented at council four weeks ago or so.
So, I guess the, the question is, is if, if under the R three and rural done right, you could have triplexes and fourplexes in that purple.
But not apartment complexes?
Not apartments, townhomes. Townhome and a fourplex are similar, right?
Yeah.
But, um, you're not gonna have more than four put together in one on rural done right.
Yeah. So, if we kept it like this, 'cause this been going on for a long time.
Yep.
This map. We're doing away with apartments. We're doing away with a huge, you know, condo complex in, in purple, and so that's, you know, tha- that's a good thing for rural done right, and it, and it fits what your density is proposed. So, that's just my two bits.
And our general plan does say a variety of housing types. I mean, it says that in our general plan, and that was carried forward when the general plan was reinstated. So, the vision for Parowans' future was a variety of housing types.
And the general plan is general?
Okay, we got a lot more items on here.
Oh, boy.
And then we have people waiting after that, so we knew tonight would be a doozy, but...
Yes, did Heather wanna say something? She's...
And, and, and again, w- we can, we can vote on something, we can put the language in there, and my guess is, is that there's gonna wanna be some feedback. We may have another iteration of this thing, so if we can come up to a consensus or a vote on a, you know, four to three, two to three, and, and move on, let's put the language in there, and then we'll see how that lives and breathes once we have the entire thing put together. That's my suggestion.
So, from, are we moving to the next line?
No, we haven't had, made any decision on this.
Okay.
What do we wanna put it in there?
I think, I think we're willing to, as far as the revisions being made to the co- or to this agreement, to say, we'll be, we would vest with whatever the zone says at that time. That way, as long as rural done right is done prior to our first subdivision application, which if it's going next meeting or within the next month, that'll be well before we ever turn in the subdivision application. So, assuming if you, if council's willing to work under the assumption that rural done right will be in place prior to us turning in our first phase of a subdivision to develop, then is council comfortable with purple, yellow, and the R one? Or do they wanna see some other variation of all yellow and the remainder R one?
No density restriction.
And no density restriction.
Do you all want me to go down the row, or do you wanna speak out? I mean, we need, you need to get through this.
We have to get through it all tonight?
Working through it.
Well, I like the zones with the color here. It's going with the rural done right, with no apartments or that. Having the fourplex or triplex in that area.
Do you, so, would you propose, um, keeping this map how it is in, in accordance to rural done right?
Rural done right is gonna apply. Let's operate under that assumption.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I, I propose, is that, is that okay?
Sounds like a motion, they...
Oh, sorry.
I move.
Oh, I'm a mo- I move to propose the zoning map as presented and in accordance with rural done right before they apply for their subdivision. Yeah.
Do we have a second?
I'll have a second. Right?
We have just a question before we vote. On just that, are you still gonna plan on just bringing the water as you do your subdivision development?
Yeah, so there's, there's a whole bullet item where, where we'll get to...
Yeah, it's, we'll talk water.
It's coming.
Yeah.
It's coming, I think. All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, a point of information. This is gonna have to be slightly retooled, the language and things, to make it consistent with the agreement. For example, planned unit development in R three, where rural done right doesn't have planned unit developments. It would just be R three with the density restriction and things like that.
And the townhomes.
Townhomes. I mean, we just need to kinda work on the language, but the concept. We're voting on the concept.
On rural done right and the colors.
Yep.
Right.
For a second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
I'm gonna nay it.
Don't look at me. I know. Okay, I'm just gonna nay.
Okay, that didn't pass. What do you wanna do now? There's another motion.
Get rid of the purple.
We have a lot more work to do.
Will you bring up in that?
We need, we need something to put in the, in the agreement.
Bring up in that. I'm gonna make...
Can I, can I suggest, and I know this isn't your fault, and this, and I will take the blame for this, because I haven't looked at the agreement, and I, and I know it just got completed, you know.
Well, we have our agreement.
Huh?
We have our agreement.
No, but the changes you made and the reformatting changes the wording, and, and I ha- I don't have a copy of that. I haven't had a chance to look at it.
You're talking about what they presented?
Yes.
Right.
And so, would this be, without putting it off, would this be ripe for a, a special meeting to deal with just this, where we could devote the entire, like, next Thursday? We have a Wednesday, Thursday meeting. It's, you know, it's...
Yeah, oh, yeah, we could, we'd do whatever, whatever the council wants to do.
I mean, we could keep going through them one at a time, but at this rate...
Can't do it next Wednesday. That's that show.
Well, we have a lot going on next week.
Is that objectionable to you, or, I mean...
However we push it forward.
Well, Dallas, I think we wanna push forward, but we're,
Yeah.
this is kinda
Yeah.
nerving, you know, I'm gonna be very honest with you. Kind of, the unknown is a little bit nerving. And when you get your big guns attorneys, why, that kinda puts a little perspective on it. And there's some changes in there. So we, we need to be thorough.
But what if we say, and I'm not speaking to them, I have no.
But w- w- what, what more information or is it just time to consider? I mean, we've, we've had, we've been aware of this for.
The first time I've heard that their lawyer put in something that, oh, you can't find future zoning.
Right, but these two concepts have been, nothing has changed in this at all.
No, I know, we're on one, but we have twenty-eight more to go.
Right, right, right.
That's all I'm saying, ma- I.
Well, I guess my question is, we, that failed, is there a, is there a different motion that would pass tonight? Or not? And if not, then maybe we need more time.
I make a motion to approve the map as is with the zone. Oh, sorry, I thought somebody said something, but they're in the hall. Um, I wanna take out the purple and put it in yellow.
I would second that.
And are we moving away from the density restriction overall then? So we're going to just R one?
Just set zones?
And R two, set zones, we'll still have the red, but then the density table goes away.
I back up, guys, this is so over my head, I don't even know what to do. I'm, I'm gonna be the first to admit, this is over my head. I'm, yeah. So if we have a motion on the table and a second, we still need to vote this motion through or we, or resend it as a motion?
No, no, we, we, it was defeated. She rescended her motion, so there's nothing on the table.
All right. Because if we take away density, just, okay, just humor me for a minute. If we take away density restrictions, can you build more homes in those areas?
We can build to whatever the zoning, the, whatever max density zoning is allowed under that zone.
I can actually tell you pretty quick, cause I have a table where I was doing my own type of map.
Did we potentially go over the five hundred and fifty-six?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, then.
I don't know how much, it may be a small amount. I can tell you. In fact, let's do this. Let's move on to the next item. I will do that math while we're talking about the next thing and we'll come back. Is that, is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, fire code, there's no material difference in, in what we originally had and what, what they have. Um, water rights, there was two approaches to this in the original agreement that we had. And that is, is that, um, the bare minimum that's required per our code is that they bring in a half acre foot per parcel. That's not gonna allow for any subdivision. Um, but it meets the bare minimum code of annexation. Then at subdivision time, they would have to bring in, um, acre feet as needed for those subdivisions. The other option that, that, the city that was on the annexation agreement is that they could bring in the, um, the water rights needed to, to provide for the five hundred and fifty-six lots. That's why it ties back to that zoning and then density restriction and all of that stuff. The, the third option that they, um, submitted to us yesterday was that they would bring us forty acre feet now, which would allow for the development of up to eighty homes as they go through their subdivision phases. At, and at, at the time where they need to bring us more, before the subdivision would be approved, they'd bring in additional water rights. So those are three different ideas, um, of taking care of water rights. All three of which, th- there's really not any, um, they're all totally legal, however you want to do, to go about it. Could be done.
Well, let me ask you this, cause I just thought about it. So if they have a parcel that they're gonna sell off to someone else right to build.
Yep.
Who would bring the water in?
Whoever is doing the annexing has to bring the water, or the subdividing needs to bring the water.
So if someone buys the property and wants to build their homes, it's still AJM?
It's whoever sub- whoever turns in the subdivision application.
Okay.
Yep, yep, whoever, the, the water rights are required before the, before the final plat is recorded.
Okay.
Of the subdivisions. So if, if, under option one, they come in right now and Alex sells the entire property, the entire property is entitled to two water connections, period. And Alex leaves with his water and goes somewhere else, somebody else is gonna have to find water to develop. If he brings in forty, he's now entitled to build up to forty homes or do a subdivision of up to forty, sorry, eighty. Eighty homes before he has to then bring in more water. So it's a phasal approach.
Yeah, and the, the reason for, so Alex has property that's west of town that's farmed and so he has a hundred acres and four hundred acre feet. Um, if we give everything upfront and that's in beneficial use, but the project might not be built out for a decade, two dec- I mean, the, you, so, so that was the reason for changing it. There's a couple other items in here as far as water connections and road accesses. And we try, and I, the way that I structured the, the, the additions that I made was that we set eighty units as the trigger point for a secondary water connection, a secondary access road, and then tied that also to the water. So that's what we're saying, hey, with the, with the approval of this annexation agreement, the developer would deed forty acre feet to the city. That would get him up to forty, up to eighty lot connections. And then upon the next phase that has the eighty-first house in it, he then has to start bringing additional water rights to support those, those additional lots.
Yeah, I'm good with the forty acre.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Covered eighty upfronts quite a bit, so.
Okay, so we, do we have a motion on that piece?
I'll make a motion to accept the developer preference of forty acre feet now and more as needed when subdivided.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right. Moving now to our water main connections. Um, the city preference option one is three connections now. The city preference option two is two connections now and three after some number of homes. And then the developer preference is one connection now, two in eighty-plus homes, three when a, two hundred and fifty-one plus homes.
Okay, if I could jump real quick, we're gonna look at the study that was done and, and some of those recommendations. And, and, and we can definitely break apart the, um, the, uh, th- this is, this is kind of a technical, um, more of a, more of a subdivision type approach. Um, uh, uh, not approach, but something we would normally handle at the subdivision level. And we can totally decide to handle this at the subdivision level. This is really not super critical. Um, typically speaking, any extension of a water system over five hundred feet has to be, not typically, it does have to be approved by the state engi- water engineer. The state engineer will approve it if you have sufficient fire flow. They really don't like dead ends. Um, we typically like to loop our utilities. So that's why in the, um, in the annexation agreement, we said, oh, I'm actually gonna bring up that, um, um, study real quick because we're gonna wanna look it up for a few different reasons. Oh, do I not have it saved in my?
Can I ask a question while you're looking at it?
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm starting to feel like Rochelle, this is kind of over my head. Where do you make, if, we want three connections, where do you make the three connections?
That's what I'm gonna show you. Okay, so, um, there's, there's several different maps. They're gonna, for the purposes of connections, we'll show the same thing. Um, and again, like I said, we don't have to spend a lot of time on this. Um, the, uh, this is Bowen and Collins, they're the ones that did the city's water model. Um, their recommendation is that we have a connection to the existing system down here by Matt Kemp's, is it Matt? Um, we have a connection right here, um, off of our eight-inch line that comes by Valentine Peak. And we have a connection here, um, down City View Drive. Um, that is to service the entire build out, right? And so what we said is you'd need to make those connections upon, um, the first subdivision application. Admittedly, that's probably overkill, not something that we're gonna, you know, live and die by. So that's the way it was written. We also have an option that says you can do two of them now and you do three after some number of homes. Um, and, and really, this is gonna come down to a deck, a technical model, that, whether the state approves it. Generally speaking, though, we do like to have a looped line, um, you might not be able to get, this ties back to the water tank discussion, which we're gonna talk about next, which is much bigger deal. Um, we may have fire flow issues if we just have one connection and it's a dead end. Um, or even if it's looped within the subdivision, it, it may have some issues. And so that's probably the thing that oughta, um, that oughta make, be the decision factor more than anything. And, and to Dallas's point, that's, their hope is that, that we will require only one connection now. After we get over eighty homes, they, they will connect a second one. And then after we get to, over two hundred and fifty-one homes, they will, they would provide the third connection. More of a phasal approach. And all of it is subject to, it has to pass whatever the, the state engineer says. In other words, if the one connection now doesn't pass the state standard, they would be forced to do the other two, so.
Maybe you just go by that.
We could totally just go by that. This was just written one way and they came back with that and I, I think that's probably fine.
Yeah, I, I think, I think our biggest reservation was just to make all three connections on day one. Is a pretty big burden.
That's a, that's a lot of, that's a lot of pipe.
So.
Going past empty lots, so I don't have any problem with, with the developer's preference there. It's subject, the way it's written in their agreement is it's subject to the water engineer approving the model. Um, the bigger question is really the tank.
So if the state comes back in and says that they need to put two in now, we would be subject to that?
They would be subject to that, yeah.
They, I mean, they would be subject to that.
Yep.
Yeah, so they tell us on the forty-first lot or the fifteenth lot or the, or, or if we can get all the way to eighty, then we live by this agreement, say, hey, on the eighty-first house that we go plat, we've gotta work this out. Part of, part of the reason too is that in order for us to get this off the ground, we've gotta, to make these connections to Kemp and then down through City View Drive, there's right-ofways and easements and things that have to be acquired. And that all takes time. And so to get through this process and then have to turn right around and then start making deals with adjacent land, like that, there's just a lot that goes into that that is hard to, hard to do from day one, plus the infrastructure costs itself.
One of the things I really like about the second option by requiring two on day one is that, um, I mean, it, the city has to take over maintenance of this thing. And, um, two connections, almost any phase you do, you're gonna be pretty close to two connections. Um, one thing I'll say, and I'm, I'm not trying to make a, I'm not trying to put you guys into a box or say what your intentions are. The way I read the agreement on the road with City View Drive is you'd like to not put that in if you didn't have to. The water line is probably the same conversation. You'd probably like to not put that in if you didn't have to. Um, and, and not to skip ahead, but the way it is written, the way we wrote it is you'd have to put in two hundred and City View Drive upfront. Um, and the way that the road is written on the, on the, the new version is two hundred north would go in up to so many homes, then a second road would have to be put in that complies with the master plan. Theoretically, you could never have been required to put in City View Drive at all. Now, that's the road discussion, but if that's kind of the intent of, of the development, then the water connection would, would follow fairly similarly in there in that, right up until you get two hundred and fifty, and at that point, you'd have to put the third one in. And, and to comply with our master plan, it would be this City View Drive. So I get what you're saying and I'm not trying to say that you're trying to pull anything over sneaky. My point is, is by requiring that to put in, into two locations, if you develop this, the southern portion first, that's gonna loop through, that's gonna be beneficial to your subdivision, that's gonna be redundancy that we wanna see. And it's going to make the improvements that politically, we have to deal with the other people that are being forced by the county to come into this, um, into this subdivision, which was a burden on Alex, but they re- they, they backed off of, from their protests once they realized that water line was gonna be upgraded near their houses. So my point is, by leaving it way number two, option two is, it helps us satisfy the fact that these property owners that were being forced to come in, their water would be upgraded as a result, resisting their protest. Now, we found out they didn't legally have the ability to protest, but they do have some, some, they're expecting the council as they do this annexation to take care of them. So it's a political decision, but that's why option two was, was there.
Okay, can, can I add? Oh, um, so we're going through all this stuff tonight. Do you expect us to actually vote on something like this before the attorney looks over?
No.
Or we, because.
We're just looking to put something.
There's twenty-seven pages, the study. And we don't need to go through twenty-seven pages tonight. Don't get upset, but it seems to me that, give us time to read it. We didn't get this until eleven o'clock last night.
Totally.
Yeah, I think this is something engineers have to tell.
Well, you've had two weeks to look at the city's version and, and that's why I said, we can just continue to work through the city's version. But then what they are gonna have to say is gonna dramatically impact it, cause we'll negotiate. Now, if you wanted to just punt the whole thing for two weeks and look at both of them together and then maybe have a special meeting to go through this stuff, I get what you're saying, totally I do. I'm not demanding that we go through it all, I'm just saying, the only way we move forward is to, is to put what we want in this agreement.
So we've now heard from three council members requesting that we, we punt. So, I mean, as the chair of this meeting, I would say three requests to do that is a strong position.
Yeah, cause the, yeah, cause just getting you twenty-seven pages.
It's just very overwhelming. And we have.
I'm not a speed reader either, so.
I don't know.
Um.
And I get we've seen the city, but now we have yours.
Yep.
And a lot of them are reasonable, but some of them, they may have a problem with. So as opposed to going through tonight on the fly and debating them, do you want city one, city two, or yours? It would also give you your position the benefit of reflection.
Yeah.
As opposed to just saying, well, we just saw that, we don't, cause some of them are probably reasonable.
But, but part of being, part of understanding their position is talking through it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I'm saying, even if we give you two weeks, these are, these are nuanced issues that we need to talk through. So I, I don't mind a work meeting to actually work through them and explain the different nuances of the options.
But it's now what you're doing tonight, you're talk, you're discussing each one and you're going through each one in very minute details and then.
So we could just go through and talk about the different options and not vote on it.
Right.
And then let you ruminate on it for a couple of weeks and then come back and then vote on what you'd like to see in. Would that help everybody feel better?
I would, I would rather, I would rather do that than yes.
They're not all as heavy as the zoning and the water. Those, these are some of the major factors of this agreement.
Cause I don't know if we can actually make a, a motion on the zoning. We spent an hour on the zoning and we didn't even come to a d-
We knew the zoning would be one of the biggest pieces of it.
You know what I mean? We didn't even come to a decision, but.
Wha- what does everybody think about that? If we walk through, discuss the different options, let you ruminate on it, come back in two weeks and, and then we could make some yays or nays of what we wanna put in there. And then you can come in and talk to me and ask all your specific questions. What the heck does that mean when you say, you know, um, pressure I, you know, P S I at peak day? Because that's what we're gonna get into with the water tank, so.
And I don't want you to feel like we're trying to stall or like push this out, cause honestly, that is not the case.
Yeah, no, it's a lot.
We just, it's just a lot and I feel extremely overwhelmed.
Are we talking the twenty-fourth?
Yep.
We may be voting on Rural Done Right that night.
Potentially, yep.
So it's the biggest, like, to me is, is getting feedback also. Because you're in process here and you may come back with a completely different thing and we're gonna just keep.
Yeah, I'm, I, I'm in favor of just kinda running through these high levels so I can just give my input to how we got to what we proposed. Um, and then, and then council can sit on it till the next meeting and think about it, talk to Dan and we can, I, I by no means thought that we were gonna fine tune the details of this. But I, I think if we just run through these at a high level and say, city proposed this, we're proposing this, this is where we're coming from, and then we move on.
Okay, everybody feel good about that?
I think that's.
Okay, so that's the water connections issue. Um, water tank, this is a, this is a, this is a pretty big one. Okay, so that's the water connections issue. Um, water tank, this is a, this is a, this is a pretty big one. Um, the, uh, I'm going to, just real quick, show you one of the issues that was identified in the water model, which is why we asked for the water model, is, um, the water model shows, um, one of the things that the state engineer's gonna look at is how much P S I at twenty gallons a minute at peak day you can get out of every fire hydrant. So these points on the map are not fire hydrants, they are nodes, and they are pressures. You'll, you'll, they're P S I, right? So this, um, this first one that we're looking at here, this is the design fire flow. Um, the state's minimum, in other words, the state will not approve a subdivision or development that has below one thousand P S I at twenty gallons a minute during peak day. State won't approve it. Just not enough water to fight fire without the local fire authority signing, signing off on the exception. Our master plan has a design requirement of fifteen hundred, meaning we're shooting for fifteen hundred P S I across the city. We don't have that now at some of these locations, which was identified when we did our master plan. The question is, as the model runs now with three connections, you can see the different nodes, and for those that are out in the, the crowd, you'll see that it's an, on average, around thirteen hundred P S I. That's a really interesting number, because it's above the state's minimum requirement, but below the city's engineering standard. For example, you will now look at, um, the GRR subdivision. They are almost exclusively below the thousand and a half requirement. So the question is, what is acceptable to us? Wha- what, what can they do to put it above the fifteen hundred? What they can do to put it above the fifteen hundred is to put in a water tank. The water tank does not add more pressure, but it al- it adds, it fixes a problem that we have on the main line being over, not to get into fluid dynamic, dynamics, but there's too much friction in the line. One of the things in our master plan is to add another main line up to our water tank, and eventually add another water tank. But if they add a water tank here, you can see that it almost triples the P S I in all of these nodes. Not to mention, it makes an improvement on the GRR subdivision, which is offsite, right? The problem with the issue that, that, um, that the, the developer has about requiring a water tank is, it's bigger than just their, what they need for their subdivision. The impact on the entire system in terms of storage capacity and in terms of, um, the, uh, P S I improvements affects more than just their subdivision. And from an exaction standpoint, the city can't exact more from them than what they need for their development without some consideration. I think I, did I sum that up pretty good?
Yeah, and I would just add to it that water tanks are generally pretty expensive, and if we're put, if we were forced to put one in for just what we need, it would be.
You put in a smaller one.
We would put in a much smaller one.
Yep.
And if we're already going to the lengths to put a tank in, it would be who of the city to contribute upside.
Put the, put the tank we want by contributing.
Yes.
Right. So, so this is a, this is something that we agree on. This is why, this is a little bit of a gray area. We would love to see a tank in there and have the, the enhanced fire flow. We're essentially, if we make them put in a tank, making them put in a tank, which would provide a higher level of service than our current citizens get, but it is the target level of service that we want for the whole city, which we are trying to get to. Um, so if we make them put in a tank, we could make them put in a tank, it, and, and we could defend it, but we could only make them put in a tank big enough for their own subdivision, unless we're willing to pay the difference. So, option one is that we do not, option one, actually, these are, I have these backwards. Option one is that we have them install the line up to the tank, dedicate the land for where the future tank is gonna go, and put the infrastructure in. So then the city goes in and puts in the tank at the time we're ready to do that with impact fees, and we can go after water optimization grant and loan, and, and they contribute their portion by all of the impact fees that every one of these houses puts in. Because they're technically above the one thousand, um, as required by the state engineer. Option two is, we have them put in a tank, road and infrastructure now, but then we're gonna have to decide whether we want them to upsize it to what we need, which is the smart decision. We do have on our plan to put in a tank about, I think it's about fifteen years into the future, is when we will actually need the storage. Doesn't make a sense to build a tank and to build a small one. It makes, makes sense to build the tank we want, then we're not adding another tank in the next fifteen years. Um, and we get the shared benefit.
Dan, would this location be compatible with the existing tanks?
The location, I'm glad you pointed that out, Dave. The location is, um, has already been close to predetermined. We put it in at the exact same, um, elevation above sea level, um, adjusted slightly for the, for the water model. And it actually is an advantage over putting a second tank where the existing location is, 'cause then we don't have to go in and put that, that additional water line up the canyon like we have planned currently. So to actually separate the tanks in location is a better design factor for us.
So it, the pressure and everything will equalize, and you won't have one.
Yeah.
Backflowing to the, uh.
So the tank that we have out there by the landfill is at the exact same elevation as our tank that's up the canyon.
But isn't there some problem with overflow or something?
No, it's just that there's friction in the line, and so the, and, and where the wells are that fill the tanks, um, the water never makes it to the exact same level, even if they're, anyways, that's, that's technical stuff. But, so that's one of the considerations, is, is what do we wanna require? And more importantly, what does the city wanna kick in, and do we wanna try and use impact fees? The other thing is, is if we make them put in a tank, we can't charge impact fees on those houses towards putting in a, a tank. And our impact fee includes collecting for a new tank. So we, we can't have our cake and eat it too there, so we just kinda have to decide what, what the plan is and what the option is. And one of those two really oughta go in this annexation agreement, because it's, what's gonna supply water for this whole area. And it is a thirty percent increase on the size of our city. So we really need to answer this question, figure out what we wanna do. Okay, so that's the water tank conversation?
And our, so our proposal on that was just to provide the tank site, provide the easements, provide the main to the tank, and provide the maintenance road up to it. The city collects impact fees off of these lots with all the other developments, and then the city puts in the tank at whatever time that's.
Yep.
That's funded.
And, and if we have the site, and we have the, everything is there, as, as they start building out, um, we may wanna go earlier to put this tank in than what we originally had planned, um, because now we don't have to do that construction project up the canyon. Um, and now that we have the result of our water model, we actually recognize that we have a deficiency for some of the other parts of the city, therefore it should bump up the priority list.
So the city preference, option two, and developer preference is the same?
It is the same. Yep. That was one of the options we were gonna consider anyways. Okay, roads, this is another big one, and we already discussed it a little bit. Um, o- option number one, as we, as, as the city had it in there, they build the two connections now, two hundred north and City View Drive specifically called out. And they would be fully improved to three hundred east, in the case of two hundred, and to one forty-three in the case of City View Drive. And by fully built out, I mean curb gutter and sidewalk. Option two, looks just like option one, but we would require a third, um, form of ingress egress at some number of homes. This was what we hoped to get some input from the traffic impact study, which we don't have. So could we negotiate to something that we could both agree on and move forward now, was the idea. Their option, as they had looked at it, was they'll put in two hundred north now, fully improved curb gutter and sidewalk, which, which would give them up to eighty homes on that one connection. And for the record, there is a second emergency connection, which is the gravel road that, that connects by the gravel pit. It isn't a dedicated road, but it is a road by public use, and it could be used in the event there was a blockage on the main road. But essentially, they would only have one improved connection now. Once they go over eighty, they would then have to come on, in with a second connection that's conducive with our general plan. That could be City View, it could be one hundred north, working with the county, it could be three hundred or four hundred. Should something change there, we don't expect it to. Nobody expects those to go through right now, for anybody listening online. There's a big part of the community that doesn't want those to go through, and that's fine. But that would be up to the development to come up with that second connection, at the time they wanted more than eighty homes approved. No third connection being required ever, by the way, they're asking for it. So those are the three different options. Oh, and there was the added thing in there, and I'm hoping you can elaborate on this, that we would do the transportation study as a part of the subdivision process, and, and what the results of it would supersede this. What was your intention there?
So, council had requested the water sewer, power, traffic studies, and by the last meeting when you approved, I was assuming that.
Yeah.
We had to provide a power study and a traffic study at the first phase.
Yeah, and, and I just didn't put it in there, but that was the intent.
Yeah, and so I just copied the power one and modified it to traffic.
Okay.
Um, but, but along the same, same lines of the water and having three connections from day one or two connections, um, two hundred's already dedicated, that's an easy one to improve to three hundred. Um, but there's several other options for secondary access, none of which are very straightforward at this moment in time.
Yep.
City View Drive is on the master plan, but how that works with road design geometry and the county is, is very speculative.
It's very speculative. We do have an engaged and active county. They're working on their master plan of that. We have B L M at the table. I think we have all the partners at the table that really wanna move forward with that. My concern, if we don't have the subdivision build City View Drive, is it will never get built or improved to some level without the county and city just going in and doing it. So the burden for City View Drive, if the development doesn't put it in, will fall to the county and city. Now, having said that, not being a traffic engineer, I don't know how much City View Drive will be used on a day-to-day basis, just knowing human nature, of the majority of the houses that are out here in the middle of this, they're probably not gonna come up City View Drive unless they're going up to Bryanhead, or until two hundred goes through effectively. When two hundred goes through effectively at some point in the future, maybe City View Drive becomes the easiest way to get out of town if I work in Cedar, right? But for the time being, two hundred north is gonna be, probably take the bulk of the traffic. So from a traffic standpoint, again, I'm not an engineer, one hundred north and two hundred north would probably make the most sense. Just know that City View Drive, the burden of building it will probably then fall to the city and county.
And it should be noted that one hundred north is on our master.
We did add it to the master plan, and I think the county is slowly coming around to realizing that will actually help their circulation for the.
For the fair.
For the fair. They're finally coming along. I've talked to their engineer that's doing their master plan, and, and he's like, okay, that makes sense. Because if they build a large barn, um, event center on the backside of this property, how are they gonna get ingress egress when they're, when they're letting people out after an event? It's one thing to meter them in through a gate, but when they wanna get them out, they wanna get them out, so. That's the discussion.
We did, I, I did send this map to them for the, they had a charrette type meeting a couple of weeks ago, so.
Yeah, yep.
Um, and we also, so whatever's on the city's master plan within our property, we fully developed to city standards, full build out everything that's.
Yep.
That's inside our property. But generally, there's the, there's the first one, we're tagging the second. At the eighty-first lot is what triggers, similar to water, similar to water main or water services and water rights.
So are you, are you looking at some sort of a, I mean, 'cause some cities have this dialed right in. Uh, the size of a subdivision requires more than one egress and ingress, or is this just a tying it to the water? I mean, what was your methodology to come up with eighty and two fifty?
Yeah, so, uh, it's based off of just what Cedar City has. So Cedar City allows you up to eighty off of one. Um, and then even on the water, they let you have, assuming water pressure's adequate, you can have up to two hundred and fifty homes on a single before you have to provide a secondary loop for redundancy. And so a lot of this is just kinda modeled on the design standard.
I figured you had some methodology, and I wanted to know what that was. So does everybody kind of understand what we're talking about here, and the, and the ins and outs and the, and so forth? Okay. Um, City View Drive specifically, there is a difference of whether or not we would, what we had it is built, fully built out curb gutter and sidewalk intersections. The way that the, the developer would have it would be, um, only a roadway, without the curb gutter and sidewalk, all the way through, um, so.
Does the city have impact fee reimbursement for roads? I don't know what impact fees you have.
We don't have a, we, currently, we don't have a transportation or road impact fee. We, we've talked about establishing one, but we don't.
Okay.
And I was wondering what the intent was of that reimbursement language. I, I knew you probably had some specific intention in mind.
Yeah, so generally, if there is a, if there is a transportation master plan, there are impact fees collected for roads. Generally, what a city will say, just to use Cedar City as an example, is they say the developer's responsible for putting in a fifty-five foot wide right-of-way.
Yeah.
And then if the city's master plan is a sixty-six, seventy-five, or a hundred, the city pays the upsize for the asphalt widening on a hundred-foot right-of-way, and a hundred-foot right-of-way has a six-foot sidewalk instead of a four, so developer pays for four, city reimburses developer for two. Um, they might have thirty feet of asphalt, but a hundred might have fifty feet asphalt, so the developer puts in thirty feet, city reimburses for twenty.
And unfortunately, we don't have the mechanism in place to have collected that. We probably don't have the budget to do the difference, and hence why we need to figure out what we're gonna do and agree to something that works in the annexation agreement. 'Cause at the subdivision level, we don't have the tools in place to deal with it, which is why we gotta figure out what we're doing on the annexation agreement.
And so that's where, where we were saying, from the mass, from the internal master plan roads that are on our site, those are no question fully developed to the city's standards. If the road is partially located on ours, we would do our full side of improvements, plus twelve feet past center line. And then two hundred north, we said we would fully improve to three hundred. But then any other secondary access is whether that's, um, a gravel road in four hundred, or whatever, we would do, I don't remember if the city has a temporary access road or not, but usually it's twenty-eight or thirty feet of asphalt, and then it's just borrowed ditches on the side.
Yeah. And again, just, just something we can negotiate on the master, I mean, on the annexation agreement. One of the reasons why we, we didn't wanna just annex and then talk subdivisions is we knew that we were gonna have some areas that were gonna be bigger than what our subdivision code required. And at the end of the day, if we don't negotiate him on the annexation agreement, we will end up with, um, something subpar. Now, obviously, if we ask too much, you guys stay in the county, develop it in the county, and now we're begging the county to make sure that they don't, in, you know, negatively impact the city by putting a development that is landlocked by the rest of the city and not providing some of these, you know, impacts, or mitigating some of these impacts. So I think we can probably come to an agreement, but we're just, we just don't have the financial mechanism, so maybe there is a trade-off.
Well, and I think, and I think part of, of, of vetting the different trade-offs is that to do a connection like City Drive and do sixty-six foot wide right-of-way curb gutter sidewalk all the way out is a lot of infrastructure cost.
Sure.
And so, does that, if we are getting into this density, phoning thing.
Right. That's why we might have to, like, prioritize globally everything.
Right.
Now, and I, and I totally, that's why I was saying that, that may change based on these other requirements. And, and as we look and we kinda push-pull, and, and we have to prioritize the things that we, with, we really care about that we wouldn't normally get in a subdivision requirement, because every one of those things adds cost. And roads and sidewalks adds a lot of cost in a hurry, so does a water tank.
Yeah.
So we recognize that at some point, we've pushed it too high, and it's not even worth you guys doing, and you now just stay in the county.
But on, but I guess where I was going with it is on the density restrictions on the table and capping it to the five-five-six.
Right.
If the city wants more off-site improvements that cost a lot, then do we balance that?
And here's the third variable that could relieve some of this pressure. If we absolutely say the only way that this is gonna happen that works for us is A plus B, B plus C plus D, and you say, there's no. and you say, there's no way that pencils for us, then we potentially consider a PID to take care of some of these things. Whole different discussion, but I threw that out there before, so let's consider that. So, we'll look and see what we think we really need, and we'll go through it later. And I'll tell you guys about how that could work if you want to look at that, so. Okay, civic and commercial pod, um, this, I think that there was, um, I don't know if it was a misunderstanding, but I'm pretty sure that what we thought we heard earlier is now different than what is in your proposal on the agreement. We thought that the commis- commercial and civic area was to be deeded to the city, and I thought you said deeded. And the way it is now currently in your version of the agreement, it says that it would be sold to the city or school district at, um, fair market value with a, with an appraisal. And then if no, neither the city or the, uh, the school district buys that, after ten years, it would revert to R1 and could be developed, subject to the five-five-six was the way it was worded. We had it in our agreement as just deeding it to the city outright. Did something change, or is this like a negotiation thing, or what are your thoughts?
I think it's, I think it's one, a negotiation thing, and I think, two, it's just, we've kind of earmarked that. But I know from talking with Dan directly as far as a potential city use versus a school, a school could use six and a half acres. If the city needed a public works building and a yard, that might only be two and a half acres. And so, I think it's, we're trying to balance out that, hey, if there's a use for it, and there's, and either the school or the city, um, has a use for it, then, then it can be used for that and, and purchased based at fair market. Or if there is no use and there's other better options for the city or the school district, then we still have our max density cap that we can't exceed, but we can, we could do it as R1. But there's a ten-year clock that says, hey, city, school district, there's ten years to figure out if. And then I, I think initially, we had, we had shown it as potentially being commercial, because with the ball fields, with the development, and with the fairgrounds, it might make sense for some kind of commercial, but I think when we initially proposed that, that that was not a, not a
I didn't think anybody ever wanted to see like a, like a shell station there. Um, I think, and, and you could say that a, you know, a civic use, it can be similar to a commercial use, but there's definitely a, a division of what the city's thought of what that was, being deeded straight over to the city or school district versus buying it, like, that's a clear difference of, of, of looking at it. And so, just wanted to point out that that was that difference. And it probably falls down to that total cost, total value equation, right? So, if that's absolutely important to us, we have to realize how many lots that they can't sell of that six and a half acres, and that ultimately affects their bottom line. And if we push that too far, then it doesn't pencil, and then, then this whole thing kind of goes belly up. So, just part of that conversation. Moving on, um, storm drain development, there's no material difference in
Point of information, Dan, did you, did we skip Valentine's Peak?
Nope, we're getting to it.
Well.
Oh, I guess I don't have it on here, so let's talk about it. I did skip it. Oh, my gosh, I skipped it. Oh, sorry. Okay, Valentine Peak improvements. This is the conversation ultimately about parks and open space, and whether we want to see little pods, little city, you know, neighborhood type, um, pocket parks, or whether we would rather see, um, them put some money into Valentine Peak Sports Complex, which is, um, really a master planned recreational space for all of the city, which would definitely serve this area, um, and, which isn't fully built out yet. Um, we've been looking for funding forever, we've been piecemealing this thing together for decades. Right now, we're trying to develop our pickleball courts, we're one-eighth of the way into that, if you will, and we're running out of, you know, grant money, and we're going to continue to work on it. We would like to fully more develop, of course, we're building our bike park, there's, we would like to put lights on here. We, we are going after grant money right now for a trail system to go around there, and, um, we would really like to see money put into this. So, the question is, is would we rather see them build some pocket parks, which my personal opinion is that's a lot of maintenance for the city, and they don't usually get used that much. And it, they give up a lot or two or developable property. So, the question is, is do we want to require some open space requirements? Do we want to require some trails? Do we want to say, go ahead and build out all your residential stuff you want, and let's just have some money put into the Valentine Peak Sports Complex? So, that's the conversation in general, and if we want to do that, what it really then boils down to is would we rather see a lump sum upfront, which is probably going to be harder for them to want to invest, um, from a, just from a sheer cash flow perspective? Do we want to see them phase it in, put some upfront, a total amount agreed, but then they phase it in as their subdivisions are approved? Or to Dallas's point, they want to have a discussion of what the requirement is, and the requirement is vague. We don't have a super dedicated, you have to do X amount of open space when you build a subdivision or parks. Again, one of the reasons why we want to handle this at the annexation level, when we can kind of negotiate the holistic approach.
Is there a parks impact fee or no?
Yes.
There is.
Sixteen hundred dollars per home.
Okay.
Sixteen and change, sixteen thirty-one or something like that. It's pretty, it's a pretty healthy park impact fee.
Yeah.
We just don't have a lot of building to go, you know, we, everybody's scared that we've been building so much, we've been building about one percent a year. So, we've had some parks money come in, we just expanded our pool, remember, the size? And, um, we have other parks that we'd want to develop, but frankly, we have more park acreage per capita in Perwin than most cities. We just haven't developed it yet, and we haven't put the amenities into it like we would really want to. So, do we want to add more parks, or would we rather enhance this area, so?
Yeah, and I, I guess that's, uh, so with the, with the original zoning discussion where we're just requesting these specific zones, I, I'm not aware of anywhere in the R1, R2, R3 ordinance that requires a subdivision to provide an open space. Generally, when, I think there is something in the PUD ordinance that has some ratio of overall project density.
Yep.
Um, if the city's already going to collect impact fees on every house that's already built here, um, parks are always kind of a double-edged sword on the subdivision side, because the community says in the public hearings, we want more parks, but then the city often says, that's a maintenance burden, and the pocket parks maybe aren't the best. We do plan to have a retention basin, how big that is. Um, there are some, depending on the size and acreage, that, um, like Equestria and Point in Cedar City has ball fields and things in it. So, there's the po- there's the possibility of us doing something in those areas, there's also the trails around and the hills, but I'm just not, the discussion I wanted to have with council is, if there's not a specific requirement in the R1, R2, 3, and the councils are, or the city's already going to collect impact fees on the houses themselves, is there still going to be a requirement for some other contribution above and beyond what the ordinance requires for this? The other factor is that a lot of times when cities look at parks per capita within the city, you want to try to spread those parks out around the city so that they serve different areas. We're right across the street from Valentine Peak, and so we don't need to necessarily put a park in our subdivision when it's across the street from the existing park, so.
And I guess the idea is that we have, you know, um, how many acres?
Hundred and sixty-six.
Hundred and sixty-six acres, to not require something, seems like it's not doing the due diligence that the citizens are going to expect, that you guys contribute something. More than just impact fees, and that's kind of the idea of this requirement. We just hadn't ever put anything on it, any number on it, any, any more of a conversation than wh- what do we, what do we want to see? Do we want to see some trails in there and, and development of that? You know, um, anything that gets put in, we have to maintain. The counter to the maintenance argument is, is we already have to maintain Valentine Peak, we just want it to be nicer, and is that a good compromise? And that was kind of the idea of this, is that putting some money into Valentine Peak is a compromise. If it's just at the subdivision level, we would have a hard time asking for it. At the, at the annexation level, it kind of makes some sense. So, what do we want to see there? Can we move on to the next thing? Anything else?
No, that, we're just trying to understand what council's ask is between those, the three options presented, and then what
Yeah.
what dollar amount that translates to.
And we haven't had a single discussion on it.
Yeah.
Okay, um, civic commercial pod, we talked about that. Storm drain development, there's no material difference in that, they're just going to have to have their, their plan as a subdivision level, recognizing that there is some inflow from the foothills, and that'll have to be, um, dealt with at the technical level and approved.
Depending on, depending on the requirements from council, whether there is some kind of park component, and it's left to our discretion or not, that could be incorporated into
Sure.
that basin. We might have to have a two acre for just our water, but maybe we make it a five acre.
Yeah.
And
And everybody's comfortable with what he's talking about, right? Where you have a detention basin, you plant a soccer field on it? And it does dual purpose, so it's not just this raw land that's sitting there in weeds with a fence around it, but it actually acts as a park, and then when there is a flood, it floods out into the grass and soaks in. These are done pretty common, um.
Yeah.
So, that could be done. Okay, power study, um, there's no material difference on this. We said that we would need a power study and that they'd need to comply with that, with the results of that. We really don't expect this to be subs- substantial. Um, we know that we have capacity in our, in our substation. The question is, is, is any upgrades to the line that kind of feeds this section of town? And there probably is some minor to medium upgrades to that line, we just don't know what they are until they have a power study, so that they would have to comply with the results of the power study they would eventually have to do. So, there was no difference in opinion on that. Traffic impacts, impact study, same thing. I just wondered what you meant by the study would supersede the effects of the agreement, or the aspects of the agreement. Are, are you saying that if the traffic impact study came back and said, two hundred north needs to go in, and one hundred north needs to go in, that that then becomes the priority?
Yeah, well, it
shifting from the City View Drive, you know what I'm saying? What was the
Yeah, it's, well, it's kind of a, it's kind of a balancing thing, because like the eighty lots in Cedar City that I referenced and use as a basis for this, if you look at the International Fire Code, I think they go to thirty houses.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but that's generally applied in more urban environments. Um, and then as you get into more rural environments where roads are, there's less roads to connect to, um, they, the fire or the cities make determinations that go above that. And so Cedar City is one that has said, you can go up to eighty, and it copies pretty much everything Cedar City does, standard engineering-wise. And so, that's something that is fairly common in Iron County. Um, so, I, from a tra- I, to be honest, traffic impact fee studies rarely ever come up here, um, as far as
Not, not impact fee, but an impact analysis.
Yeah, sorry, traffic impact study and, and analysis. Um, so, usually when, when those come up, it's more about, hey, we need to put a deceleration lane in
Uh-huh.
or a center turn lane. So, I don't know what the results of that
Right.
will come back, but if there was something that was identified in the traffic modeling that was critical, then that could
And I, I think the whole reason why we wanted it is, everybody was speculating on what is the result of the impact on these roads going to be. Again, this subdivision is landlocked against the hill, you cannot get there by, without driving through the city. And that, that made at least the citizens, and I know the council kind of stressed, is what is this going to look like if this goes in? And, and therefore, this kind of comes back to the number of connections. Obviously, if you multiply the number of connections, you divide the, the, um,
Loading.
the loading, depending on how the traffic is actually going, expected to go, and only a study will tell you that. We could put in five connections, and if everybody uses the, the one, maybe we just need a wider road there or something.
Yeah.
And that's why the results of the study would actually give us data, and that's why we thought it would be very helpful to guide our decision on how many roads to make you put in or so forth.
And generally, those volumes are already loaded into your minor collectors, major collectors, and arterials.
Right.
So, I would, I would assume that by doing the traffic study, it's not going to change a whole lot besides saying, hey, we still need a sixty-six foot
Yeah.
here and a sixty-six foot there, and so.
Agreed. So, but again, I just wondered what you meant by supersede some aspects, so. Okay, sewer lift station, um, there's, there's two things on the sewer. Um, by the way, the results of the study, just to kind of update everybody, uh, of the water study and the sewer study, um, the big deal with the water study had to do with, with the, um, fire flow and number of connections and the water tank, which we already talked about. The results of the sewer modeling, um, I'm just going to sum this up, you guys have a copy of it, you can read through it. The bottom line is, as long as you put in a variable drive, um, on the, on the lift station, it has no material impact requiring an upgrade to any of the off-system stuff. Does that make sense to the council? So, in other words, the lift station, because of the way gravity works, needs to be located in this bottom corner. And whether they connect, they run the forced main and connect to three hundred east, down four hundred or four fifty, or, or run it down two hundred north. The impact on the rest of our collection system is negligible and does not require any upgrades to the mains all the way out to the, um, collection system, above and beyond what growth will normally do anyways. So, as long as they build their sewer system with a lift station, and they're, and the col- collection system to meet our city engineering standards, there's really nothing to put into this agreement, other than they'll just follow the city's engineering standards. Except for, we really want to see a variable frequency drive, because some of these lift stations work like it waits till, it waits till the wet well fills to a certain point, it then kicks on, and, and there's a surge of wastewater. A surge of wastewater was not modeled, that potentially could cause a problem. Newer lift stations, they do a vari- variable frequency drive, which means they slowly turn on and they ramp up. It's actually a better use of electricity too, which we're going to be paying the bill on. So, variable frequency drive does not create surging, and it, and it's cheaper for us because we pay a demand charge rate on power. Long story short, there's not really much to talk about with the sewer, other than the fact
And
hang on, I'm going there, I know where you're going.
Okay.
That we currently don't have lift stations that the city maintains, and our sewer pricing does not contemplate the capital maintenance costs, nor the operational cost of a lure, of a sewer lift station. And since this will cover five hundred and fifty-five homes, give or take, depending on what we do with zoning, um, this represents an additional ongoing operational cost and capital cost to the city. The way a lot of times cities deal with that is they have a, a user fee for those customers that are on a lift station. And this contemplates that we may put sud fee, if we decide to, on the people within this annexation area. And they didn't have a change to that.
Yeah, and I would recommend you do that.
Yeah, that's pretty standard. Otherwise, we have to increase the fee to everybody in the city and average it, and that's not fair to people that are already in the city. With no, with all pure gravity fed. Did that satisfy what you were going to say, Dave?
Thank you.
Okay. Master plan and, oh, go ahead.
Dan, just as, uh, one other point is that we have that shown for a lift station for ours. As far as one hundred north connecting through Ann City Drive, there's going to be, for us to get right of ways through there, there's going to have to be some kind of negotiation. I don't know what their capacity is and if they can reach gravity, but that could be something that in discussing trying to get a road right of way through the county.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I've, I've already prepped the county on that.
Okay.
To say in their discussion of their master plan, they're limited, there's, imagine this invisible line that comes right up through here like this.
Yeah.
There's a reason why this hasn't developed, because gravity feed, you can't do it past a certain point east. That includes the county's own fairgrounds.
Right.
So, if they want to build a big event center, you know, they either got to do a septic, which we're probably not going to allow, or they're going to have to build their own sewer, or they're going to have to tie into the sewer these guys want to do. So, when it comes to negotiating back and forth, there could be a win-win between the, the county fairgrounds and, and AJM. And I've told the county about that, I've talked specifically to their engineer, it's Curtis Nelson with Enzine, and he's like, got it, makes sense. So, hopefully, there can be some collaboration there.
Yeah. Can any of this gravity flow?
No.
None? You can clarify?
Uh, theoretically, if you did some like forced mains, I mean, some pressurized mains, you could probably gravity flow part of it, but that's, maybe speak to that.
Yeah, I
That's no manholes, that's weird.
Yeah, not, yeah, not enough for it to really make sense. And in order to make it go further, we'd have to tie bigger, flatter lines. And in order to make it go further, we'd have to tie bigger flatter lines into existing small lines. And so it's, by the time we run off-site sewer and do all of that, just to serve a portion of it, we're better off putting that money towards a lift station and, and, and doing a pumpback line.
I didn't think it would, but I thought I'd have.
Yeah.
Dave and I had a conversation. I said, technically, it might be possible. So I'm glad you pointed that out. That's probably a bad idea.
I know it won't flow from my house.
Okay, um, going on to the next item. Again, not a lot of disagreement there. Uh, master plan improvement requirement, I, that was a, a whole clause that was put in there. I was wondering what the specific intent, and I think you already talked about reimbursement of impact fees for streets and is that what you were getting at or was there something else?
Yeah, so I just, I didn't know if the city had, I, I didn't know what the impact fee structure was like and I didn't know if there was reimbursement, but kind of like we've already talked about, if the city had a thirty-six inch storm drain that was master planned in Cedar City, the developer pays for the twenty-four inch and the city pays the upsides from twenty-four to thirty-six. So I wasn't aware if the city had a mechanism like that for any of the infrastructure.
You know, about the only infrastructure that, that that would even apply to if we did it would be streets, which we already talked about the, the problem there. And it would be, um, storm drain. You're gonna handle all your own storm drain. There really isn't anything above you coming down. And the, and our, and our master plan just says that you will handle your own and possibly convey it to the gravel pit with some restrictions. And the water tank. Those are really the only type of master plan type things that could possibly be involved. And I think we're gonna address any of those with the agreement. So we could probably scrap that.
Yeah, if there's not a reimbursement clause, I, I, it was mostly just to say, if there is reimbursement, then part of these offsites could be reimbursed. And by entering into this agreement, we're not precluding ourselves from trying to get reimbursement if that is an option.
Sure.
But in, but in the, in the sense of, like we've already talked about, if there is no reimbursement mechanism and the city's looking for us to make all these offsite improvements, then there should be some kind of consideration for a give and take that translates with lots and that kind of thing.
Right. Yep. And, and really, again, it's gonna come down to these few issues like the water tank and, and, um, possibly parks or something like that, so. Okay, um, impact fees, um, this was another big, huge red flag for us. Um, this, the agreement says that we would freeze the impact fees as of the date of the agreement. There's no way we're ever gonna agree to that.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't notice that.
Yeah, so we would just, because we are in the middle of, we've, we've started a, an impact fee facilities, uh, s- impact fee
So-
study on water and sewer. And, um, we plan on doing one on storm drain and potentially streets. Um, we want to establish a storm drain enterprise fund. But, um, yeah, I, I figured that that was probably a carryover of some other plan, but we would never want to do that, freeze the impact fees as of the date of the agreement. Um, not that, you know, impact fees are a result of mathematical equation. We're not gonna try to hurry and jack up the impact fees to affect your area or anything like that. We just are going through the process and we do, we wouldn't wanna lock ourselves in permanently in the fu- you know, for the next however long this whole thing takes to develop to today's impact fees. That just doesn't make any sense, so.
Yeah.
Okay, term and termination of the agreement. Um, we had no term of agreement, termination upon mutual agreement. There was more legal, technical stuff. This is a different approach that says, once the certificate of occupancy of, has been issued for five hundred and fifty-six units, the agreement goes away. I talked about that earlier. That could be weird if we're trying to do a density restriction. The whole point that, that, that the developers thing was trying to say is, after the house is built, there's not gonna be any annexation restrictions, right? And, um, and after you meet your five hundred and fifty-six. Depending on how that plays out, we didn't feel comfortable with that. But we already talked about that, how that could be resolved, and I think we'll work through that legally. Um, another thing that we had in our agreement that was removed was after ten years, if no development happens whatsoever, the city could decide to rezone it. If, or deannex it or something like that. Um, I don't know. That was just something we put in the agreement. I don't know if it's like some big deal breaker or not. And that was just completely removed in your agreement. Um, run with the land, we talked about that. Default and remedies, this is more of a legal thing. We're gonna want Scott to look in. Ours didn't have any default remedies clause. Um, but in, in yours, there was a pretty healthy default remedies clause, um, and including anything would basically go to a judicial proceeding, proceeding. We're gonna wanna see this look more like governmental immunity is still protected and if anything, we agreed to go to a mediator or something like that. We don't wanna have to go to court if there's some sort of a thing. My impression of recent development agreement trainings and things like that. So we may wanna have some back and forth on what we agreed to there. Don't need to spend any more time on it. Besting of rights, we already talked about the la- locking the land use code in as of the date of the agreement versus we wanted to see rural done right apply. Whew, that's the bulk of it. Um, wrong hearing date, there was a code reference that was weird. There was one section that referred to, that you would be allowed four total residential units
Yeah, I-
and then later it said five fifty-six. Was that a mistake?
I think so, 'cause that, when I was reading through it, I, I forgot to change that.
Okay.
But I, they sent it back to me and I saw that and I thought, hmm.
Yeah, I thought there was probably something weird.
Yeah.
The future laws thing we talked about, there was another thing where you said, and again, this only applies if we're doing the d- density restriction. As you actually do your subdividing, basically you said you could wiggle within fifteen percent as long as you didn't go over on the total.
Yeah. And I-
But it actually says, if you're in excess of fifteen percent, then you could do whatever you wanted. And I think it meant to say, if you were less than fifteen percent, you had the wiggle room.
Yeah, so, so what I, and that was, that was my addition to it, but when we, when I prepared the zone map, those are just
Yeah.
even numbers. And so when we talk about saying like, hey, the R two's gonna be five hundred feet wide.
Yeah.
If we end up having
Yeah.
and we lay out roads and lots and we, I just was trying to put something in there to say-
To give you a, so, some margin for design.
Yeah, and so, yeah, so, and I just picked fifteen percent as an arbitrary number.
It's just the way it's worded, once you go over fifteen percent, then you have carte blanche. And I think you meant you get to wiggle up to fifteen percent.
Yeah.
And it's just written backwards, is all.
Yeah. Yeah, so that, that was the intent though, was just to, to not get through this process and then come back and say, oh, or R two, our lots extend beyond our boundary by ten feet and now we
Yeah, yep.
And that, and then I tried to put it at the discretion of the land use, or the land use authority to say, yeah, that's, that's reasonable.
So that's it, other than we needed some time to look at it legally and I wrote those notes down.
Yes, and, and I hope you understand, Alex and I, I know Alex does, um, but when this mayor and council looks at this, we talk about you guys and you and you, but they're also looking at it through the lens of the next purchaser or if he sells off.
Yeah.
So-
There's a whole transferability thing that we had a clause, you guys changed it. We're gonna wanna kind of make sure we're comfortable with that.
But our, our intent is that whatever gets put into this agreement and gets recorded is binding to the lots until they're platted into quarter acres or, or whatever they are. But if we come through and do a minor subdivision and we cut it into a forty acre piece and a sixty acre piece and a fifteen acre piece that's gonna be further subdivided, then the intent is that this is still binding to, to the annexation agreement, so.
It's like a phase.
Yep.
Just be a new owner.
Yes.
Mayor, that is what I have.
All right. So if we're going to continue to talk about this, and this was our opportunity to kind of go through these with responses and when this is all fresh on Dan's mind, because clearly he put a tremendous amount of work into preparing for this meeting. Are there any other questions the council needs clarification on or needs to make notes of or consideration that through this process became something that you're concerned about or have another question about?
If I think of something else, I'm gonna go right to his office. I know where you live.
And we're gonna have a work meeting too, right?
Yeah.
So.
So we'll plan on a follow-up meeting two weeks from today to kind of go through this more in-depth after everyone's had a chance to get eyes on it?
Mm-hmm. And if we do a work meeting, I mean, we theoretically could do it the beginning of the week after the coming week, because the coming week is really hard for everybody.
The next week is bad. We have, yeah, a bunch of stuff.
There's just a lot going on, a lot of meetings, lot, lots of things. I mean, I couldn't even think of where we could put it. So would we wanna try to schedule that while we're all sitting here?
Yep, we'll do. Let's not leave with any vagueness.
All right.
We don't have it, we could do something on Wednesday, the day before city council, twenty-third, do a work meeting, work through it.
That's all I got.
That work?
Wednesday-
I, I, I couldn't do it until like six.
Wednesday, the twenty-third, six o'clock? That work for everybody?
That's good.
I'm okay.
Everybody brings their leftover Easter candy?
(laugh) Enough time to notice and all those good things, okay?
So that's Wednesday, the twenty-third at six. Is that right?
Yep.
And if I'm a few minutes late, that's okay. Okay. And that works for you?
And is that, yeah, that works for me. So is that, that'll just be a meeting just for, a work meeting just for this specifically?
Yeah.
Right?
Just for the annexation agreement, yep.
All right. Okay.
Right.
All right, thanks, that was fun.
Thank you.
So we probably need table, we officially need table fourteen then. Table fourteen to the work meeting, right?
All right, I need a vote, or actually a motion to table item fourteen to the work meeting scheduled for April twenty-third at six P M.
I'll make a motion to table item number fourteen, the discussion and approval of language to be used in H A M Investments LLC annexation agreement through the twenty-third of April, six o'clock.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, see you then.
Thank you.
We'll move now from our action meeting into our work agenda. Item fifteen is discussion on Legacy B Estates, the planned unit development.
Thanks for sitting through all that, guys.
Hey, thanks for having us. Um, anybody need to do some head, shoulders, knees and toes really fast?
I think I need to do a, a bathroom trip. Everybody else has been going.
You've been talking.
I know.
(laugh) Go.
All right, well, thank you guys for having us. Um, we appreciate the opportunity to speak with you about our wonderful subdivision that we're trying to get approved tonight. Um, I would love to start off with a little story time. Uh, I've spoken with all of you, um, briefly with Sharon before this meeting, um, just yesterday and went through a couple of your guys' concerns and it, it seems like there's one that, uh, I would like to address, not for just you guys, but for anybody who's listening as well. Um, let's go back twelve months ago from right now. Uh, my wife, or my, sorry, my mom and my beautiful daughter, uh, we came down here looking for some land. We sat in Daniel Roberts' office, um, he explained to us, hey, I used to do exactly what you're doing with Fleetwood, as a matter of fact as well. Um, I know exactly where you should go and I believe that the city of Perahuon would love to have you guys there. So he drove, drove us over to this land about five thirty, six P M on a Thursday, um, to which we loved it. And we saw that there was an opportunity to buy, um, this ten to seventeen acre parcel, uh, from Russell Emery, who we didn't know at the time by any means. And, um, in the, in the timeline, the following day, we got the parcel and the address and everything. We went into the city's office, um, to which Dan was not there. We spoke with Keith very briefly and then we left. We got a call about an hour later. We're sitting over at, at Dee's eating and Dan says, hey, I would love to speak with you guys, please come into my office. So we drove back right after we got done with lunch, um, and met with him. And at that time, we explained to him everything, from start to finish of our background, of what we have done in the past. And he pulled up the code for the P U D and he noticed that in the code, it stated that it does say the P U D can be under a single ownership approval. Um, so at that time, again, we explained to him, the manufactured home community, uh, that we would like to be getting going right now. And, uh, fast forward about two weeks later, we're in negotiations with Russell Emery's agent. Um, we closed on his land about three months after that. And we immediately started getting the engineering done. Um, just because we knew based off of the code, there wasn't gonna be much of a problem getting this approved. Um, get through engineering and then we find, uh, the guy's number and name next door to us and, so we give Ryan Sorenson a call. Say, hey, we'd love to buy your land, five acres next door. He said, yep, sounds good, make me an offer. Uh, we sent him an offer. Within a couple of short days, we were escrowed and closed on it. At that time, we had to go back to the drawing board with engineering and get the plat or the community engineered to fifteen acres instead of just ten, which took time and rezoning the two different parcels was about six months in difference of time. Just because we were obviously getting engineering done and trying to get this land purchased. And fast forward a little bit further, um, about January this year when we closed on it, we got engineering done. We felt very good about the subdivision and we get the final bit, um, of approval going through the planning and zoning. And at that time, um, Mr. Burns brings up this verbiage in the, uh, in your guys' code that states that it shall, um, you shall have the opportunity to sell the land, uh, with, with the mobile home community or manufactured home community that we're doing. And at that time, it kind of took me off guard a little bit, um, just because I wasn't necessarily prepared for any rebuttal. I thought that this subdivision with everything that would, would said and presented so far was gonna be a great one for the people and, uh, a huge addition to Perahuon with the, bringing in this many people for commercial jobs, three good truck stops going in. Um, and a lot, I'm sure a lot of the people for those truck stops will be in this community as well. So I guess I stand here in front of you guys tonight to ask you, and I don't wanna take up too much time unless I have to. Um, but I don't, I would love to get the verbiage of shall, um, in a variance, just like we've spoken with planning and zoning to be able to do. Um, and then if that was the case, we'd love to be getting going on, getting the rest of our water rights and making sure that we're taking the steps forward progressively to get the subdivision built. So I, I don't have too much to say. I know I said a ton in the last planning and zoning meeting. Um, and I, I believe that each one of you guys has watched that now. Um, so I'm here today to ask that question and to address any concerns or comments that you guys have about the subdivision, so.
Before we get into the details, um, I've had a, um, a real revelation as I was working what feels like all night on that other one. Um, there's, some of the questions and concerns that the council has had have come down to specific requirements. Um, we just got a brand new version of this right before the last meeting. Um, we can probab- and, and, and some of the questions and reservations have to do with timing of when this is required, when that is required. For example, water rights. Uh, water requir- water rights we require upon subdivision. If you guys aren't gonna subdivision if we allow the common ownership, then when should the water rights be dedicated? Um, typically, we just have those dedicated upfront, at the front of the development. I know that there was, this was, this came up in a recent conversation between you and one of the council and it led to a discussion in our water board last night of when would the water rights be required? And it's, it's vague, so not that we need that kind of development agreement that we were talking about with this other one, but we could answer the questions. A development agreement is something as allowed by Utah law on a planned unit development. We could have a simple development agreement that actually puts in writing anything that we come to an agreement on here.
Awesome.
The things that you're saying you're willing to do, we would like to memorialize that in a development agreement. And this is the first time this is being said because I realized last night, we just need to do a development agreement.
Okay.
To put all this stuff in writing, whatever we decide to allow or disallow or something like that. So I just wanted to say that.
Yep, makes total sense for me as well. I'd love to be able to do that, 'cause it-
And, and I will apologize and own any miscommunication or obfuscation with respect to the ordinance and the timing. I, I would hope that I didn't cause, I, I remember when you came in and got your, your business license to sell the manufactured homes. I recall that you were gonna sell the manufactured homes for the manufactured home planned unit development. I honestly, because I'm not familiar with, I was not, I am now familiar with the concept of, of having a planned u- manufactured home planned unit development, putting manufactured homes in. But the, but the person placing the manufactured home on the lot does not own the lot. So that's when I went back and looked at it again, I had no idea. When I looked at it, potluck, it says,
Gotcha.
you know, it's provided or it's not provided. And, and as soon as I saw that, that's when I brought to your attention, everyone's attention, shall own the lot.
Well, and, and I think there has been a tendency, and I know there has, because it's been said a few times, that and, and, and behind what was said was maybe a thought that there's been some bait and switch or there has been some ill intent or that, and I even heard it said by more than one person, that the city staff, when did the city staff know about this? And, um, this-
Dan, I did go over that while you-
Oh, you did? Okay, cool. But my point being, um, this has been, this has been a, an, a process as we have come along this journey. I remember very early on, we talked about, when it, when we were talking utilities, a master meter would be for common development versus individual meters. And we, and so- And we, and so we were like, wait, can we even do that? And I remember looking in, like, the planned unit development code and seeing, yes, you can do common, common space. We're not looking at the mobile home because we hadn't arrived to the realization that unless you do that affidavit of a fixture, it has to be in mobile home. We were still operating under the, understanding that it was a planned unit development where common property is, is okay.
Gotcha.
And so it was the evolution of this thing when we had the, um, the, the state engineer weigh in and say, you can't put all of, of these homes behind a master meter unless there's a, unless there's their own water company. We look back at our code and, and administratively and looking at our code says, we're not going to have a, a sub, a water company, privately owned water company within our water system. So at that point, we then had to switch from that to the individual meters. And then, of course, then that had an, then that had an impact on, on water, um, right dedication.
Major financial.
So this has been a discussion and an ongoing thing as we've arrived to where we're at. There was a real big aha moment when clearly what you guys wanted was different than what everybody thought it was going to be and that comes down to the homeownership. All I ask is, is rather than spend any time figuring out who knew what when and the conspiracy of was something being misled on purpose, we, whatever it is, we're here now and we get to make a decision on whether we want to strict, stick to our code strictly or whether we want to give a variance. Both paths forward could, could happen. Just what does the council want to see and how is there that give and take back and forth? That's what I wanted to say.
Yep.
Sounds like you covered part of it.
Yep, and, uh, I do believe that the, the, um, developer agreement would solve a lot of issues and concerns. That way we can go through it in, in line by line item, just like you guys were dealing with, um, Dallas prior to us. But no means do we have to go into depth like that tonight.
Uh, and I'll still own it for the record.
And, and by the way, I did find out, um, actually, thanks to, uh, Molly made a call to the state ombudsman, um, asking up to some clarification on, on land use issues with what our code says and, and, and what state code says and things like that. And after talking through with him, it's pretty much, our, our code is clear. And if we wanted to say, since they are mobile homes because they're not affixed, we could stick to that. We could give a variance and, and he didn't have any problem with that. He said, that sounds like you have a, a, a solid legal ground to stand on one or the other and it really comes bound to the decision of the council and what do they want to see. The other thing that came out of that is, I asked the question, could you unaffix a home from a property?
What was the answer?
The answer is you can.
Okay.
It's called an affidavit of removal.
Okay.
So, I don't think it actually changes whether the council, so my point is, is if you affix them.
We just sell them for more.
But then in order to be treated as a standard public utility dis- uh, development, private, P U D.
Yep.
You would have to put them on a masonry foundation and that can be block. And then it could be affixed. And for your model, it might still work, but it's still common land not owned by the person. And that may still be a problem with the council and they may not like that idea. But we could go down that path where you affix them and then if somebody wanted to remove it, the affixed your affidavit, what it does is it turns it from personal property into real property.
Yep.
But you can go through the process to undo that. It's called the affidavit of, and this is straight from the state's, um, it's state tax commission information. You can, affidavit of removal, you can take that, unaffix it from the property and take the home and go. So there's possibly some wiggle room there, but that's assuming the council is comfortable with the idea of not owning the land. It doesn't really change wh- what is the path forward and, and what's the council want to do. I just needed to kind of put that out there, so.
Yeah, I'm, I, I guess I don't necessarily, I've affixed them to property before and sold them for quite a bit more, but I didn't do the retaining, or we didn't do the retaining of the land at that point. Um, this way, we are able to sell a home and pay for all of the road, curb, gutter, sidewalk, asphalt utilities and not recoup the cost upfront. Essentially, we're just doing it over another twenty-five to thirty-five years, which is really good for the buyers that are trying to get into affordable living. Our average home's going to be right around two hundred thousand and they're, they're going to be very beautiful homes. Now, if we were to section every single one of these homes off and sell them and not retain the land, we're selling them for over two hundred thousand dollars more, which is a nonstarter. Doesn't make sense for here because the, the developer has got to make money. And this is a, a very expensive subdivision that she's fronting the money for upfront to be able to get going. Um, and with, without having a route of recouping her money, that, it doesn't make sense. Developers make money for many reasons, obviously. There's a ton of different ways to be able to develop the land. Um, but if we're able to develop the land and sell the homes, we are kind of essentially, and maintain and retain, uh, ownership so that we can make sure that it doesn't turn into a junkyard by any means. Uh, I've driven by a few streets in, here in Parawan and not very impressed. In this subdivision, you drive through our streets and if there's a blow dryer that's left out on the front yard for over twenty-four hours, they're going to get notified. And if it's left out for more than forty-eight hours or they've, they've been told, um, we can find them and then the third strike is repercussions of booting them out. Um, and if we did sell the land, we don't have any of that responsibility or liability going forward. So I think that it's a huge benefit when we are able to pay for all of their infrastructure, utilities, um, foundations, road, curb, gutter, asphalt, everything, and then let them just purchase their home that they could eventually move out if they wanted to or just stay there long term if they wanted to as well. So that's kind of the, the benefit of this hybrid model that we're doing, um, not having to affix it to the property. Um, I just feel like that's a little bit of problematic in the future when you're trying to create this upfront, very nice neighborhood that you want to maintain and make sure that, like I said, if there is a blow dryer out on the front steps, you tell them. Um, and I, I believe that townhomes are sold just like that. Um, when they are sold, it's just the common airspace, but they are all, all deeded, um, onto the deed. But you're never moving a townhome by any means. And so there's not really a way to unaffix those, um, versus the hybrid model with the manufactured homes is, again, we can put them on a permanent foundation and we can affix them or we don't have to. Um, that's what we're here to get the variance for is to not have to affix them to make them real property so that they will, they can move them out later on if they would like to instead of going through the whole, um, unconveying of the deed and the affidavit of reversal, so. What other questions do we have?
Well, we talked yesterday, appreciate that. Um, I've actually have five pages left questions.
Okay.
So, take deep breath.
Yep.
Right now, do you have forty-two acre, tw- forty-two shares of water?
Nope, and the reason why we don't have them yet is because we needed this approval before we even thought about spending any more money. We are into this, over a million dollars already.
It, it's a business thing.
Yep.
Um, which I think we could handle with a development agreement. Okay. Um, and you agree on paying full impact fees every time?
Yeah, I mean, that was.
Once planning it, okay.
Yeah, that, with, we, I guess we have to.
So with, with eighty, eighty-four units and you're going to be in our discussion, you're not going to be pouring the pads for the entire complex and just one by one?
Correct, so.
So this is about a three or four year construction site for people that are moving in.
Yeah, roughly, I would imagine.
You have to keep down the dust, you have to make sure you have flaggers when, you know, going in and out with the equipment and stuff.
Yep.
So it, it's, it's a construction site until it's done, until it's one hundred percent filled.
Um, just, just for the, um, foundations, we're going to be doing hopefully phases, if the, uh, agreement works out for developers, that we're going to do the first twenty, um, then the next twenty and then the next twenty. So we would do the ro- road, curb, gutter, sidewalk, asphalt utilities, um, in the first twenty and then the, obviously the really expensive rock wall that we have to do around the perimeter. Um, and then for the next twenty, as soon as that, those twenty get finished, we're setting up the next twenty. So we don't do the foundations upon the time of upfront because we don't know which home essentially is going into there. But as soon as somebody sends an order or we submit an order with Fleetwood, then we know exactly the foundation. I got engineering for all my foundations. So we go and get the foundation put in, um, and then as soon as the buyers move in, the, the entire landscape gets put in right after.
Um, the last planning and zoning meeting, you mentioned, um, well, the prior ones, you have one, one hundred and eighty to two hundred and fifty thousand. You mentioned now you have a hundred and thirty thousand dollar one. Can you explain that one?
Yeah, yeah, so I looked at the, the subdivision as a whole and said, hey, you know what? We might need to make it more affordable for buyers somehow. And the only way that I did was, hey, we can sell all the smaller units. Um, but I believe that you guys have, uh, code restrictions on, I think, seven hundred and fifty square feet for a planned home community.
Yeah, and it's actually up here in the P U D code. Um, they go down to, I think you're right. Uh, I'm just scanning here. Okay, R three zone with a minimum livable s- space of seven hundred and fifty square feet.
So how many square feet is that, a hundred and thirty thousand dollar unit? Um, your re- rental agreement, it's interesting how it's spelled out. Um, is, and hopefully after I speak, you know, there won't be too many questions left, so that's a good thing. And this is why we start at five thirty. So the, the rental agreement, um, shows a lot and then a premium lot and then landscaping and it, they're all monthly fees.
Mm-hmm.
So your, your original one's five hundred dollars. Approximately how much more is a premium lot and how much more is landscaping fees?
So, we still have to meet with the contractor, the landscaper that's going to be doing it. I believe Tyler has talked about doing some of the landscaping or knows somebody who does. And if that was the case, we have options for landscaping as far as, hey, you can maintain your own landscaping, no extra fee. Or B, you have us do your landscaping, we just contract out, you pay us, we pay them. So that way the contractor is happy with getting paid every month. Um, and then C, we force it on you and just charge you for it, um, which hopefully we don't want to have to do however, by ever, by whatever means. Um, lands, or the premiums for each lot are going to be different for the three different, four different size of floor plans that we have for the lots and they're not going to be by any means, even within, or even over ten percent of each other. So, we're not, we're not going to be asking somebody to pay seven hundred dollars when we're asking somebody to pay five hundred dollars. I believe that there's a Utah law code that restricts that as well, so, um, does that answer that question for you?
So, in a email, earlier email that you sent to Dan.
Yep. I'm excited about this one, go ahead.
Okay, you just said you're going to maintain one hundred percent of landscaping.
Yep. Yeah, so in the two planning and zoning meetings that we went to, um, in the meantime, from after the first one, we had discussed and we decided that, yes, it would be a good thing to do a hundred percent of the landscape. However, at that time, I went back to the eight people who want to sign intent letters with us to get going on this and I said, hey, we just changed this, this is awesome, let, hear me out. We just made it so that we do your landscaping for you. And multiple people said, no, 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 absolutely not, I am not moving into that subdivision if you, if I can't do my own landscaping. I said, oh, well, but, like, why? What's going on? Well, if I saw that I planted some roses and then some high school kid come out and cut my roses and they don't know how to cut them, I would lose my ever living mind. And if I can't plant my own garden, then I would lose my mind as well. I'm not moving to that, into that subdivision without at least having the option. So the way that we worked it from there, in between the two planning and zoning meetings, it goes like this. The first option is you can do your own landscaping. The second option, if you're not doing your landscaping, we'll let you know, hey, do your landscaping. If you don't do it, we come out and force, force it on you. Um, one of the ladies that I talked to just yesterday before I spoke to you guys, and then I called her again and, and let her know that we, the conversations went well, she said, well, what happens if for whatever reason I don't trim my own rose bushes? I said, strike one, we let you know to do them, to trim them. Strike two, we do it for you. Strike three, I'm coming to steal your roses. She thought it was really funny and I asked her if I, if she's going to be planting strawberries as well because I would like strawberries as well.
So.
And I, sorry, John.
Yep.
That one is my personal favorite and buyers are loving the idea of being able to do their own landscaping or having an option to pay twenty-five, forty-five dollars more for us to come out and do their landscaping or having the contractor come out and do their landscaping.
So in, is any of your options going to allow trees to be planted?
That's a great question. Yep, C C N Rs allow trees within approval, correct?
Can you come speak into the microphone, we'll have people online listening.
Absolutely allowed. There are some provisions in the C C Rs where if someone is remove, is, is moving their home, taking it off, and you have to take trees out, et cetera, or do any other damage that they have to, you know, repair the, the, the lot space to the condition that it was basically before. So some implications, but yes, trees can be planted.
Okay, beautiful.
Thank you, Ken, my father-in-law.
There we go.
Yep.
Um, uh, so, um, I might be like a sick human being, but I've been up since four fifty this morning looking at every planning and zoning meeting. So I just had some concerns.
Okay.
So, I hear the word, you know, control. We can control it. You can, you control everything that happens in this subdivision. Does that bother you at all?
Um.
Does it bother you actually, potential buyers if you, you know, if you, if you leave a blow dryer on the, on the driveway?
Right. I have not had any reservation on that.
Okay.
Yep, with the price of homes that we're going to be selling and being able to afford these, obviously people are going to understand that there's help with the foundations and everything that's underneath it because they're not paying for that essentially, they're doing it over a long term. So people are very acceptable of, hey, I understand, this is your land that we're renting from you, from her and, uh, you want it maintained. And if we don't have it maintained, then I'm sure the city will come after us, which is not going to happen because we're going to, in our C C N Rs, everything is outlined. So, uh, it, we're restricting anything and everything to be able to be reported to you guys because we don't want that. We want you guys to know that we have our own communities back and help cleaning it up if we need.
So when, when planning and zoning met, not the last time, but the year, the week, two weeks prior to that, they asked to give information about the Preston and American Falls units. And, um, even in one of the meetings, the, the, um, the one in Preston was, quote, "A beautiful complex."
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So why, why, if both of them are beautiful complexes and you presented that and they asked you, there, there's a Realtor and another Realtor, ask you just to bring some information, some pictures, um, why didn't you do that?
So, I didn't want you guys to think that this is the route that we're going to be doing and building, right? We, and I apologize for not bringing any pictures forward with the mobile home parks that we own right now.
Mm-hmm.
We're not looking at doing a mobile home park whatsoever. We're trying to do a manufactured home community. So when I brought the picture, um, up last week at the planning and zoning meeting, that was the picture that we're trying to replicate. And we don't want you guys to get the bad idea in their head of single whites, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
We want the idea of this beautiful elegant community that we're doing, road, curb, gutter, sidewalks, asphalt with. Um, and that's the one that I showed you guys last week because that's what we're replicating. We, again, didn't want to show a mobile home park because we're trying to beat that persona right now, especially with the dealership having the nicest model home in America. Um, I would love to change everybody's mind and how they view the manufactured space. So, I do apologize for not bringing those.
But it was mentioned that is beauti- you know, both those parks are beautiful in, in that meeting.
And they are parks and they are beautiful parks.
Are they?
Yep.
So when you trash, and this is what upsets me, when you trash our city and our roads and our neighborhoods, do a Google Earth on Preston, your unit, and do a Google Earth on the one in American Falls. They're trash. And I can say that honestly because I have pictures. So, before trashing us, think about what you, what you presented to us as a beautiful community up in Preston. That's what upsets me.
I apologize. And I, I haven't been to the Preston one in a while, but the American Falls one is by no means trash. I can confirm that.
Well, okay, how old is it?
Older than me.
Yeah. I, I, I Googled Earth, the street view of both of them, had a lot of questions, you know?
Gotcha.
The, the entrance to the one in American Falls has a junky truck with tires and, and it was done this year, two thousand twenty-five. So, you know, there's, there's no control of those two units that you've been bragging about.
And again, those are
We did some homework.
And those are mobile home parks versus the manufactured home community.
This is a mobile home park too, because
We got, we have
All society has a mobile home park, cause they're mobile, cause you can kick them out and they, they have ten days to leave.
So, um, American Falls and Preston, they do not have CCNRs, I believe.
Well, they are a little bit of a different unit, you know?
Yeah.
They, they don't have curb, gutter and sidewalks, we don't. And Preston is absolutely nice, I don't know what picture you have, and American Falls is too.
Okay.
So, yes, they have some single wides, they have some double wides, they were built, we, we finished off Preston, um, and American Falls was already built out, but we do really well, and they look nice. And they're managed very well. The people there that, you know, I don't know what it is, your opinion of it, but, um.
I mean, Brody sent me the, the address, so
Uh-huh.
that's how I do, did the Google Earth.
Well, that's, that maybe is your opinion, and I appreciate that.
Oh, I know. Yeah.
Um, my opinion might be different, but this also is going to be brand new homes and curb, gutter and sidewalk, like you've asked, and so we're in pickleball courts and that kinda stuff. It is going to be different. It's different.
So, while you're up there, it's interesting, everything that I've heard in all the planning zonings, you know, we have control over this, control over this, you do this, this way, you have to do it this way. And one, um, one of the planning zoning persons was concerned, if you're gonna sell it, and I guess you, you're gonna be doing background checks, right?
Yes, we do.
And I heard multiple times, you know, no felons and stuff.
We do background checks.
And, so, if they're trying to sell it, I guess you'd have to approve that sale i- to the person that you do background checks to?
Absolutely not. If they wanna, we'll do a background check if they're going to stay in there.
Yeah, I mean, if they sold their place
But if they're going to move it out, they can sell it
Okay.
to whomever they'd like to sell it to, but if they wanna stay in there, yes, we do background checks.
So, so you're not gonna allow felons in there?
Um, we haven't.
Well, you've said that multiple times, in it
Correct.
So, that's probably a good thing, you know, to do background checks.
We do do background checks.
Because, you know, felons are stupid, that do stupid things, that got caught. So you're gonna allow, like, um, uh, recovering drug addicts and recovering alcoholics to live in there and walk through the street?
Well, I've been taunted, I mean, I
No, I'm just asking you some facts, could, I'm just asking you, cause you mentioned it multiple times about felons.
I mentioned it once when they said, when they asked before, and that's
Okay.
what we hold to, yeah?
So I, you wanna
That is it, I don't know what you want me to say other than that.
Are you saying felons and drug addict, recovering drug addicts shouldn't buy homes?
No, I'm just ask, well, I'm just asking if recovering drug addicts and, and felons are allowed there?
Felons are not, but how do we know that if someone's a recovering drug addict or not?
We don't know that.
Alright. So, yeah, um, that's all. Sorry for talking to you.
Appreciate your apology.
I've got a question, uh, tell me why you are having them rent the space and buy it?
Um, because the upfront costs for homeowners that have to own their land, do all the infrastructure improvements and their foundations is very expensive in this day and age. People can't afford a four hundred thousand dollar, or can't afford a preapproval on a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar home when they can afford a two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar home, um, with a very minimal space rent. And that's just the, the business model that she's nice enough to help buyers get into an affordable living. And it's unique that she's able to do it. Um, so, it, I hope that answers your question.
Well, the reason why is because I was talking to someone today and her sister-in-law lives in one of those types of mobile home parks, I guess you wanna call them, where she does not own the property.
Mm-hmm.
And she wants to sell the trailer or the mobile home, I don't, you know, and no one can get financing for a used manufactured home.
Gotcha, um, nineteen seventy-six and before is really hard to get financing on. The Freddie and Fanny approved double wide manufactured homes, um, and they're five percent down conventional loans, and
What kinda, what kinda length of term?
Thirty year, so it's very traditional financing.
Even if it's not on its own
Mm-hmm.
property?
Yep, and twenty-first mortgage, um, finances for just mobile homes, they don't do any, anything else
Even used?
or manufactured homes. Yeah, um, before, or sorry, after nineteen seventy-six, they do. Cause there's a different, uh, code that came into play there with asbestos and that type of building materials. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I need clarification on something, I've, you know, just been kinda working through everything on, in my mind and on the benefits of this coming into our community. Um, so if somebody wants to move their unit because they found a piece of land and they've been paying on their unit and now they wanna move it to a piece of land, what is the cost for them to move that from their space?
Great question. Um, to unmarried a home is a bit, between ten and eleven thousand, and then you put the wheels, chassis, axles back under, and then the tongue back on, which we have spares and they, buyers can, if they wanna move their homes out, by all means, take some. Um, so it's between ten and eleven, ten and twelve thousand, and then trucking wherever they're taking it, another two to three thousand.
And, I mean, just based on your experience, because I remember you saying something like, I would want them to feel like they could move them, tho- though it's better if they stay. What percentage of people do take them out versus what percentage of people stay?
I lived in a mobile home community, manufactured home community in, in, uh, Springville, that had three hundred units in it. And I lived there for three years, and I still drive by today, and there's still the exact same homes that are sitting there. Uh, one of them burned down, and they were able to just pull it out and put a new one in. So I don't, I don't believe that very many people will move their homes unless they're in a financially stable environment and they want to take it out on a bigger piece of land that, for example, if Toby, his concrete takes off, which he's gonna scale with us, so it will, eventually he's going to be able to afford his own piece of land. And it's really easy to have the people, the contractors come out and unmarried the homes and take it over there and put it on a foundation for him. So I don't, I don't believe that there's gonna be very many people, um, to move them out, but if people like that want to, then we encourage it.
Cause that, to me, was one of the paths to homeownership on land, is you're still paying for a unit that you would, at the end, have value in versus renting something.
Mm-hmm, yep, and people like Toby can actually afford to get into these homes. Um, we're sub-two thousand dollar mortgage payments, and the preapproval letters are a big deal for a lot of buyers right now. Nobody can afford a four hundred thousand dollar loan, um, not to mention qualify for it. So, thank you, Mayor.
And I know you mentioned the interest rates and downs and things, have you found out anything more about that?
Five percent down traditional interest rate. I'm working with the Hillcrest Bank out of Southern Utah right now to hopefully get us through the approval process for USDA. Um, it's gonna be a time process, so I can't guarantee anything, but as of right now, we do have five percent down payments, traditional conventional financing.
What's the rent rates typically?
What's that?
What's the rates typically?
Um, the, any interest rate that you're gonna get on a primary home loan. So, I believe they're about six and a quarter right now.
Can I ask you a question, Councilmember Topham?
Yeah.
I know you said one of your children bought, like, something, was it a, was it a manufactured home?
It was.
Yeah, I mean, is there anything about that, because that was recent, I, was it hard to get financing? Was it, I mean, was it fixed on a la- piece of land, I'm assuming?
Yeah, they bought their land and, but they bought it, it was as, just as much as my thick-built home, which is insane, but
Agreed.
And so, I mean, I think we do need affordable housing because right now my kids are paying a twenty-five hundred dollar mortgage payment.
Yep.
Um, yeah, they did live, live in my basement, but not everybody wants to live with their mother, when you're married.
Yeah.
You know, so, yeah, they did, and, I mean, they do own the land, that's the only, that's the only hesitation I had, is that they don't own it, they don't own the land, but I can see your concept and why, I mean, cause it hit, that hits personal to me just because my kids just, did just buy a manufactured home for the same price that I built my own home for.
Mm-hmm. So, as you think through this yourself, what, what would the payment be for your kids, the offset of not owning the land and having a lower payment? That's the whole model, that's, that's concept.
Unless that. Unless that.
Unless that, yeah.
So Brody, have you kind of estimated what a payment would be on your top model?
Mm-hmm.
along with your rental?
Um, the, the big one that we're selling, about twenty-two hundred square feet, there's different engineering, but I'm seeing twenty-two hundred square feet-ish, and that one is going to be less than twenty-one hundred dollars, including the, the
How much?
Less than twenty-one hundred dollars. I actually have a mortgage calculator, if you'd like to see it, that shows
And that's with tax, insurance?
Insurance on these
Like all that?
Very, very
All that.
Your rental and everything?
Absolutely, yep, space rents included in there.
What about utilities?
Um, nope, I don't believe that Yeah, I don't believe that anybody includes their utilities in their mortgage payment. Unless it's, um, your insurance and taxes.
That was one of my questions, is, is it more or less expensive to insure one of these?
Significantly less.
I think we researched it, I don't remember who looked into it, but I can't, and I think I asked you some questions about, you know, metal and things like that, what the foundations were and things. Um, and then I also asked you, just for the sake of the audience, um, you know, what do you know about these? I mean, in my mind, it's, they would depreciate, kinda like a car the minute you pulled it off the lot kinda deal, but I asked you, what do you know from appreciation slash depreciation, uh, in terms of how these hold their value? Because if you get to the end of paying for it, let's just say you got there, would you not have anything of value? Which is a huge part of homeownership, a huge part of that, uh, financial stability of being a homeowner.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more with you. Um, based off of my experience for thirty-two years in this space with my mom, um, we've bought homes, when I was twelve years old, I purchased my first manufactured mobile home. It was fifty-five hundred dollars. Um, fast forward, when I was eighteen, I sold it for just over ten thousand. So, the homes do appreciate just like anything else does, I mean, I've, I've also bought a car recently that I sold it for a little bit more money. Um, that's just the day and age that we live in right now, I believe. These homes have also, and my first home, like I mentioned to you, um, I lived in it for three years, I bought it for thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars. My first home that I brought my child into, sold it three years later for sixty-five thousand. Um, that was at the beginning of the boom, and I believe that we're only seeing how these are going to be more of valuable for people going forward. So, the affordable housing space could potentially increase to be what we're paying for normal homes right now. But heaven forbid that ever happens, because then there would be another hybrid model that came in and to try and help people afford, um, and work through life together. And one of the, one of the big things that one of the buyers has said is, hey, I gotta quit my second job with, with everything that you're showing me and telling me, with this model home, if I pick this one out and moved it in. I work two jobs right now, one of them's for a bank, and one of them, I can't remember what she does, but it's, it's very minimal. And she said, I wanna focus on my passion, my husband will still stay doing his work, but I wanna leave my banking job and focus on my passion. And with being able to do this and, and have the mortgage payment significantly less than what she's paying right now in rent, it, it was a no-brainer for her. I, I called her again last night and told her that the conversations with you guys all went really very well, and that I'm hoping that we get the approval today so that we can sign the letter of intent tomorrow, so.
So in the example of you with your own unit that you sold later and it appreciated, were you renting your space?
Yeah, so I was renting my space for three hundred, and then by the time I moved out, it was three hundred and thirty dollars. Right now, in that community, that home is first sold for a hundred and, I think, a hundred and sixty thousand, it may have dropped to a hundred and fifty. Um, but that space is nine hundred dollars a month in that same community that I lived in and paid three hundred for. And again, we don't, we have restrictions of being able to increase more than the, the CCNR state. Um, and that will, I guess, prevent any future increases that are astronomical, like they did, uh, up in Springville, so.
Was it three percent year over year, was that what you said?
Yeah, so three percent year over year, and then there's a, a catch-all in there that says, hey, if the property taxes increase too much, we can fluctuate with you guys. Um, and then, at the end of the five-year, um, there is a, um, what is it called? Yep, I, I'd love to have him explain it a little bit better.
So if you will, at the end of the five-year leases are rebasing, that is, that existed to, to protect both sides with it. That the, uh, the, the landowners, the legacy can increase consistent with what the CPIH, so CPI for housing specifically nationally has been, if there's been a material change in interest rates, because the loan, a business loan typically is for ten years, uh, and can see significant swings in, in, in the rate, as well as what the market is. Now, in protection for the homeowner, that it not be unreasonable what the increase is, legacy cannot charge more for a, um, a renewal or for a new person coming in that has bought that home from the person, than what they're listing available spaces for. So it must be consistent, and that keeps the marketplace intact with it. You're trying to balance those both. The CCRs as written are more restrictive to the homeowner's benefit than what the state law allows. The state law actually allows the park, the community to raise rates to any amount with sixty-day notice. Compare that, that you can charge anything with a sixty-day notice to, we're limiting to a three percent per year increase maximum, outside of a few caveats, of which property taxes would be the main difference. And in every five-year rebasing, it still has to be market sensitive and based. We think that balances those needs of both. Who here is comfortable with what the marketplace is gonna be in five years?
So what's, is it tied to three percent per year, or is it CPIH? I don't understand which, what you were talking about, how does that work?
So the three percent is, according to your initial lease signing, progressive through those years, no more than three percent, okay? At the end of the five years, let's say you're at seven, just random numbers, you're at seven hundred dollars. In order to charge more than the seven hundred dollars, the CPIH would have to be, over that five-year period, more than the fifteen percent that had been accumulated.
Okay.
Okay, or the other factors that could come into place. If we went through, um, uh, for those that are old enough, you know, the nineteen seventy Jimmy Carter years where interest rates at seventeen percent, there's gonna be impact on that.
Well, and, and, and the CPIH was, was my idea, um,
Mm-hmm.
w- worrying about, you know, um, no upper limit could look like predatory. I think that, that was the word used by one of the planning commission members. Um, but if it is pegged to some metric, and the metric that it's pegged to protects you guys who have a variable rate interest, and, and interest rates are one of the main functions of CPIH, it allows that, those two to float together. And to be sensitive to what they're, they're gonna, potentially gonna face in the market anyways. And that's, that's why CPIH was a good metric to tie it to. And that's, that's why CPIH was a good metric to tie it to.
And we had not thought of that, and you didn't, yes, you gave us that idea, and we agree with it. That's why we, we, we wrote it in. The state law status, standard is only, it cannot be unconscionable, is the word that they use. So, again, we're trying to be much more restrictive on us to the homeowner's benefit with the way that it has been written. I hope that makes sense. Lease. I'm sorry if you don't mind. Look, the lease type approach is not for everybody. The same way, some people should buy their car with cash. Other people should get a loan for their car. Other people, a lease basis makes sense. It lowers the payment. This is not a solution for all. But it is a solution that does not exist in your marketplace now. If you take a hundred thousand dollar loan, let's say they buy a lot for a hundred thousand dollars, at today's interest rate, that payment on just the land portion is going to be six hundred dollars. Plus, they're going to have their property taxes. Plus, they're going to have their responsibilities on, 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 on repairs of sidewalk and, and curb, and all these costs that will make it higher. One of the reasons that this can financially make sense is just as with that leased car, you're making a payment that's adjusted for the residual value at the end of that car lease. This type of ownership allows the benefit of tax deductions that a private owned homeowner cannot attain. For example, roads, sidewalks can be depreciated. You can't take a home depreciation on your sidewalk. An LLC can, which reduces everybody's cost with it. There's many reasons why this costs less. And the less cost, it's very real. We look at, oh, but there's this monthly lease payment. That's an increased cost. Well, the alternative, if they're taking a mortgage, is they have the interest and the principal payment on the portion of their loan that is for the lot. So, those offset each other, and they offset in such a way that the lease payment is actually less. Fully keeping open the option in the future, if they want to own their own land, they can sell the home, or they can take it with them. So, there's an ability to adjust to whatever their future best suits them. So, it's maximum flexibility. The control issue, it's not that we want to control things and people. But the closer proximity you have in living with each other, there's a shared responsibility ethically that what I do with my property is going to impact the value of my neighbors. By owning the land and then leasing it and having the CCRs, we can help everybody as a whole be optimally protected in their value of property. Without that, good people are at risk, and what their neighbor does with their property can severely impact their value. So, there's a real benefit. Our responsibility is to protect, is to be fully transparent on the front end. That's why we have CCRs in large measure. Here are the rules. Are they for you or not for you? We don't make that decision. They do. There'll be some who say, I don't want those rules. That's fine. Then this type of living is not for you. But for others, if that's what I want, I want to have some standards that protect me in my most important, in terms of personal utopian value, as well as financially my most important asset, my home. This helps that for a certain segment of the market. So, I hope that makes sense. I'm sorry, I'm answering more, but-
Very much, yeah. And father-in-law here, he's been the, uh, Utah Valley administrator for hospitals for many decades now, just retired. Um, and does plan on signing the first letter of intent to come into the subdivision tomorrow. So, hopefully, hopefully, we're able to get amazing people like Ken and Elise, that I've known for fifteen years, into the community, because they want to be here and help, and they want to work with the Forger Housing and Legacy B to help provide affordable housing for people that are in need of it, and good people that are going to be coming into the community. Um, and Ken's right. It's not for everybody, but you will see that it is for a lot of people. And a lot of people will be very, very happy with the subdivision that we're trying to get approved. So, I hope that helps give us some good positive feedback.
Well, I don't have any more questions.
Sharon, did you vaguely want to ask the one question about if something gets kind of set and can't be sold and can't be vacated? Just something that you researched there, did you?
Well, I asked, I was told that they, they don't have loans for used manufactured, but you said they did.
Yeah, definitely do. We've done-
And I don't know if they do or don't.
They do. Twenty-first Mortgage, you can call them tomorrow, and they can run you through their whole program. It's very straightforward. And they only, they specialize in this space.
Another thing, just to bring information as much as anything, is I talked to, um, just to find out, is this a model that we're starting to see more around the state of Utah? Because we might just be just learning about it, but it might be something that's done pretty often. And I, I wanted to find out more about that. And one of the points that was made is that it's just an option, but that it kind of brings peace to the people that live in the community. If for some reason, at some point, that community were going to be sold, the residents of that community could potentially have first right of refusal if they wanted to figure out how to buy that property. And I was like, has that ever happened in Utah? And he was aware-
They, they said that the, they could match an offer, if there was an offer brought, they could have the opportunity to match it as a community.
Wow, that, that's unique.
That makes, that makes some sense, if, I mean, especially if, as we consider this, and, and obviously, we're considering you guys and how you'd operate it, the, the topic of control has been brought up and stuff like that. You could potentially sell it to somebody else, and what does that look like? This would give the people who live there the chance to buy it themselves and potentially divide up ownership or do an HOA or something like that. And it, and it would make you guys whole, because you don't care. You're selling it.
Right.
As long as they match the offer that comes. So, it was a really interesting idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a unique, I, I've never heard or thought about that, but I don't see why not. I, I believe that'd be awesome if that was the case. Now, keep in mind, she's had communities for thirty-plus years, and we have, she's got a lot of kids. And I'm in this space, and I manage a lot of, uh, her day-to-day life, essentially. And I don't believe that we're ever going to let one of these communities go. So. But if that was the case, then yeah, we could definitely do the first right of refusal for the tenants that are occupying the spaces.
It's just kind of an assurance, because everyone might be great with you guys, and then you sell it to a completely different situation. And there might not even been anything in the agreement that talks about the possibility of that happening, and all of a sudden, you're under a completely different ownership and completely different management.
Mm-hmm. And we can definitely put that in the CCRs if that was the case, that you guys wanted to see, for sure. And, um, right here, it just does say that there are several options to consider when financing a mobile, a manufactured home. Chateau loans, um, are a mortgage for personal property. And, um, and then once it kicks into the foundation, once it's tied down to the foundation, it can be conventional at that point. So, before that, it's, it's unable to be conventional, but once we do the foundation, then it can be.
I'm, I'm sorry. I, I tried to sneak this in. Just answer your question, okay? I just did a quick Google. Can you finance a used manufactured home? Okay? First thing that comes up, there are several options to consider when financing a used manufactured home. And there are several options. And then it lists them here. So, again, you do a Google search on, can I finance the used home? Absolutely, yes.
Awesome. Thanks again.
I have one question, not to badger or anything, so I'm going to be good, I promise. So, if you have, you have eighty-four units, and some are big, you know, I mean, two thousand is bigger than my house. Um, so, and we're in Utah.
Mm-hmm.
Just say tw- twenty units, have three kids. So, that's sixty kids.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and on three nineteen, at forty-five minutes and twenty seconds, it was stated that all area is common, not limited. So, that changed.
Mm-hmm.
So, where does sixty kids play in your community?
Um, so, I'm sure that a bunch of people across the street have kids in their community as well. As well as, I live in a D.R. Horton home that's smaller lot size than what we're looking at doing right now. I have five kids. We play out, out on the street often. Um, we throw football all the time. We throw baseball all the time. We do have pickleball courts, John, and I, I did mention that if you guys wanted to see a small park area, then we could definitely do that. That's-
Well, the place across the street does have a clubhouse and a, and a park for the kids.
The park is, uh-
Small.
It's a lifetime, thousand-dollar place that, I mean, if that's what you require for us, then-
No, I, I'm not, you know, I-
Yeah, I get it. But pickleball courts, um-
Just question.
Small field, and anything that's going to be yard areas as well. So, we will have senses that people will be able to be confined in and go out and about in as well. And the people, like I said, easily can throw the football around on the asphalt, because it's going to be a nice-
Well, I appreciate that.
Yep, sidewalks and whatnot.
Okay, Brody, another question.
Yes, Sharon.
And maybe your-
Father-in-law.
Father-in-law. Well, so, when I, when I said, and maybe I didn't clarify it well enough, selling a used mobile or modular home that you do not own the property. So, I just Googled it. Tell me what a Title I loan is or a Title I. You have to use a Title I loan or I.
Um, we're not really sure how modular homes work. Uh, modular homes are going to be the people down just south of Sioux City.
This is manufactured.
Manufactured.
Yeah. Oh, if I read a little bit further, it tells me. It, it doesn't have a square footage. If I, it, Title I loans are specifically designed for this situation, and they are backed by the FHA. These loans allow you to finance just the home, even if you lease the land.
Mm-hmm. So, I am not familiar with that, the verbiage there, but I do have-
Did you learn something?
Yes, exactly. I do have lenders that, yeah, I do have lenders that would be able to answer that question for you.
Well, and I think that one, one thing that's been talked about a little bit arou- around is, it's important for us to understand the relationship between homeownership versus lease on the land and affordable housing. I, I think to some degree past that, ultimately, if your business model works is your concern, i- as long as it doesn't really affect the look and feel of the neighborhood, which is one of the things we're trying to make sure would be good. You know what I'm saying? I mean, you could have a bad business model, have not done your homework on the rentals, and you go borrow the money, put in all the infrastructure, and it fails. That's not really the city's concern necessarily, so.
Right.
But to the extent that it ties into affordable homeownership and this concept of not owning the land, I think it is valid. But we'll be careful not to go down too many rabbit holes of, you know, whatever the business model is, or whether it's going to work or not.
A Title I loan is a loan that is, that, the designation is from HUD. And it makes the lender able to ensure the loan, the mortgage insurance that we're PMI that we're so frequently used to. Okay? So, it's a type of loan qualification that HUD says, yes, the government will allow or, or actually fund mortgage insurance for in the, if default were to occur by the homeowner that has this as a rider to their mortgage loan. So, it is actually a quality of loan type. It is still, so your FHA loans are going to be a HUD Type I, Title I. They're standard loans. These are homes, and they're being treated like that with the caveat of just the setting. After that, they are homes in every other capacity and manner, and qualify as such.
Thank you again. Hopefully, that answers your question. Helps. All right.
So, um, and you've said several times, if we get approval tonight, this is on work meeting. Um, we put it on work meeting just because we knew that there would be a lot of stuff to discuss, and we're going to have to, to narrow down some things in that development agreement. Um, we can do that as quickly as the council wants to work through it. Um, like, I don't think, A, we're not dealing with annexation. We have already, um, done, um, you've, you've done most of the, um, actually design work. Um, we have, we have, um, utility questions and all of that stuff. I think we could, we could get to a point, um, possibly work through a development agreement and vote on it next time, if the council wants to. Um, but we can't vote on it tonight. Because it's work meeting. But we knew that, we, we knew that there was going to be some, some, some stuff potentially come out of this, um, good or bad or whatever, but-
Do we need to make a motion to put it on the action, or we just do it, don't we?
We can just put it on the action. Um, we can, um, I'll, I'll put together a development agreement that, like, like, really, the main thing is going to be water, um, and, um, the things that have been discussed, the details that have been discussed between Planning Commission and you guys, and between the city council and you guys, we'll memorialize those things in a development agreement. And then we can work through any, any, any fine tuning of that and vote on it next time. I think, I don't think it needs to go through these, what we're, what you saw di- earlier, because that's a, that's a whole different scale of everything, so. But yeah, I think that works good. It's my recommendation anyway.
Does anyone have any other questions, or do you have any other questions with the council?
Um, just, I, no, no, no questions. Yep.
Right.
I guess the status would be just come back in two weeks, or Dan, do I come to meet you in your office and put together that?
No, I'll put together something and send it to you. Send it out to the council, so everybody can kind of be thinking about what, what the details are. And if, if there's something that needs to be added or discussed, we can work through it in a meeting. Again, I don't, and, and, and then, and then take a vote. So, I think we'll be, and we can, we could even potentially, um, negotiate and agree on, on something in that, in that meeting, so. I think at the end of the day, though, I, this, I'm not stepping too much out onto a limb to say, this kind of boils down to whether we're comfortable with o- ownership or not of the land, and we will make a variance or stick to what is in there. Maybe we'll start with that and then proceed forward with the rest of the development agreement.
Are we going to do that right now?
No, we can't. There's, it's a work meeting.
I got you.
I mean, it's a work agenda item, so we can't take action on that.
Makes sense. All right, I guess.
Okay.
We're all adjourned.
Thank you.
From this item and then-
Thank you.
Yep. Awesome. Okay. We'll look forward to speaking with you guys in just a couple of short-
And I apologize again for my harshness.
I apologize as well. I didn't mean to call anybody's streets or community ugly by any means.
I know. I'm just-
But I, I appreciate you, John, very much so, with how you handled this right now, so. And again, I appreciate all of you guys' time, and let me know, please, if you guys have any questions for me in the meantime, because I'd love to address or answer any of your concerns. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good night.
All right, moving now to reports, updates, old business follow-up by elected officials and staff. Thank you. And we can start with, uh, Councilmember Topham.
Fantastic.
Or did you want, did you just get a cough drop in your mouth, and you want me to start on the other end?
No, it's fine. I can talk with stuff in my mouth. Um, I don't really have anything new, because we've done the fire. We saw what the ramifications, or the conclusion of that was. Hire the new fire chief. Um, we were going to have a theater board meeting on Monday, but nobody could make it, so it will be rescheduled to another day, so. I think that's all I've got.
Thank you.
I think. Okay. I can't think of anything else.
I'm ready to go to bed. We had airport boards.
You had airport boards?
We did.
Oh.
Yeah.
Report.
It was pretty exciting. Did some through- Did some through the fence agreement stuff, I can't talk, so I'm not gonna say too much. But that was all we did, sorry, I can't talk.
It was great.
I probably shouldn't talk, but, no, we hadn't, the, it, it, I love doing the budget hearings and stuff. Gets me to, you know, learn more and stuff and, yeah, it was just a great experience, you know, it was a long day, but, um, yeah, it was just, it was good and, and filled my little gray matter up with more information. And we're looking good for this upcoming year, I think. That's it.
That's it. I just wanna give a shout out to our lineman for putting on a little show for the elementary school and for the police and the fire and councilwoman and the mayor, I, I made the mayor come.
Well, she said they needed a volunteer and I needed to get over there soon and I'm like, they're gonna play some prank on me and stand my hair on end and then shock me or something and, but they didn't do any of those things. Did you see what they did today?
What they do today?
The egg drop thing.
The egg drop was the most awesome thing, so typically, sorry, I know it's not my term, but I'm just very happy about this. So typically, the, we drop it from the high school. We couldn't do that probably because of the construction or whatever. So Jeremy and I think it was Nick, brought over two big bucket trucks, lifted those up, dumped the eggs, their egg drop over that. That was probably the most fun I've had at school the entire year.
Good.
It was fun and, oh, I hope they come out every year and do it, because it was just, it was a feel-good day.
What was the most creative?
Oh, let me tell you. And I probably could say their name, but I'm not going to, because she's got all, all over social media, but I think it was like an old Easter bunny costume. Or maybe, I think it was, had to have been a costume of some sort, anyway. So he wraps up this egg, puts it in there, the thing stood taller than me and they stuffed it with all sorts of stuff. Go on social media, you'll see it. They dropped that thing, cleared out, I thought it was like a body of, like a dummy, like something that you guys would use out in the field or something.
A crash dummy.
Yeah, a crash dummy, but no, and then he picked it up and it was the Easter bunny. It was just hilarious, very creative, never seen that before.
So the whole goal of it is the kids create something that will cause an egg that's dropped from very high distances not to break.
Yeah.
And that's their assignment. And they bring these creations to the egg drop and they drop them from great, great height.
Great, I mean, I don't even know how high that was, I'd have to probably ask Jeremy, but man. But they had all sorts of creative things, but the most creative I saw was like the life-size Easter bunny.
Wow.
And it was great.
They were a hundred feet at least up there.
Probably, I-
A hundred.
And I don't know how long they've been doing it, but my guess is they've been doing it for over thirty years.
Well, my oldest is, she's, that's probably gonna date me, she's twenty-seven, twenty-six or twenty-seven, um-
They twenty.
I think they were even doing it like when my husband was in school, I'm sure.
In a longstanding tradition, that's very cool.
But it was awesome, all right.
You were in the middle of your-
Sorry, Sharon.
Oh, you, you were in the middle of your report.
I was just giving a shout out to the, the line guys.
Yeah, and that demonstration was cool, I didn't get the opportunity to go out there and watch that, but.
Oh, you should see how it fries up the hot dogs and cooks the inside of them.
Oh, I heard, I heard, but-
Mayor took some pictures.
Oh, that's awesome, it was fun.
Your turn.
Our guys are great, they gave a lot of tips on safety with electricity and things too, that kids wouldn't know if they weren't taught about it.
Okay, Councilmember Burton.
Okay, the historic preservation committees met a few times, they've been approving some colors on different homes and, uh, carport on Pioneer Avenue, but the most, well, they've been, they're gonna send out notifications to those people that are in, they're working on the way to notify people within the district, the historic district, and working on some historic property monuments and kind of cordillating that and the designation of that that meets that criteria. Uh, the planning and zoning, we've talked about a lot of that, but, uh, with this legacy B estates, but the rural done right, they've got the, uh, oh, the public hearing scheduled for the sixteenth, where they'll hopefully get that taken care of and recommendation to council so it can come on the, what is it, the twenty-fourth? Is that our next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, the twenty-fourth. Oh, and, um, the water recharge is met. And, uh, there's a schedule, I think maybe everybody might be interested in, let's see, the bids are due on the twentieth, they open the bids on the twenty, no, the bids are advertised on the fourth, excuse me, the bids go out on the fifth, open the bids on the twentieth, or, bids are due on twenty, twenty-first, open the bids and the twenty-second, the council will hopefully approve the bids on that water recharge project. And the water board met and the thing that you might be of interest is that the water will be turned on April fifteenth, if you haven't received that notice, pressurized irrigation. And there was a discussion about the Six Mile Spring project and the, the treatment plant. And I think that's probably what should be interested in. Uh, the cemetery, I was up there with the, the, oh, Public Works Department, they, we're, had a demonstration of this underground radar light, our machine, and seen what the value, what the use that could be applied. And there were, there was, there's some application there and they went outside and looked at the application as far as pipes and, uh, you know, under, underground water and sewer and different things. And they, I guess they had the guy come back today, or yesterday maybe it was, and did some more demonstration and they found more application to that, so that's something that we'll have, we'll be evaluating to see the, the value of that, that machine. And, uh, I just wanted to mention, I don't know what we do, but I, the bike park connects to my house. I know it's because of all the activity out there now, the kids are making use of it and I know it's not sealed, you know, that hard coating.
Yeah, our, our goal is to actually let them ride it, we, we have more improvements to do before they get out of school, but we're gonna let them ride it all summer long and then do the seal at the end, and that's what we were recommended to do.
Okay, I didn't say anything, I didn't go out and-
No, but that's, I'm glad you brought it up, because that's the plan.
No, that's a great point, I mean, it really is recommended it's ridden all summer because that kind of hasn't worked out as handsome things before.
So we can encourage, so I can encourage my grandkids to go over there.
Get them out there. Yeah, as long as the guys aren't working on it.
Yeah, and my wife texts me night and I don't know, but she says there's somebody out there jumping the dirt bike.
Nice.
And off the banks by the pickleball court, so.
Well, there's-
Anyway, Chief, did you hear that? There's a, somebody out there jumping the dirt bike on the pickleball court, so.
So you mean like a motorized dirt bike or you mean like a BMX?
She just texted me, yeah.
Well, no, wait, wait, just one minute.
Okay.
Uh, she, it's my turn.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm down.
Yep.
Um, Chief Adams and Officer Commissioner, Medical Examiner Blake, thought tonight would be a good time for me to give you a distilled version on the Open and Public Meeting Act. I've distilled it to about thirty minutes and then I could also present on some of the pressing and exciting legislation that was passed.
If you wanna keep your job, you better sit down.
Would you like that tonight or at some future date?
Some future date.
We actually need to do it, not tonight.
Okay, well, thank you, then, I have nothing further.
We, I appreciate your enthusiasm though and willingness to do that this evening, under the direction of police, police fines.
Chief, go pull the fire alarm.
Test out our new fire chief.
All right, Dan.
Yeah, so I will keep it extremely, extremely brief, um, about twenty minutes. Um, this one, I'm glad Eddie is in the room, it's, there's a possibility that we may open up our police officer position. We have a potential lateral transfer, the, the one that we were hoping to hire has been delayed maybe permanently. So you may see us open up the position if this lateral transfer looks like it's possible. We'll open it up for only three days and then do an interview, they did not interview in our current role and we're out of, we've gone through that list, so we may open that up, more information to come. I just didn't want you guys to say, what the heck is this, if it happens.
If we open the position for an officer.
And if anybody asks questions, call me.
Yep.
Thank you.
Um, also continuing to work on the budget, we need to schedule a work meeting to go over the capital items, the, the, the budget requ- the, um, personnel requests. Um, we need to schedule a, a meeting with the salary committee to go over, um, and make some determinations on that and, um, continue to move the budget process forward. I don't wanna schedule that right now until we can get some more things ready for that. So, but, but within the next three weeks, we need to do all of those things. Um, I'm leaving to San Diego in the morning, I'm gonna take a day off. Haven't taken a day off for a long time, so call me if it's an emergency. But if it's not an emergency, we're coming back Monday night and then next week is conference, 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 conference. I'm available Tuesday through Friday by phone.
Conference was last weekend.
I'll be in Salt Lake. You keep, I was about to say something religious, I won't.
I listened to all of it.
Yeah, I bet you did.
I really did.
Nice, so that's all I have.
Um, shout out to Callie, do you wanna tell us about your training that you've been at this week?
Um, yeah, it's been really great, I'm, been at the Utah Municipal Clerks Association Institute and Academy and we've had really, really great classes, um, every day this week and I'd like to report on it. I'm, I had left my notes, but I, I'm, I will put together a report because it's been really good. And Tuesday afternoon, we had this really great presentation on budgets by our, our own Dan Justin, it was really good. Everybody liked it.
Oh, yeah, she had to hear me ramble on. Oh, and one of the things I rambled on about was about how Callie has won the city March Madness competition mathematically. She has won it. And bragging rights come and, and those that participated, we appreciate you, we're gonna, we're gonna rah rah and give her a trophy or something, so.
I was impressed.
Twice in a row, two years in a row, she is like-
How do you know?
Oh, so this is the, you, you skipped a year.
My break year.
That's impressive.
So Callie-
Pretty impressive.
Callie- I was eighth. I won- You were below me. At the elementary, so we can have a party.
Can I make a comment about this stupid monitor that keeps going on and off?
And we'll look at it.
Yours is flicking, flickering?
Yeah.
We'll check on it.
We'll look at it.
Going on, on and off all night.
I didn't know.
So, I'm gonna go-
Actually, I think it was his eyes closing.
I saw him Fonzie it a few times and it worked.
Well, yeah, I'd hit it and it'd quit, but-
Um, if we, I'm, I'm reading the room, guys, don't worry. But I am really thinking about something right now and I want your help in figuring it out. So we have a communication person now and I saw someone post the other day asking where the bridge was gonna go or something about the bridge. And I just still feel like, how are we not communicating? Like, how do people still not know, like, where is the bridge gonna go, like, I-
Who's the, someone's-
I got one better, Mayor, I had one of the water board members tell me they didn't even know about the Meisner.
Okay.
I got a better one.
Okay.
I had someone call me and tell me we're watering three days a week. I said, since when?
I got a call saying how Main Street has their water on, the city has their water on and I don't. It's that, I-
So we have some water that took the culinary, the pressurized irrigation's not on. But you brought up pressurized irrigation, there was one other thing that came out of the water board meeting on pressurized irrigation. They wanted to see us go to the switching every other year, every other, yeah, every other year. Um, and before I had a chance to talk to Aldo, we had sent out the Everbridge that said same schedule as last year.
It's been that way for the last at least two or three years.
And I talked with Aldo and he said, there's, there's as many people that get confused about it, switching back and forth, so they just water whenever they want to anyways. His opinion was we should keep it the same every time, um, and so I said, well, we've already sent out the Everbridge, I don't wanna confuse everybody by, by flip-flopping, so let's stick with what we sent the Everbridge out. If you guys wanna change the policy, let's change it, but let's change it next year, if you wanna be back to-
Do you want me to tell you why it kinda sucks the way that we're doing it?
No, I know, 'cause it's, well, go ahead.
Like I never get, it's not all about me, but I never get a Saturday, a weekend water day, it's-
Right.
We never di- get that.
I don't have it, so I don't care. And the water board member didn't want a Saturday.
Yeah. Then you can't go out of town.
Yes, so it's a deny.
So anyways, we're sticking with what we sent the Everbridge out on accident, but we can have a discussion about it in the future, but at least there's-
Mine's on my temple day, please.
This is gonna be rapid fire. The cemetery fence is getting ready to start being worked on, um, the sidewalk on two-
Oh, I'm, yeah.
On two hundred is getting ready to be worked on. The library remodel was looked at, that was a promising meeting. Um, we have-
With the roof too?
Mm-hmm, we have Old Rock Church days coming up and everyone's starting to get excited for that. They got a Dixie Levitt matching fund promised from that foundation, so it's really cool because we've got some great momentum. Um, we have, uh, UAMPS, who's going to UAMPS? Then we have League of Cities and Towns, who's going to League of Cities and Towns? Okay, I just, I didn't even know who ended up registering, that's why we're out in meetings most of next week, which is rough. Um, and then we have our State of the City on May sixth at six P.M. And with that, I just need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second it.
Although in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.